All right, I'd like to go ahead and call tonight's meeting of the Falls Church City School Board to order our special electronic meeting. So Ms. Goodell, would you, oh, actually, before I do that, I'll just remind everybody that the on April, April 6th, City Council passed Emergency Ordinance TO 20-12, which allows for the school board to meet electronically in order to address continuity of operations associated with the COVID-19 pandemic. And our electronic meetings will still be open to the public. There will be an opportunity for the public to submit public comments. And all the meeting notices will be posted on the FCCPS website with the agendas posted in advance on Board Docs. And with that, then Ms. Goodell, will you please call the roll?
Certainly. Dr. Anderson.
Here.
Dr. Dimick.
Here.
Ms. Downs.
Here.
Ms. Litten.
Here.
Mr. Reitinger.
Here.
Ms. Russell? Oh, that's right, she was delayed. And Mr. Webb.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thanks very much. Will everyone please rise and join me for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you very much. I believe Ms. Russell is joining here, so let's just wait a second. Ms. Russell, can you hear us? Okay.
Yeah, I am. I'm here.
All right, excellent. Thank you. All right, so then, let's see, we've, we've done that. Okay, so adopting of the agenda, I would seek a motion regarding tonight's agenda. Ms. Downs.
Chair Anderson, I move that the board adopt the agenda as presented.
Thank you very much, Ms. Downs. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Litten. I believe there is at least some discussion that, that we may wish to have on this one tonight. And I believe Mr. Reitinger had some comments that he wanted to make.
Yes, thank you very much, Chair. I'd like to suggest a different approach with regard to our agenda. I think we're all in extremely uncertain times and we're dealing with a lot of changes, one of which is the fact that we're all sitting here and meeting on a Zoom screen from our porches or living rooms or whatever, rather than seeing each other in person. The practice that the administration and Chair and Vice Chair started when we began this was to address the question of public comment, taking the comments that were made and reading them aloud for up to three minutes each at the start of the board meeting during public comment. I have to say, that's a procedure I think it's time to change. And it's not because I don't want to hear public comment. In fact, I do. I just think it is, it is, it takes a considerable amount of time, time that the board could be using to discuss substantive matters. And I recall one time recently where we read public comments, the board meeting lasted until well past 11. I don't think we serve the people of Falls Church City or the students of Falls Church City as well as we might by extending the discussion so late in order to read public comments when, as fine an orator as Ms. Goodell and Ms. Minson and Ms. Michael and others are, I don't think we get any more out of having them read the public comments when we're not hearing them from the people themselves as reading them ourselves. So my suggested alternative would be instead of reading all of the public comments, that the board members read them all before the meeting and that, up even past three minutes, for example, and that we post for review before the meeting all of those public comments on Board Docs or in another publicly available means so that they're available to everybody. I think this would be actually more effective at enabling public comment. It would allow people to go back and look at historically the things that others had said. It would be even more effective at the board hearing those comments because we'd have the time to read all of them. And I don't think, based on everything I've heard, that there's any legal requirement that we read all of the public comments. To be sure, it is a practice and one that may best look like the process that we used when people could show up to give public comment. But I don't think it's as effective as reading them ourselves or taking other measures in order to understand them. And I do believe that it derogates the board's important work at a time when we're doing things like both working towards reopening the schools and considering renaming of the schools, which are extremely important matters to people of the community. Therefore, I'd suggest we change the procedure and post the public comments until we return to face-to-face meetings on Board Docs or in other means and take those as public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reitinger. So I guess I'll ask for a discussion. I'm not clear that there's a motion to do anything with regard to tonight's agenda, but open for discussion at the moment.
I'm happy to make an agenda if, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, Mr. Chair. But I'm happy to make a motion. I was just waiting until after there was discussion to propose that formally.
Okay, thank you then. I guess we'll open it up for comments and discussion about this. Ms. Litten.
I guess I would just ask a question. I was under the impression that there was, I guess, some sort of legal reason we needed to do it this way when we were meeting remotely. So I don't know if Trish or somebody could provide some clarity because I'm a little confused.
Dr. Noon, I can relay some, but also is it okay to ask, you know?
I think it would be great if Ms. Minson could give, give her thoughts.
Absolutely. The Governor's Budget Amendment Number 28, as part of House Bill 29, does allow for virtual meetings of policymaking boards when there's a state of emergency. So that's what we've been meeting under. Normally, we would need to have a quorum physically assembled in one location. That amendment at Item G2, Section 4.4-0.01 of the Acts of 2020, Chapter 1283, states that a public body can make arrangements for public access or common interest community association members to access a meeting through electronic means, including video conferencing technology to the extent practicable. And it goes on to state that if the means of communication allows, provide the public or common interest community association members with an opportunity to comment. When we were looking at options of Zoom versus Google Hangouts and others, allowing the public to join on a Zoom, knowing that some other divisions had had problems with Zoom bombing, the decision was made to livestream on YouTube with the members of the board and the members of staff participating via Zoom. So there was not a, a method akin to someone being able to sign in and make comment without then that not interrupting the business of the board. So the decision was made for those public comments to be sent to Ms. Goodell and read as, as that would be most similar to what we did when people could show up in public to meetings. It's my understanding that when we are meeting in person, individuals show up and speak. If anyone wants to submit anything in writing, that is then shared by the clerk, Ms. Goodell, with the board and then later is posted to Board Doc. So while the board is meeting electronically under this Governor's Budget Amendment 28 as allowed, it's my legal advice that it's best practice to continue doing what we've been doing and reading that. It's my understanding that once we go back to meeting in person, individuals can be limited in coming in, so we don't have too many people in the room at once, but can show up, can speak publicly. And then if we're getting submissions as we are now from individuals who don't live locally, but still want to share things with the board, those would be provided electronically to the board and would not be read into the record. So the, the advice to continue reading it is based on what we've been doing, but certainly the board doesn't need to, the board ultimately gets to make the decision of whether it wants to continue this practice or not. It would just be my advice that while we are having electronic meetings that continue, but that, that's not advice that the board has to follow. It's something that you all need to consider in making your decision and ultimately it's your choice.
Thank you, Ms. Minson. Ms. Litten, does that give you the, sort of the info that you were looking for?
Yeah, yeah, that helps me to kind of understand the landscape. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there other comments or questions or suggestions, any discussion points on this one? Mr. Webb.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I guess my question is, when we are in-person meeting and there are public comments that come in via written statements, is it not as a requirement to read, to read those where you can do more of the summarization of those, those comments?
So when those come in, there is no requirement to read them. And there's actually no requirement to summarize them either. It's just a requirement to get them to you.
And I'll just comment briefly as, you know, as we all know, the practice has been in our in-person meetings that the agenda is structured so that there is a section for public comment. And then there is also a section which is written materials that have been submitted, but the public comment in that section are separate from each other. So we haven't in the past had the practice during meetings in person of reading all of the written public comment that we may have received.
Because, Mr. Chair, if, because I would agree with Mr. Reitinger. I think our, by having so many and it taking such a huge chunk of the, the meetings of the last two that we've had under these circumstances where we've had a large number of public comment, which both topics are very important topics. However, it, it has pushed us into the late, lateness of an hour. And I don't think sometimes we're going to give those topics the, the type of of attention we would normally give if not at one of the topics starting at 11 o'clock. And I, that's just my feeling. However, if it's a requirement that we need to, I understand. But it does, I think, just take away from, I think, giving our full attention to important topics when we start one or the other at 11:00 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Other thoughts from anyone? Mr. Reitinger.
So, thank you. To be sure, I, I agree with Mr. Webb. And I, I understand Ms. Minson's point. It's certainly the safest thing to do, to read public comments out. But that's because it looks like what we would do at an in-person meeting. It's hard to find anything that one could challenge if you look as much as possible like an in-person meeting. That said, you know, the, my understanding of the budget amendment is public comment is required if the medium allows it. As Ms. Minson already explained, the medium that we're using of Zoom with, with YouTube broadcast does not allow interactive public comment. So we're already through the provision where allowing in-person public comment would be required. Now what we're trying to do is provide the most effective way, and this is what I think the important part is, the most effective way for the school board and the rest of the community to hear and see the interventions, the opinions of the other people who have strong views. And when it comes right down to it, since it's not a legal question, yes, there are legal elements, but it's a policy question informed by the law. And what our decision about what's the most effective way to work with the people, my opinion is that the most effective way to hear from our constituents and the students and the teachers and everybody who might want to speak to us is to have them send in comments, to read the comments and to post them publicly for anybody to see or refer to. I'd be happy to talk about other means, for example, besides doing that, reading a snippet of them so that we spend maybe 20 minutes, 15 minutes, a half an hour, hearing from public, hearing public comments so that, you know, we have a content neutral way to provide that data. But I don't think it serves the people of Falls Church or the board or the staff to spend two hours reading public comments that we've already looked at while, you know, perhaps 100 people watch us and have to wait for us to get to the actual discussions that reflect how their interests will be addressed. So that's, that's my rationale for saying we should use a different approach.
Thank you, Mr. Reitinger. Anybody else want to comment? I, I have some thoughts I could share, but I want to make sure folks have a chance to, to say what they would like. Ms. Downs.
Thank you, Chair Anderson. I'm just curious, and I don't know who this question would be directed to, but I'm sure our surrounding school systems, our neighboring school systems are dealing with a lot of public comment too because of the fall reopening plans that we're all working on. And I didn't know if school, school boards adjacent to us are dealing with the same sort of discussion or if they're reading all of their letters into public comment, or if, we don't know, that's okay too. I just wanted to ask the question.
So Ms. Downs, I, I can just give you what I know based on what I've seen and then I can, I can ask if others, Dr. Noon, if you have other input as well. For instance, Loudoun County had a special session on, and had a meeting on Monday night last night in which they have public comment, but it was done, done in-person telephonically. And they received approximately 300 comments that I know of at that point. Fairfax County recently had a three-day set of meetings, special meetings to receive public comment, again, telephonically. And it was, it was something like 1,000 people had signed up to do that and they, they came in through telephone. I don't know what Arlington has done and I can't remember offhand what Alexandria has done. But again, I would also point out, all of those divisions are larger than ours. And so, you know, they're doing that. I did have a conversation with the Virginia School Board Association this morning, just to also look into this a bit. And the information that I have from them is that the practices across the Commonwealth for all the divisions vary. There are some who do read all the comments in. There are others who do telephonic, you know, sort of presence. And there are others that do the, the posting of comment, you know, but are not actually reading all of the comments in. So there is variant, variability to my knowledge. And I don't know, Dr. Noon, or if anyone else, you know, has other additions to that.
I don't have any additions. I knew what Loudoun and Fairfax were doing. I haven't heard from Arlington or Alexandria.
Ms. Dimick, Dr. Dimick, we're doing this to know, I think.
Um. It, it is a burden on us to read all of the comments, but I think that's part of the job. I also think there is merit in reading the comments and so that the public hears the comments that are made. So if they were in the room, they would hear what their fellow citizens thought, rather than having to come to our meeting, go, oh, I'm not going to hear what anyone else thinks. Let me try and find that link somewhere on their website to where the comments are. So I, I, I understand that it takes time from our meetings. Perhaps there are ways we could schedule separate meetings. I would be happy to tune in to a comment reading period if we wanted one. I also think this is an unprecedented time and that once, once fall starts and once we start meeting in person again, it could be that we have fewer comments and it could be that we can adjust to comments differently. I also feel that this is the path we started on when we went to electronic meetings and, and so I think in part we should stick with it because this is how the public hears comments.
Thank you. Are there other, other comments? Like I said, I've got some things I could say, but I want to make sure I'll just have a chance. Well, so then I'll just say, I do understand all the points that Mr. Reitinger is making. And I do also understand all the points that Dr. Dimick just made and, and, and I'm trying to balance this. We have a responsibility and we've, we always do this to make sure that the public, public has real input and meaningful input into, into our public business. That's how we do things. We're, we're a public entity. And so we are taking public comment. We have a responsibility to make sure that the public knows what those comments are because they do, at least to some degree, influence our thinking. On the other hand, we do also have a responsibility to carry out the work that ultimately we are, we are trying to carry out. And the time that we spend listening to public comment during a meeting in reading written public comment, what we're doing right now as opposed to when we're meeting in person, that's a somewhat different thing. Does mean that we're, we're spending that time doing that. And obviously we get to the other parts of business later and, and that has an effect on things. In the end, we also, we, you know, we have said what we are doing in the past. We have said that we are accepting public comment in written form and we will read it into the record. And at this point, that's what we said we would do. For future meetings, I think we could certainly decide what we want to do. But for tonight, that's what we said we would do. And I'm, I'm uncomfortable making a choice to go otherwise. But again, I'm trying to strike the appropriate balance between public input and allowing free public input into thing, into our deliberations and into our decision-making and not, and also allowing time for that deliberation and decision-making to go on in the public dialogue that we have to have on our two items tonight. So um. It's a difficult issue because I see both sides of it. I'm uncomfortable making a choice to change what we said we were going to do. But, you know, there's, there's seven of us and we have to make a choice what we want to do. So that's my discomfort. I think I would be less uncomfortable if, with a model where there was a period where we are reading public comment, some of them, we, we have in our policy on, on public participation in meetings, the statement that the board can decide what a reasonable period for public, you know, what a reasonable period for public comment will be. There will be one. We can decide what that is. And so if, if there is a reasonable middle that we could choose, I might be less uncomfortable with the whole thing. I'm not comfortable with the decision to do none and I'm not really, I understand the downsides of doing all. So that's, that's just me though. And, and there are seven of us. So I don't know if anybody else has any further thoughts they want to make. And I know Mr. Reitinger has a motion in some sense that he's getting ready to make. Ms. Downs.
Chair Anderson, just to clarify, so we would have the ability in, for future, I'm talking about not this evening, but for future meetings to say we will read public comment for the first 45 minutes in the order that the letters have been received. Is that what you mean?
Well, there, this is where I look to Ms. Minson, you know, to answer, do we have the ability? I believe that, that we have the ability within policy to declare what a reasonable period is. And I don't know all of the things that interact to decide if it's, if that's acceptable in an electronic meeting forum or not. So. And, you know, that's where we are. I don't know, if that's okay to ask that question.
Yeah, Ms. Minson.
Sure. So School Board Policy BDDH, titled Public Participation at School Board Meetings, does state that members of the community are invited and encouraged to attend meetings of the school board to observe deliberations and that any member of the community may address the board on matters related to the Falls Church City Public Schools at any regular meeting, that the chair is responsible for the orderly conduct of meeting. And that, as you said, Mr. Anderson, a reasonable period of time, as determined by the school board, will be allocated at each regular meeting for community members to present matters of concern. So under that, the board could decide that the reasonable period of time that they want to limit public comment to is X amount of time, 30 minutes, an hour, whatever you all say. The, the last line of Policy BDDH also states that each speaker's presentation will be limited to three minutes. And I know when the board discussed this policy at first reading and second reading back in February of this year, there's a discussion of whether it needed to be longer or shorter. And we, the, the one point that we made in adopting that policy was the recommendation that it'd always be, as Mr. Reitinger said, content neutral. So it would be either the order that the policies were received and it probably could raise any issue that relates to the schools. The, the, the one piece about, of that policy in reading it now does say that members of the community may address the board on matters related to the Falls Church City Public Schools at any regular meeting. So there's no definition of what the members of the community are. I do know that we've received comments from other countries that we are reading into the, the electronic meetings. I don't necessarily believe there'd be a forum for that at in-person meetings, but, but that's not something that, that the policy explicitly addresses.
Thank you, Ms. Minson. Um, if there, you know, if there isn't any further discussion, Mr. Reitinger.
Well, just taking the, the chair's comments, you know, I, I, I understand the desire to not change the purpose of this meeting. I actually would not agree with the point that we started off doing this and we need to stick with it because that was never discussed by the board. That was a decision that was made in the first agenda. And although several board members raised questions early on, in fact, the very first meeting where we read all the public comments, I know because I was one of them, we continued on with that practice. So I don't believe it's been an uncontested board decision to do this that we need to continue. That said, certainly for this meeting, the Board Docs document, and we've been telling people that they, if they submit comments, we'll read them. I could, I might suggest, if, as a possible way forward, that we read all of the comments up to three minutes tonight, but that going forward, we follow a practice of publishing all comments received on Board Docs, including the ones that we read that are available for everyone to see in the future. And that we, we spend the first 30 minutes or up to the first 30 minutes of the board. That time is subject to, to what the, the sense of the board would be. But we spend a given amount of time, I'll notionally suggest 30 minutes, reading the comments that came in, up to three minutes per comment in the order that they were received since the prior meeting. So that's sort of the approach I'd suggest to be able to maximize people's ability to be heard and also preserve the ability of the board to have enough time to effectively address the issues that are before it.
Ms. Russell. Can't hear you.
I'm sorry, I had my unmute. My, so I just want to say that the proposal that Mr. Reitinger just outlined, for me, I think, is the ideal solution. One of the things that I really like about posting the letters on Board Docs is that it does give the public a chance to look at them. And while maybe some of them might fumble with links a little bit, I still think it's much easier, and maybe this is just a personal preference, but much easier to read a document myself and pull things up and look at it than sit through two hours worth of someone reading to me. So I think that the public themselves might get a lot more out of being able to look and read the letters themselves. And also if they have any questions, you know, obviously they can refer back to them, et cetera. And so I do think though, given that the expectation for this evening has been that we were going to read the letters, we should proceed with reading them for this evening. But I would like to consider some of the adoptions that Mr. Reitinger has proposed for our future meetings.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Okay, I'm just processing through the, what I'm hearing and also the parliamentary procedure on this one. So it sounds like what I'm hearing, Mr. Reitinger, is you are suggesting that we do as we had advertised for tonight's meeting and that for future meetings, there'd be a, a shorter period. So that would suggest that you are not suggesting a modification to tonight's agenda, which has been moved in second and that we could move forward there. But then we should pick up this thread to finalize what the, what the board would like to do on what we would like to do on, on future meetings. Mr. Reitinger, you're muted.
So to accord with full parliamentary procedure, what I'd suggest we do is I would make a motion to modify the agenda, to add an item to discuss the procedure going forward, that we would then vote on that or vote on the motion with the agenda as modified by my motion. And then we would formally discuss and, or you could get the sense of the board on the procedure to be used going forward at the appropriate time during the board meeting.
That was, that was where I was going in the, in the procedure. I'm just trying to make sure that we aren't. And we aren't. Okay, we aren't running into something I'm thinking about because we are having a electronic meeting. We just have to add that. So then would you like to make a motion along those lines?
When would the chair like to discuss the matter during the course of the, of the meeting agenda?
I would think that this ought to be the last item on our agenda tonight.
I don't have that in front of me, sir.
Which would be item 3.03 then, following the school renaming question and the school reopening update.
So the, the current last number is 3.03? So the, the current last number is three point oh three?
Three point oh two.
Three point oh two. Then, Mr. Chair, I move that we modify the motion under consideration to approve the agenda as presented, but adding a third item, three point oh three, to discuss the procedure to be used for electronic meetings going forward.
Dr. Noonan has a, has a hand up.
I just want to make sure that procedurally we're okay here because the meeting tonight is a combination of, I think, well, it's, it's been posted as a work session and you all can't take votes in a work session. You can get a consensus of the board, but my understanding is that you guys, you, you all as a board can't actually make motions and adopt those during work sessions. So I don't know exactly what the parliamentary procedure is to get around that. Because it has been posted as a work session and not as a regular meeting. So I'm gonna ask either Marty or Tricia if they have some thoughts on how to, how to work through this.
I, thank you, Dr. Noonan. I see that Ms. Vincent has Robert's rules ready to go here.
I, I do, but I, I don't have a clear answer on that. Marty, this was posted as a work session, is that correct?
That is correct. You know, and we do, we do vote on adopting the agenda, that is one vote. But, but the meeting was set up as a work session, not a normal meeting.
One, so then my, my suggestion, and Mr. Redinger, I do see you, but let me finish and then I'll come to you. My suggestion would be that we, that we would not be taking a formal vote because it is a work session, but that we would definitely be getting a sense of the board that we know at the end of the conversation at three point oh three that Mr. Redinger has suggested what the board is going to be doing going forward. So, Mr. Redinger, I'm sorry, please go ahead.
I agree.
All right. So then, do you want to restart? Sorry, Dr. Noonan.
Then, Mr. Chair, what I would suggest is at your next regular meeting, when you adopt the agenda, you might want to talk about how that public comment has shifted.
Yes, understood. So, Mr. Redinger, then do you want to make the final modification to about the fact that there would be, getting a sense of the board?
Mr. Chair, I don't think a modification of the motion is necessary because it didn't specify that, I don't believe, that we would vote on the matter, but that there would be a discussion about the procedure going forward. So I believe if my memory of my motion is correct, that it's consistent with the chair's plan.
All right, I'm just looking to see Ms. Goodell and Ms. Vincent. All right, then.
He said discuss the procedure for.
General standpoint, though, if you have a motion, you need a second and then you have to vote on the motion.
Correct, understood.
So, okay.
Thank you. So then, is there a second for Mr. Redinger's motion for, for, that's before us?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Ms. Goodell, I think you need to, we need to take a roll on this.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Anderson?
Yes.
Doc, Dr. Dimick?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Litten?
Yes.
Dr. Reitinger?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
And Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, that motion passes.
All right. So now we have amended the, we've adopted the motion to amend the agenda. Now we just have to vote on the agenda as modified by that motion. So, Ms. Goodell, will you call that vote, please?
Is that the fir-
I think you gotta make a motion.
No one made the motion.
Okay, so someone needs to make a motion then to adopt the agenda as modified by the motion that we just passed.
I, I, actually, as a matter of parliamentary procedure, I don't think that's necessary.
I think that's what you just did.
Right. We, we, there was a motion for the, to pass the agenda. We passed a motion to change that motion. And now that motion has changed, is pending before the board.
Right. So this is where I'm saying we need to take a vote on that, on that now. That's what I'm saying.
Okay, got it.
All right. So Ms. Goodell, please.
So, Dr. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Dimick?
Yes.
Ms. Downs? Ms. Litten?
Yes.
Dr. Reitinger?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
And Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we have adopted tonight's agenda with the addition of, say, of three point oh three as a discussion of our, of our, how we will do a public comment during electronic meetings going forward. So with that, we now move to two point oh one, public comment and requests. And while the state of emergency remains in effect due to COVID-19, written statements may be submitted to the clerk for dissemination to board members and will be read into the record. And in accordance with School Board Bylaw two point three zero, the time for each speaker is limited to three minutes. Please send written statements to School Board Clerk Marty Goodell at goodellm@fccps.org. Statements received before five P M. will be read at the meeting.
Okay, so tonight we received a total of eighty-seven comments before five o'clock and one came in afterwards. So we are prepared to read the eighty-seven. And I've submitted that, I will go first, Kristen will, I'm sorry, Tricia will follow me and Kristen and then John Brett. So we were just gonna, I am just gonna read the entire packet that I submit or I gave to everyone, followed by, we had a couple rounds, but I think at this point, we should just read all of them at our setting because we're not timing it tonight. I mean, we're timing three minutes, but we're not being timed. Total time.
Correct.
All right. So I will begin. The first is from Robert Barrett. My name is Robert Barrett, nineteen sixty graduate of George Mason High School. I'm informed that the school board will meet this evening to discuss a possible name change for George Mason High School. I am strongly opposed to changing the name of George Mason High School. Please pass my position on to the school board. Thank you and respectively, Robert Barrett. The next is from R. D. Dozier. I am not a native of the city of Falls Church, but was employed as a teacher of the world American and ancient and medieval history at George Mason from nineteen sixty-eight through nineteen seventy-one. I understand the current reaction and the rush by some to rename infrastructures, parks and public buildings, including schools and universities throughout the South. I am a native of Nashville and after graduating from Vanderbilt, spent many summers away from Mason, working at the Nashville home of the U. S. President Andrew Jackson. If we take the standards being applied today to sanitize the American South of statues, parks, military bases, public buildings, including schools, the overly zealous public is going to purge the likes of Washington, Jefferson, Madison, Monroe, Andrew Jackson and even George Mason. Yes, each of these was a slaveholder and ran plantations, but each also contributed immensely to the greater good of the young and often struggling republic. Besides owning slaves, Washington had one of the largest whiskey distilleries in the Americas. Jefferson had a long-running affair with slave Sally Hemings and fathered children out of wedlock. During his lifetime, Andrew Jackson owned approximately one hundred slaves and initiated the notorious Trail of Tears, which both relocated and decimated the lives of so many Native Americans. Yet he chased the Spanish out of Florida and soundly defeated British troops in New Orleans, which, who were intent on both occupying the city and forcing America to surrender sizable parts of Louisiana purchased from Napoleon. If you look for someone in Virginia with a pure record on civil rights issues as you're here, your search will go well beyond the time of Woodrow Wilson, the Byrd family of politicians and many more. In short, you'll come up with one very short list of replacement candidates as virtually all have warts. Washington, Jefferson, Madison and Monroe have their faults, but they, along with George Mason, have done far more good for both Virginia and the United States than they have done ill. Accordingly, I strong, strongly but respectfully ask you not to remove the name of George Mason from the new high school. As George Mason High School, it also has a proud, a proud connection with approximately sixty years of graduates. Please let this tradition continue. Kindness regards. The next is from Edith White, class of nineteen sixty-six. She wrote, George Mason was a patriot during the founding years of our great country. He offered valuable ideas to those who authored both the Declaration of Independence and the U. S. Constitution. This legacy should be preserved and honored by retaining his name on the school. The next is from Chris Erman. George Mason penned the Bill of Rights. Our founding fathers lived in different times and it's amazing that they were able to create this great country that we call home. Otherwise, we may still be the subjects of England or even worse if we had lost World War Two. Yes, he did own slaves, but comparing him to the Civil War generals who fought to break up the country and continue slavery is unjust. Even today, two hundred and fifty years later, at our protest, his words are repeated and quoted often. As a lifelong resident of Falls Church City and a graduate of George Mason High School, I think the name George Mason should stay and honored to be named after one of our country's founding fathers. It's just my humble opinion. The next is from Yvonne Walton Agaro. She writes, as a nineteen sixty-five graduate of George Mason High School, I am proud to say I graduated there and was a resident of Falls Church. As someone who studied Virginia history, we learned the important roles of our Virginia representatives played in forming the United States. Certainly, George Mason was the leading writer of our founding documents. It's ridiculous to even think about honoring, about not honoring his work. Does one need to rename Washington references to? I am proud of my Virginia heritage and the names of so many historical figures. Virginia, you will remember, had more presidents born in our great state. Don't let the thoughts of a few and younger group tear down our Virginia history, please. The next is from Laura and John McNamara. After listening to and reading the thoughtful comments of our neighbors and school board over the last three weeks, we would like to reaffirm our support for the name change of both George Mason High School and Thomas Jefferson Elementary. The fact remains that both men for whom these schools are named were slaveholders and therefore do not represent the values that have been emphatically slated by the school board and our community. Convenience has no place in a discussion about racism and anti-racism. The discussion should be simply revolve around our commitment to anti-racism. Our students and staff, especially our Black students and staff, should not be asked to learn and work in buildings named after slaveholders. Again, we thank you for your unending work during this tumultuous school year. The next is from Irene Pham, class of seventy-seven. In nineteen seventy-seven, I was a very bad student in Mr. Collap's U. S. History class and did not pay attention to one word all year. Perhaps for that reason, he one day called me up and asked me to write an essay for the D. A. R. essay competition, which was to be a biographical essay on George Mason. I visited Mason's home, Gunston Hall, and researched his, and researched his life and impact and learned much that I was supposed to have learned in Mr. Collap's class. But through the lens of the life of the shadowy figure George Mason, I remember feeling privileged for the first time to be attending George Mason High School because it, because it was named for this interesting and thoughtful man. Later in my life, I learned about his education under the brilliant George White and more about his role as an opponent of popular political movements of his day. George Mason had a complex intellect that was full of nuance and perception. He had grit, a lot of political courage, and as a widow, stayed home from some house of delicate sessions to take care of his nine kids. I believe he deserves, deserves to be remembered as a truly significant leader. I would not take his name off anything. But if our disagreements with some of the beliefs and behaviors of people of the past make them unworthy of building names, I would suggest we name buildings after flowers, trees, animals, vegetables. Dead human beings are ever subject to reevaluation, as are we ourselves. God give you wisdom as you bear these responsibilities. The next is from Elizabeth Zeron. It has come to our attention and name changes being considered for George Mason High School, known as George Mason Junior Senior High School when I graduated in nineteen seventy-nine. While I understand and empathize with those to whom some names evoke trauma, I was not aware George Mason provoked this response. I will leave historical investigation to those who have already done the research. I have read several accounts online already. I do believe, however, name recognition deserves some attention. As a high school counselor presently in a program school for highly gifted students in South Carolina, I know the importance of a school name recognition in college admissions. Some name recognition takes many years to achieve and on the backs of many hardworking administrators, teachers, staff and students. George Mason High School enjoys such recognition and as such, graduates of George Mason High School are recognized as students with great opportunity for challenge and hard-earned accomplishment. These details make a difference. Much like many considerate degree from Harvard, Columbia, Stanford and Johns Hopkins to be a cut above many others, a graduate of George Mason High School was assessed as accomplished and prepared for the rigor of these elite universities. Reputation does matter and the reputation of George Mason High School was duly earned. Please consider the many potential impacts a name change would impose. View this decision as not merely an emotional or sentimental reaction, but a quantifiable investment made by students past and the, and in benefits of the students of the future. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration. The next is from Kathy McBride LaPresti. I graduated from George Mason High School in nineteen sixty-five. I do not think you should change the name of the school. The name is deeply rooted in Falls Church history and should be maintained. I sure, I sure most, I'm sure most of the Falls Church citizens feel the same. The next is from Stephen Hill from Falls Church, Virginia. I understand the school board will be taking up discussion of dropping George Mason's name from the high school. I would like to add my name in opposition to this move. The next is from Jeff Myers. I am a proud George Mason High School graduate from the class of nineteen eighty-six. I also attended George Mason Middle School, which I am sure you know, was physically attached to the high school. I am one of four Myers children that graduated from George Mason. I understand that there are proposals in motion to change the name of the high school. I can only say that for me, George Mason High School, its name, my memories of my time there and the fact that the best friends I ever had made were cultivated there, is a representation of the city of Falls Church. I'm very proud of the small city that I grew up in. Much of the person that I am now was formed in the town and formed by what I learned and who I met at George Mason. My email to you may make little difference, but there is a cultural and familial attachment to the name that is shared by likely thousands and thousands of people. When I drive through Falls Church, as I did yesterday, and I see the school, I think of the people, the teachers, the sports, the friends, the growth and love that was developed there. Please consider, one, a mom's opinion that to change the name of the school is to destroy a vital part of the history of Falls Church. The city has changed so much since my time there, but there are constants. My family home, the street I was named after, Jefferson, where my friends' homes were, the State Theater, where I saw what seems like a hundred movies, and George Mason High School. Why change the name? What's the reason? No need to answer. It's a rhetorical question. I completely understand that we are living in a world where racial and political divide still exists. I understand why many of the Fairfax County high schools have changed their names, but I don't love that either. If this is about who George Mason the man was, I would hope that his influence as a Virginian to this nation's history would remain intact by keeping his name attached to the school. But again, I am less concerned with that than what the school and its name means to me personally. I just wanted you to have my perspective. The next is from Elizabeth Somerville, parent of Jesse Thackeray preschool in Mount Daniels students. I am writing to the school board to please consider renaming both George Mason High School and Thomas Jefferson Elementary School. Our children deserve to walk to the halls of schools who do not honor and revere slaveholders. We can no longer overlook their role in slavery. It is time to change these names and move on from this shameful past. The new high school presents a fresh start and it is an opportunity we should not pass up. The next is from William Henenberg, a graduate of Thomas Jefferson and George Mason, class of two thousand and three. As an alumnus of the Falls Church City Public School System, I would like to offer my feelings of amazement, shock and disappointment at hearing about the possibility of school name changes. I do not support in any way changing the names of either Thomas Jefferson Elementary or George Mason High School. If the school system is incapable of appropriately teaching the context and history of these founding fathers, I will no longer support the Falls Church education validation. Thanks for your time. The next is from Jen Christian, Christian, who has daughters at Thomas Jefferson Elementary and Mary Ellen Henderson. I'm writing to add my name to the growing list of community members and parents who are encouraging the school board to rename both Thomas Jefferson Elementary and George Mason High School. Rather than debate the history, historical impact of these two figures, I suggest that we select a historical figure, local figure, that truly captures the values of this community, of education that is in no way connected to the early history of this country. Now is the time to show that we as a community are listening, that we are aware that names of institutions carry weight and that placing anyone who once owned another person, regardless of their contributions or the time they lived in, does not belong on one of our institutions. The next is from Amanda Henenberg, a graduate of T. J. and George Mason High School, two thousand and one. As a proud alumna of the Falls Church Public School System, I am not in favor of changing the names of our schools. While I can see both sides of the issue, I have full confidence that our school system can teach and present our founding fathers in a complete and holistic way, good and bad. Should a name change take place, however, I would like to offer suggestion that we stop naming buildings after people and instead name them after something that captures and reflects the uniqueness of our city. For example, Memorial High School, because we all love Memorial Day here so much. Something that incorporates the essence of the city at large and is not tied to inherently flawed humans. Outside the name of the change, though, maybe the school board should take some time and focus on getting kids back to school and fixing our falling test scores and rankings. I was shocked to see how far we had fallen in the latest Virginia school rankings, especially since we pay the highest tax rate in the area. And then I have a few more here. This is from Mark Papadopoulos. He, he writes, I hope that you are doing well during these difficult times. I write to comment on our school system's decision to continue distant learning indefinitely. As a father of three and a youth sports coach who has volunteered in our community for over a decade, I know and stay connected with many young people. Over the past three months, I have observed significant collateral damage to our youth in terms of increased anxiety, depression, stunned emotional development and increased at-risk behavior. Kids have relayed feelings of helplessness, of having nothing productive to do or nothing to look forward in life. I worry that these essential scope coping skills have frayed, not sharpened during the shutdown. While the risks of COVID-19 are real, the collateral damage to our schoolchildren stemming from the shutdown and socialized- and social isolation is enormous and growing. Our school system stands for educating and developing our young people. Distance learning is not achieving that right now. I support as normal a return to school and sports as reasonably possible. The next is from Evans and Elizabeth Rice. Dear members of the school board, thank you for the hard work you have undertaken to serve our schools. We commend you for freely giving your time and energy to lead us through the challenging public health issues that threaten our collective mission to educate and care for our children. We are also thankful to the board for its prompt and well-planned execution of the online learning plan this spring and for our exceptional teachers who serve our students so well. We write today to urge you to consider two points. First, we should return to full-time school and sports as soon as possible while taking precautionary measures to prevent the spread of the virus. Distance learning cannot compete with full-time classroom instruction from an educational perspective, and the nationwide collateral consequences of distant learning are real even in our city. Increased loneliness and depression, the lack of human connection, relational decay, screen addiction, anxiety, drug and alcohol abuse, suicide and child abuse. The edge of the educational decline in negative emotional and social consequences of distant learning must be balanced against the real but relatively low risk that the virus poses to school-aged children. We also urge the board to allow fall and winter sports to continue without additional restrictions while following the V H S L guidelines. Second, we urge the board to postpone the discussion of renaming the schools until the health crisis is behind us. Racism is a cancer in our society and the and in the human heart. Recent events require every individual, family, and community to consider how we are implicated in systemic racism. We need to listen, read, learn, and act to become anti-racist. We need to try to stand in the shoes of our black and brown brothers and sisters. We need to train ourselves and our children to be anti-racist, to have integrity in all their relationships. In short, we need moral education. Societies evolve hopefully, hopefully toward the good. Thomas Jefferson and George Mason were flawed human beings like all of us, but they helped give our nation the foundations of freedom of expression and of the press that today afford us the opportunity to continue to grow and change for the better. Rushing to change the names of our schools will not meaningfully contribute to our children's moral education. Now is the time for the board to focus on getting our children back in school in as safe as a manner as possible for the sake of their formation and education. Thank you for your consideration. The next is from Charles Crum. He would like to comment on the discussion surrounding the proposal to rename George Mason High School. While I cheered the recent dismantling of George Preston Marshall statue outside RFK Stadium as long overdue and anxiously await for the day that Route One is no longer called Jefferson Davis Highway, I strongly think we need to consider renaming decisions in the context of the times and focus our energies on such obvious and egregious examples. George Mason was unquestionably a great man and amongst his many important contributions to our state and nation were that he largely crafted the Virginia State Constitution and is known as the father of the Bill of Rights. While it is true that he owned slaves, a number of historians have commented that he probably felt he did not have another plausible choice at the time being a widower with a large estate and a large family. His opinions on slavery slavery were clear and unassailable. He once said, "The augmentation of slaves weakens the states, and such a trait is diabolical in itself and disgraceful to mankind." In fact, in her account of the Constitutional Convention Miracle at Philadelphia, renowned biographer Catherine Drinker Bowen stated, "It was clear that George Mason believed slaves should be citizens" and said he was a fervent abolitionist before the word was coined. So what do you make of a man who in the seventeen hundreds owned slaves but spoke out very strongly against the institution and in many instances tried to end it? I say we are very proudly keep the name, but have a thoughtful historical discussion of some of the paradoxes that will educate our children about history and not push them into simplistic knee-jerk reactions that wash it away. I want to end with a quote, not from one of his many supporters, but from one of his historical detractors, Peter Wallenstein. Surely there is much of George Mason that we cherish, wish to keep, and can readily celebrate. I would add that there is much he can still teach us in the complicated times of today and keeping his name on the school can do just that. The next is from Pamela Crum, a mother of George Mason High School student. When the new George Mason High School building becomes available during the twenty 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 one academic year, have we considered continuing to also use the old George Mason High School building as well? By using the new high school building and the one at the same time and the old one at the same time, we could allow more students to attend school in person during the pandemic. Both Mary Ellen Henderson and George Mason could use the old George Mason High School building as they share the same campus. I'm not sure what is planned for the old building, but certainly the future plans could be delayed, especially with the current economic conditions. Once the pandemic ends and we are no longer half to social distance during school, the original plans for the old building could resume. The use of both buildings simultaneously would provide FCCPS with a unique opportunity to safely provide full school attendance when most school systems will not be able to do so. I urge you to consider this option as we figure out how to move forward in these complicated times. The next is from Roberta Gale Nichols Cates. I graduated from George Mason in nineteen fifty nine and have been in touch with most of my classmates since then. I have searched my conscience and found no reason to change the name of what was a great high school in nineteen fifty nine and still remains ranked as one of the top ten high schools in the nation. George Mason was a great patriot, as was Thomas Jefferson, and they are two of the most important men who founded this great nation. They were flawed, as most of us are, but they were honorable men who, for the most part, lived honorable lives. They lived as men of wealth and education, lived in their time. Do not change the name of our wonderful school. By the way, are you going to suggest we eradicate the millions of homages to George Washington as well as all of our first presidents? Change the names of the American continent? Change the name of Columbus, Ohio? Tear down the Jefferson Memorial? Where would, where would you stop? And I have two more. Dear School Board Members, I am a proud nineteen sixty George Mason High School graduate and a co-founder of the George Mason High School Alumni Association. First, let me thank you for all the time spent considering the important issue of changing the name of George Mason, especially when you consider what else you have on your plates during the COVID nineteen pandemic, like opening a new school, possible reduced tax revenue, when to open the schools and how, your day job and your family issues in these trying times. I'm not going to repeat all of the great things George Mason did for the USA and Virginia in his life, but just to ask you to consider that George Mason University spent years studying this issue and decided not to change the name. I assure you that the leadership, staff, and students of George Mason University spent a great deal of time studying the issue before deciding not to change the name. Realize that you are under a lot of pressure to change the name, but hopefully you will not succumb to the pressure and make the same decision as George Mason University, not to change the name. Thanks again for your time. That was from Hugh O'Hara. The next is from Rohini Winters. I very much appreciate the effort and planning that has been brought up to this point. I respect the plan that probably has most teachers at the school four days a week, teaching our kids two days in person and wonder how they will accomplish a year's worth of teaching in half the time. It is of great concern how much learning will be lost. But it, but in this, we are not alone or unique. The fact is, the fact it is may not be safe to have all the kids in the classroom at the same time. If it is, that is where they should be. If it is not, we should be thinking about repurposing underutilized space and hiring more teachers because parents simply cannot fill the void our teachers will leave. And especially speaking on behalf of myself, a parent working full-time is no substitute. I feel terrible about what it means to have honors chem and algebra two taught for two fifths of the week for my tenth grader. This is a foundation year for her education. It will make a huge difference depending on what, what we come up with for the support of these kids. And the next goes to Trish.
The first comment is from Christine Starr, a graduate of George Mason, class of two thousand and seven. If you would like to hear from the alumni of Thomas Jefferson and George Mason Middle slash High School, then please listen to us. This whole turmoil over removing historical statutes and school names has gone too far, and I do not understand why the school board is giving into it. I fond memories of Thomas Jefferson Elementary School and George Mason Middle slash High School, predominantly my history teachers and history classes. I learned that although George Mason owned slaves, he strongly believed that he needed to speak out for the rights of all citizens. He also did not believe owning slaves was right. He eventually took it upon himself to write the Virginia Declaration of Rights and the Virginia Constitution of seventeen seventy six, which laid the groundwork for the US Declaration of Independence and Bill of Rights. Thomas Jefferson considered his compatriot George Mason, a man of the first order of greatness. Now anymore, students are not being taught history. They're easily duped into believing made-up stories. We cannot erase history, but instead must learn from our history. Virginia citizens would not have the quality of rights without George Mason's efforts. I personally think our forefathers would be ashamed if they saw what is happening today. In sum, I ask that you please do not change the names of George Mason High or Thomas Jefferson Elementary School. Thank you for your time. Christine Starr, proud George Mason graduate, class of two thousand and seven. Go George Mason Mustangs. Go Thomas Jefferson Tigers. Next comment is from Joseph M. Bracken. Dear Mr. Goodell, twenty years ago, our family moved to Falls Church after ten years abroad in government service. We chose the city for its great schools and good quality of life. Our children receive an excellent education here, especially the skills of critical thinking taught in George Mason's International Baccalaureate Program. The IB program prepared our children and many other young adults to analyze data and to think for themselves. It is time for every resident of Falls Church to do the same regarding petitions to rename local schools. Thomas Jefferson and George Mason risked their lives and their fortunes to forge a new nation based on self-government. They dedicated large chunks of time to unrenumerated government service. The fact that they and many other colonists owned slaves while legal is a strike against them. But in America, we do not believe in one strike and you're out. We believe in judging people on the totality of their life's work. Even more importantly, this country was built on the consent of the governed. In that vein, the decision the school's name should be given to the citizens of Falls Church in November and not yielded to eight hundred names on petitions amplified by a few speakers at board meetings. Next comment is from Bill Hanson and Ellie Hanson, George Mason High School, class of nineteen fifty nine. They're located in France. To the F C School Board, concerning the vote to change the name of George Mason High School, vote no. It is revisionist history at its highest level. It is an insult to honesty and integrity to attempt to eliminate or alter history for personal or political reasons. History happens. To think that George Mason should have a name change after seventy years would make every name a single issue subject and put name changing in the category of a political football where every year we change the name because someone liked or disliked a particular individual. That, of course, is to the complete disregard for the fact that no individual supports or is represented by one single issue. It ignores the bad and the good and will make name changing a cover to be practiced by everyone who wanted to make a change for whatever reason temporarily popular in years or centuries after an event took place and therefore ignore the truth of history itself. Vote no to change the name of George Mason High School. Next comment is from Sebastian Numeras. I just found out last night the FCCPS School Board is meeting to discuss the changing of the name of George Mason High School and possibly of Thomas Jefferson Elementary School. I find this to be not only outrageous but also dangerous. This is an attack on our history, culture, and common story that unites us all as Americans. Of course, these men weren't perfect. No human being is. But what these men's intent accomplishes what and what they achieved is incredibly important and is the reason we are here with the freedoms we enjoy today. Let us not forget that George Mason wrote the Bill of Rights, which guarantees, among other things, freedom of speech, protest, religion, assembly, and the press. Yes, they may have owned slaves and we can call them hypocrites for saying slavery was an abomination, but never freeing their slaves. It's a valid point, but a people without a history can never become a nation. The ideals that these men espouse are very, um, sorry, are the very reason of what makes us American. We remember to idolize them for their ideas, the same ideas that define us all as Americans. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal and are endowed in certain inalienable rights, which among which are life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. This is revolutionary to say today in twenty twenty, but in seventeen seventy six, that was truly daring to say. It is easy to be a hero in tranquil, utopian times. It takes courage to stand up to tyranny in the darkest of times. As Darryl Davis brilliantly stated, "We must remember all of our history, the good, the bad, and the ugly, and we must learn from it, not whitewash it." Again, these men weren't perfect, and there's a lot that we can criticize them for. It's a valid discussion to have, but we must not degrade them as being only one thing, i.e. a slaveholder. And we must thank them to this day for their sacrifice. Had they not succeeded, they would all have been killed and we would not be living in one of the greatest countries in the world. Especially today, when we are, as some say, in the most polarized time in our society. These historical figures and our common history is key for our society, our people, and our country. If the FCCPS School Board think they are being racial heroes for doing this, they are dead wrong. This is not the same as removing co- co-federate statutes monuments. The founding fathers did not believe the same things these monsters believed. They believed in equality and freedom, and again, their ideas are what define us as Americans. To change the name of their schools and attack on our very identity and will only serve to further polarize our community. If the FCCPS wants to tackle racism and get some good publicity, they can raise teachers' faculty wages, invest in students, invest in after-school programs, and the ridiculous policy of children having to pay for lunch and with it the concept of school lunch debt, among many other policy decisions. But don't come after our social fabric and the very thing that unites us all as Americans. George Mason was born in Fairfax. It is an honor to the community to have a school near his hometown named after him. Next comment is from Mary Beth McKinnon at one nineteen West Moreland Road, Falls Church. Good evening. First, thank you all for your efforts in developing guidelines for school reopening in fall. As parents of a rising senior at George Mason and twenty-two-year residents of Falls Church City, we felt compelled to urge in-classroom instruction beginning in August. The pandemic created an unprecedented curveball, forcing distance learning on our students. The impact on our children was huge. Couple that with a student that has that has executive functioning issues and distance learning was incredibly difficult. The challenge of the lack of power school and schoolage updates at scale made grading slow, incomplete, and definitely caused tension in this household. In addition, our son indicated that he had very little new content taught during the fourth quarter. The primary focus for shelter in place was to flatten the curve of COVID nineteen. The city of Falls Church has done an incredible job of this, as has the entire state of Virginia. The current RT effective reproduction rate in Virginia is point seven nine. When the RT is below one, the virus stops spreading. She's included a link to this. Additionally, the June nineteenth CDC charts reveal a US morbidity rate essentially zero for the age group of five to twenty-four. In fact, not one child in that age group from the Commonwealth of Virginia has passed, and she includes a link to the CDC. According to the Fairfax County data, inside the city of Falls Church, there have been fifty-nine positive cases for a population of sixteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-five, which translates to point zero zero three six of a percent. The vast majority of our cases came from the Kensington Sunrise Falls Church and other senior living facilities, which feature an elderly population and their caregivers. Lumbing Falls Church City in the Fairfax County is also unfair, given our smaller population and less of the demographic populations with high COVID nineteen areas of Fairfax County. While we know the health of the faculty and staff is also a concern, perhaps we can ask those teachers at risk to handle the distance learning or have reasonable accommodations for in-person learning. Our son added that high schoolers should have no issues maintaining physical distance from their teachers. Additionally, parents with a concern for their children or immunocompromised family members should have the option to opt in to an online learning platform. What no one can measure is a soci- social interaction students need, especially high schoolers. Additionally, the mental health impacts to our children cannot be ignored. Calls to suicide hotlines have reached unprecedented numbers. At-risk children are being kept home with their abusers with no lifeline, and drug and alcohol abuse are growing. And the students are already gathering with an estimated one-third of all seniors interacting without repercussions, which is allowed outside during phase two of reopening. Elementary-aged children play all over our streets without issues as well, despite neighbors in close proximity. Additionally, every student I've spoken to desperately wants to go back to school in person and will abide by whatever safety measures need to be followed. And I know any number of parents who would be more than happy to assist the school in any way needed. Temperature checks, contract tracing, carpooling, et cetera. As twenty-two-year residents, school parents, and longtime voters, I hope you will take our view seriously. I also urge you to read the following from a twenty-plus-year practicing pediatrician. We firmly agree with her views and hope you will find them thought-provoking. Thank you for your consideration. If you would like to speak further, you can reach us at seven oh three, five eight five, eight seven oh seven. Is that three minutes?
Three minutes.
The remainder of the written comment is three pages of a note from a physician. The next comment is from Don Donald C. Montag Jr. And he has a letter he wanted to be read to the board, but it was addressed to Ms. Lindy Hockenberry. Mrs. T, I hope you're doing well. I got an email from Sue Schick Link about them wanting to change the name of our high school. Not sure why that is the case, but I suppose somebody has to justify their job by doing something. It makes little sense to me. Off the top of my head, I can think of two good reasons that Mason should stay Mason. Old George Mason didn't want to sign the Constitution because he felt the federal government would have too much power. He was right. He was also pivotal in getting slash helping to create the Bill of Rights. Bottom line, he was the man. Why in the blue blazes would they want to change the name of the school? Again, I hope you're doing well in these crazy times. Take care of yourself. Don Montag, class of eighty-six, eight nine four, two two nine, five five three two. The next note is from Susan Miller Monday. Chairman Anderson and members of the board, first, I apologize for the length of this letter. I don't, however, apologize for my passion. Eliminating oppression and hatred is a noble goal to strive for. Ridding our culture of symbols of oppression and hatred at least gets us started down the right path. Preserving America's history and celebrating its champions is also a noble goal. For history provides us not only a context for understanding our characters and nature, but helps us articulate our aspirations as we go forward. Rather than bending to whatever are currently politically correct, please look at the proposal to rename George Mason Junior Senior High School through the lens of history. Round about seventeen sixty-five, English colonists living in the New World started getting pretty fed up with the way they were being treated by the homeland. Many of these individuals were pretty fed up from the get-go, having left England more than a century earlier to escape religious persecution. Then came an onslaught of taxes and punishments. In seventeen seventy-six, knowing full well they would be hung as traitors if they failed, representatives of the United Colonies announced their independence from England and declared war to win the country's freedom. Among the celebrated Virginian patriots are George Washington, who led the Continental Army and served the country as its first president, Thomas Jefferson, who framed the Thomas Jefferson, who framed the Declaration of Independence, third president, James Madison, advocate-writer of the Bill of Rights, the first amendment to the Constitution that defined the individuals rather than the government's rights, fourth president, James Monroe, revolutionary soldier, Continental Congress delegate, fifth president, George Mason, who wrote the Virginia Bill of Rights, the first draft almost word-for-word for Madison's Bill of Rights and part of Jefferson's Declaration of Independence. The United States won the war, and yet, as yet, I am unaware of any revisionist history suggesting otherwise, and a new nation was born, conceived in liberty and dedicated to the proposition that all men are created equal. This is America's heritage. We didn't name buildings after or erect monuments to these founding fathers because they were slaveholders. No. We celebrate them because they were fearless patriots who risked their lives to found our country. Fast forward almost a hundred years. Southern states, pretty fed up with the government of the United States getting all up in their business, decided their ideas would be better served if they formed their own country. Eleven states, including Virginia, plus Missouri and Kentucky, who never officially seceded but were accepted into the Confederacy, announced their independence from the United States. When the southern states seceded, they betrayed we, the people. They chose to be the enemy, the traitor. In eighteen sixty-one, the Confederate States of America declared war on the United States when they attacked the Union Fort Sumter in Charleston, South Carolina. Over the course of the Civil War, an estimated one hundred and ten thousand U.S. soldiers were killed by Confederate forces or died from battle wounds. Thirty thousand Union soldiers died while prisoners of war, and another two hundred and thirty thousand died from disease. That's three hundred and seventy thousand dead Americans at the hands of Confederate soldiers. Less there be any doubt about the cause of the Civil War, the Vice President of the Confederate States, Alexander Stephens, made it crystal clear in one of the ugliest examples of hate speech in history. The prevailing ideas entertained by him, Thomas Jefferson, and most of the leading statesmen at the time of the formation of the old Constitution were that the enslavement of the African was in violation of the laws of nature, that it was wrong in principle socially.
That's three minutes.
Okay. It goes on for another two pages. The next statement is from Shannon Ashpole. I'm sorry, it's from Mary Ellen Miller, parent of three FCCPS students, class of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, and twenty twenty-four. Thank you, school board members, for your diligent work on behalf of our community of students in this difficult time. I'm writing to voice my support for the following. I support reopening schools as normally as possible and doing everything possible to support fall sports. I do not want any other agenda to distract the school board or administration from the first, foremost crucial issue. These are kids. We must primarily support the well-being of our diverse community of learners. These kids deserve the very best that our community can provide them. I am supportive of renaming the schools. I think this is entirely correct. For this reason, I can envision TJ renamed to signify the support of this community for an African-American who has impacted our community, as we named Mary Ellen Henderson. I can likewise see GMHS being changed to a name affirming first Americans, something like Hopewell High School. I would support these changes, but the timing is significant. We must not fail the students who currently depend on this school board to consider and enact the educational policies that will help most our kids. The issue of how to return to school should be resolved first. Thank you again for your diligence. I appreciate your work. The next comment is from Judy Dressendorf. And is her email address, and she signs the letter, Judy Fisher White, GM class of sixty-one. Dear school board members, as an alumna of the school system and the first president of the George Mason Alumni Association and its current co-chair, I have a longstanding history of interest in the schools. Initially, because of the replacement of George Mason, I thought it might be okay to change the George Mason name. And then I slowed down. I did what my dad, the scientist, taught me: consider all the facts. Both George Mason and Thomas Jefferson lived during the seventeen hundreds, when our country was under British control. The idea of abolitionism did not exist in their lifetime. However, history confirms that both of these men frequently spoke against slavery. Both fought during the American Revolution so we could become the independent country of the United States. While Jefferson and Mason were not able to stop slavery, their many messages were heard by future generations. Thomas Jefferson, the third president of the United States, considered his three greatest accomplishments to be the Declaration of Independence, the Virginia Statue for Religious Freedom, and the founding of the University of Virginia. George Mason authored the Virginia Declaration of Rights, later used for the United States Bill of Rights. Additionally, he authored a great deal of the U.S. Constitution, which he then refused to sign. Why? Because it did not eliminate slave trade, a trade that he hated and tried to end. Both were doers that overcame the many obstacles of the day. They had to travel long distances for meetings with no computer, no phone, no car, no stops for fast food or bathrooms. I ask, why are they not good enough examples for our students? Where would any of us be without the U.S. Constitution, the Bill of Rights, freedom of religion? These affect all races. Falls Church is a diverse and welcoming city and has nothing to be ashamed of. Following the Civil War, the Falls Church area welcomed a large community of slaves who had been set free. These included slaves who traveled north and were not accepted. They learned of the Falls Church community, joined and helped build their own town near the corner of Anandale Road and Arlington Boulevard. They were helped by locals to receive funding from the federal government, and it is reported that the locals also provided additional labor. During the early years, we had few or no blacks in our schools because we had only one black family in the city. He was a doctor who sent his children to private schools. What is the goal? It should be to educate the citizens about the history of their city, which was founded for the sole purpose of establishing a school system that would prepare students for college. It should educate students on the reasons why Jefferson and Mason were originally chosen as the names for their schools. Again, they were doers who made a difference in everyone's future. During World War II, in the nineteen forties, our local area was booming with well-educated federal government workers who enjoyed the hometown feel of Falls Church. Their only concern was the nearby Fairfax County school systems, which served their farmland community. These new citizens wanted a school system that prepared their children for college. They came together, spending both time and money, and in nineteen forty-eight, they achieved their goal. They turned Falls Church into an independent city with complete control over its own school system. I'm very grateful for their efforts. Thank you for this time. The next comment is from Allison Gaskins, GMHS class of nineteen ninety-four, and parent to GMHS classes of twenty sixteen, twenty eighteen, twenty twenty, and two students in twenty twenty-three. Dear FCCPS school board, you seem to have an impossible mission right now, keeping everyone in FCCPS safe, educated, employed, at home, away from home, on the athletic field, off the field, in the school buildings, out of school buildings, building new buildings, and renaming old ones. Wow. Thank you for not resigning from this volunteer position. My family and I are deeply indebted to you, and we are never going to be able to fully appreciate all you do on our behalf. You are amazing. I'm writing to request that you postpone any decision regarding renaming our schools until our whole community can give that the time and attention it deserves. Please focus your energies now on the most immediate question or questions of return to school and sports procedures for the fall. I believe the name change question merits some time and input from the broader community, as well as involvement from students in the classroom. As a GMHS grad and FCC lifer myself, I don't support quick changes to old situations. This devalues the impact of such changes. It could be such a formative experience for kids to participate in the unifying process towards new names, new identities, and restoration of important values in our schools. Let's not rush this or diminish it by making any decisions immediately. You have enough to figure out between now and August. Thank you sincerely for showing up again and again to these meetings, Zoom calls, all-night overthinking sessions, and plain hard work. You keep us moving forward, and we trust you with this job. Thank you for advocating for our children and sacrificing your time and energy to do so respectfully and with deep gratitude. The next comment is from Beth Langen. Dear school board, I'm writing to ask that you consider a couple of things when deciding about how school will look in the fall. I'm asking that you consider as normal a schedule as possible. I'm asking that you do your best to allow fall sports to happen, even if that means modifications. Our high schoolers are in dire need of socialization as well as in-person instruction. I'm worried about the amount of school that hasn't happened and the deficits that will follow. I do believe that they should all be required to wear masks while attending school. As far as changing the names of schools, please table this discussion until the decisions are made about the fall and how schools will be run. I do believe that we can and should add lots of instructions slash curriculum to address the Black Lives Matter issues. I don't agree with changing the names of the schools, however. George Mason and Thomas Jefferson were very important in Virginia, so it should be honored for their contributions to our country. I think changing the names of the schools would cost a lot of money too, and it's just not necessary. Thank you. Next comment is from Elizabeth V. Barbie Turner, class of nineteen sixty-one. I'm a nineteen sixty-one graduate of George Mason High School. Please do not change our high school name. There are a lot of us out here who have called George Mason our high school. Please do not change what it was to a lot of GM graduates, our school. Please do not delete our history. Thank you for listening. The next comment is from Chuck and Ginny DeRoss of five oh two B Walden Court. First, we would like to thank you for your service during these unprecedented times. We appreciate your hard work and your commitment to providing an excellent education to our city's children while protecting the health and safety of our citizenry. You face the unenviable challenge of attempting to plan for next year while we are still attempting to learn and understand the coronavirus that has turned our world upside down. We are grateful. We are writing to share our views regarding the two issues with which you have been grappling recently. One, whether and how to conduct face-to-face learning and activity next fall. And two, whether to change the names of Thomas Jefferson Elementary and George Mason High School. As to the first, we fully support your efforts to reopen the schools in the fall with operations as close to normal as safely allows. And to make every effort to allow activities such as athletics, band, and theater move forward. We understand there is much uncertainty regarding the extent to which children can become infected with coronavirus and the extent to which they may spread it to others. As our understanding of these factors evolves, we will develop more certainty regarding the proper course of action. But if our experiences spring taught us anything, it is that there is no true substitute for face-to-face learning. We need to be together to the extent that we can do so safely. This summer, our children are suffering as they continue to stay home, social distance from their friends, and miss out on typical activities such as sports leagues, summer camps, swim teams, and summer jobs. To the extent we can provide it, they need some normalcy, connection, and a sense of belonging that they get from going to school and working together towards common goals. These things will come only from returning to the classroom, music room, and their athletics, however modified to increase public health and safety. Regarding proposals to rename the schools, these are important and timely conversations for us to have. They should begin now, but not be rushed to completion over the summer months. Given the complexities of responding to the coronavirus, school reopening will be a primary focus of the school board between now and the end of August, which means decisions regarding renaming would not likely be made with a full and robust participation in the community. The entire community deserves an opportunity to listen and to be heard. There should be a process for soliciting community input and listening carefully to our community's views, including those of former students, current students, parents, and citizens. Our understanding is that other school systems in Virginia, such as Arlington, who have explored and are renaming their schools, establish commissions or advisory boards to solicit public input, comment, conduct public meetings, and ensure inclusion of all viewpoints. We're urged to do the same here in Falls Church. This next comment is from Lisa Young. Dear Dr. Noonan and members of the school board, thank you for all the hard work you have done and continue to do for FCC schools. As you prepare to make a decision about the next school year, I'm writing as the concerned parent of a rising senior to ask you to consider the option that gives our students the most face-to-face instruction and the most likeness to a normal school year. I have been and continue to be very concerned about a rising mental health crisis, not only with our teens, but the whole community, as lives are totally disrupted and put on hold. Although I understand very well that this is a health crisis, I believe there can be a balance struck between keeping our students and staff safe and giving them back a comforting sense of familiarity and normalcy. My son is in the Wind Ensemble, and the thought of school resuming without a band program is just devastating. School is more than just instruction. Kids need to socialize, learn to compromise, and navigate relationships. All this is done by being around their peers. COVID- nineteen is not the only health crisis that needs to be evaluated as you make your decision. Respectfully, Lisa Young and Hal Sweetman, Sam Sweetman's parents, class of twenty twenty-one. Now I have a few that I'm going to be reading off my computer. This first one is from Allison Brown at seven oh six Poplar Drive in Gardner-Humphreys. We urge you to increase attention to educational equity in the FCC schools, including through the following actions. Add resources to support marginalized communities and feeling safe to come back to school in Fall 2020. Enhance curriculum resources, after-school clubs, and other enrichment options for ESOL students. Add adult English classes for FCCPS parents and any staff who could benefit. Make sure the budget keeps current specialists in their positions, as some students need individualized and small-group help. Add specialists in discography and writing issues to make sure that all students grow these critical skills. Build local history into curriculum that is not teacher-dependent, so that all students learn in a meaningful way about the role of race and racial inequality in our system. Add tuition-free and sliding skill spots for FCC preschool students at Jesse Thackeray Preschool, as investing in preschool will enable more students to arrive at Mount Daniel ready for kindergarten. Add tuition-free or sliding skill spots for non-FCC students. The next comment is from Kiara Thies, class of twenty twenty-two. Dear school board, I believe in changing the names of GMHS and TJES. I don't think it is good that students attend schools that have the names of slaveholders and believers of white superiority. As an alumna of TJES and current student GMHS, I would like to go to a school that honors someone I can look up to. I think if we were to keep the names, the students should at least be educated as to who they was. I personally had only known George Mason's name from it being thrown around a couple of times in history classes, but I knew not much about what he had done. And while I did know more about Thomas Jefferson, I only learned about his time as a founding father. These two men have had great moments in history, but we cannot ignore the bad ones. The fact of the matter is they were racist and slaveholders, and that is not okay. As our society continues to evolve, I think we should think who we honor as well. I hope you take into consideration changing the names of these schools and help make Falls Church a friendlier environment. Sincerely. The next comment is from Melissa Teets. Dear school board members, I'm once again urging you to start a public process to discuss the name of the new high school building. I'm also in agreement with the other movement to investigate renaming TJES. The names of schools should either celebrate landmarks, geography, or a person that upholds our values. George Mason and Thomas Jefferson, as slave owners, do not represent our values. I've been told that we must be cognizant of the times they lived in as a reason to ignore their slaveholding. Benjamin Franklin owned slaves, and over time, he came to believe it was wrong. Franklin freed his slaves, and he was a man of this time too. George Washington inherited slaves and freed slaves on his deathbed, not Mason and not Jefferson. They did not free their slaves for personal economic reasons. I think we all agree that George Mason and Thomas Jefferson were both creators of democracy and oppressors of everyone who wasn't a white male. Their attitude towards slaves was especially oppressive, and both wrote of black slaves as being inferior to whites. We must accept that paradox and help our children understand both their contributions to society and their immoral personal support of slavery. Acceptance does not mean having their names on our school buildings, though. There are currently three petitions out. One, to rename the new high school. Two, to rename Thomas Jefferson Elementary School, and that was the first petition started by a recent alumni. And three, one to evaluate systemic racism in the city of Falls Church. These three petitions have garnered hundreds of signatures. Attached is a PDF of the high school petition showing two hundred and eight signatures as of ten PM on June fifteenth. The Thomas Jefferson Elementary School petition has six hundred and four signatures on it as of ten PM on June fifteenth. There's also a poll on the Falls Church News Press site with sixty-seven percent voting in favor of renaming George Mason High School as of ten PM on six fifteen. As pointed out, only the school board has the power to name a school building and to initiate a public process to discuss building names. I urge you to institute a public process for guidance for the name of the new high school building and TJES. To keep Mason and Jefferson on our schools contributes to systemic racism. Thank you for your consideration. The next comment is from Catherine Wood Turner. Should George Mason High School and Thomas Jefferson Elementary School be renamed? Although I now live just outside the Falls Church City limits, I'm a graduate of both of these institutions, and would like to weigh in on these issues. My understanding of the rationale for these proposed changes is that both men were slave owners. I believe that this is a very narrow view of both their lives. I think that their actions need to be evaluated in the context of their times, remembering no one is perfect. Mason was born in seventeen twenty-five and died in seventeen ninety-two. Jefferson was born in seventeen forty-three and died in eighteen twenty-six. Both men inherited large land holdings and slaves in an economy that depended on slaves as labor. As Virginia law passed in sixteen twenty-one, required any freed slave to leave the state, and the former owner is required to pay for the trip. It was replaced in seventeen twenty-three by law that made it virtually impossible to free slaves. It stated, "No Negro, Mulatto, or Indian slave shall be set free upon any pretense whatsoever, except for some meritorious services, to be adjudged and allowed by the governor and council for the time being and licensed thereupon first had and obtained." This law was in effect until seventeen eighty-two. In this culture, which fully supported slavery, both men spoke out against it. Jefferson's draft of the Declaration of Independence contained a clause condemning slavery, and George Mason left the Constitutional Convention without signing because the document did not put an end to the slave trade and omitted any guarantee of what he considered essential rights. Those essential rights were later incorporated into the Bill of Rights, which is modeled on the Virginia Declaration of Rights drafted with Mason. They did not manage to end slavery, but they raised awareness. If they had not raised the issue, slavery may have continued longer than it did. Neither man freed their slaves at their death. Jefferson died with large debts, which were secured by his property, including slaves. Mason had nine children to provide for. No excuses, reasons. Both men did many good things. Slavery is horrible, but it was not universally viewed as great as an evil as it is today. We should consider how people would view us in the future. We will be condemning for driving gas-guzzling cars that contribute to global warming, eating meat, failure to conserve water, or having more than one child in an overpopulated world. I think it is more important to focus on the contributions of these men to our evolving nation than to dwell on their failings. We need to move forward and put the past behind us. We cannot change the past, but we can work for a better future. The government that these men helped create gives us the right to pursue the future that we choose. The next comment is from Robbie Worth, GMHS class of nineteen seventy, and GMHS class representative, class of seventy, and GMHS Alumni Association. It includes footnotes to links to websites. The statement from Mr. Worth goes, Dear Falls Church City School Board members, thank you for your service to Falls Church City and the Falls Church City Public Schools. I am the current class representative for the GMHS class of nineteen seventy and have been an active member of the George Mason High School Alumni Association since its founding. I'm writing the school board in my hopes that you will decide to keep the name of our dear high school like George Mason. My mother, some sixty-seven years ago, chose Falls Church as our family's place of residence because it was the only school system in Northern Virginia that was integrated. Since then, Falls Church has been a welcoming community for all. When attending the Summer Day Recreation Program in the early nineteen sixties, we drove to Loudoun County on a Falls Church school bus in order to swim to an integrated swimming pool. George Mason High School was a symbol of equality for the state of Virginia. If the overriding issue is that George Mason IV was the owner of slaves, I would like to bring to light the role that Mason played in trying to free slaves during the early formation of the republic. First and foremost, there were fifty-seven signers of the Declaration of Independence, and forty-one were slave owners. Many of these were from the North. Some of the most notable, other than the most publicized signers, Washington, Jefferson, Madison, and Monroe, were as follows. Benjamin Franklin. Franklin did not publicly speak out against slavery until late in his life. As a young man, he owned slaves and carried advertisements for the sale of his slaves in his newspaper, the Pennsylvania Gazette. John Hancock was the first signatory on the Declaration and the first and third governor of the state of Massachusetts. Martin Van Buren, eighth president of the United Martin Van Buren, eighth president of the United States from New York. Robert Morris, a prominent Philadelphian who actually engaged in the slave trade as a side business to their shipping and property investments. George Mason's record of accomplishments is well documented, as is his position as one of the only outspoken critics of slavery in the Continental Congress. Mason also backed his words with action. In seventeen eighty-seven, Mason was named one of the state's delegates to the Constitutional Convention. Many clauses in the Constitution were written by Mason, as he was active in the convention for months before deciding he could not sign it. He cited the lack of the Bill of Rights most prominently in his objections, but also wanted an immediate end to the slave trade. Mason favored stopping any further importation of slaves, which didn't turn out the way he had hoped. A compromise came about that decided to permit the slave trade for another twenty years, which had Mason very upset. Some of his most famous quotes on slavery were, "As much as I value a union of all the states, I would not admit the Southern states into the union unless they agreed to the discontinuance of this disgraceful trade, because it would bring weakness and not strength to the union. The augmentation of slaves weakens estates, and such a trade is diabolical in itself and disgraceful to mankind." Author Peter Watson felt that there is much to be learned from Mason. A provincial slave-holding tobacco planer took his turn as a revolutionary. In tune with some of the leading intellectual currents of the Western world, he played a central role in drafting a Declaration of Rights and the seventeen seventy-six Virginia State Constitution. For his own reasons, he fought. Okay, and I have a few more emails. The first is from Lisa Bockelman at two six nine Gundry Drive. Dear School Board members, I strongly support renaming FCCPS George Mason High School and the Thomas Jefferson Elementary School to be more inclusive of all community members. With all the racial violence and trauma that our country has experienced, now is the time for us to look inward and examine how we can be better citizens and truly reflect the IB program principles. Further, naming a building after someone confers a lot of honor, and our school building names reflect the values of our community. Regarding renaming the high school, in spite of George Mason being the author of the Virginia Declaration of Rights, he had over one hundred enslaved people on his plantations. In addition, although he struggled with the idea of owning slaves and the idea of slavery, he maintained ownership of all of his slaves during his lifetime, even as the Virginia law gradually allowed for manumission in seventeen eighty-two. She has a link to a website there. About renaming our elementary school, while Thomas Jefferson did write, "All men are created equal," in other writings, he did not apply this principle to black people. I advance it, therefore, as suspicion only that the blacks, whether originally a distinct race or made distinct by time and circumstances, are inferior to the whites in the endowments both of body and mind, and she quotes to the website. In addition, according to the Monticello Archives, a letter Thomas Jefferson wrote to Marquis de Chester-Lue, June seventh seventeen eighty-five, about segregation ideas suggested a racial group is permanently inferior. I believe that Indian, then, to be in body and mind equal to the white man. I suppose the black man in his present state might not be so, but it would be hazardous to affirm that. Equally cultivated for a few generations, he would not become so. Another quote there to a website. You can read more about Thomas Jefferson's ideas on racism in his notes on the state of Virginia. Now that we know the truth, we should do the right thing and change the names of these two school buildings. For inspiration, please see this note on the inscription of the Thomas Jefferson Memorial. Laws and institutions must go hand in hand with the progress of the human mind. As that becomes more developed, more enlightened, as new discoveries are made, new truths disclosed, and manners and opinions change with the change of circumstances, institutions must advance also and keep pace with the times. We might as well require a man to wear, we might as well require a man to wear this, still the coat which fitted him when a boy, a civil society to remain ever under the regiment of their barbarous ancestors. Thank you for your consideration of these important first steps in becoming a stronger anti-racist community and living up to all the great ideals of what the Falls Church community stands for, with gratitude. And my last comment to read tonight is from Kevin and Becky Creed. Dated June thirtieth, twenty twenty, FCCPS School Board. We are writing to express our opposition to the proposed name changes to George Mason High School and Thomas Jefferson Elementary School. Jefferson and Mason should not be lumped in the same category as the Confederate generals and leaders whose names and images are currently being removed from public venues for their violent advocacy for secession against equality. Mason and Jefferson are not respected for being slaveholders or their other fallings as human beings. Rather, they are honored for their role in establishing a new nation conceived in liberty and dedicated to the proposition that all men are created equal, a goal which our country continues to struggle to fully achieve two hundred-plus years later. The school board should be engaging the entire community in a thoughtful discussion, listen to all of its varied opinions, and not be rushed by arbitrary deadlines regarding signage at the new high school. This discussion should really begin this fall, when our school community has returned better together for a new academic year. Regarding the reopening plan for the upcoming school year, our family is excited to have an in-person instruction option for the fall. We believe that it is important for our students' return to school in a face-to-face setting for both academic reasons as well as social emotional reasons. Similar, we look forward to the return to extracurricular activities, including high school athletics. We realize that the entire state is awaiting VHSL guidance in this regard, but would like the school board to understand that these student activities are an integral part of the FCCPS community. We support our athletic department and the Mason administration in finding solutions to keep our student athletes safe, but the goal should be to create the best plan in the forward with a high school experience for our students. Thank you.
I have the next set of comments, first from Georgette Chapins-Wilson. I'd like to add my name and vote to those who oppose changing the name of George Mason School. While I support the current activists fighting to change the past injustices to people of color, particularly blacks, I do not think changing names or taking down monuments without a national dialogue and debate is helpful or constructive in the long run. You cannot erase history, quote, "It is what it is," end quote. Personally, I would like to see new monuments for people of color as a way of addressing our collective history and stalled us counterpoints to the injustices of past history. Selected and placed after an informed and reasoned process that educates all citizens about our past, thank you for your consideration. The next is from Fred Skubal. Dear School Board, my name is Fred Skubal, a graduate of GMHS class of nineteen sixty-one. Growing up in Falls Church, my five siblings and I attended these schools. Why are you considering changing the name of these schools? These names are our founding fathers and our authors of the Declaration of Independence, the US President, and a Virginia statesman, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I respectfully request that you Google George Mason and Thomas Jefferson and take a history lesson of what our founding fathers accomplished. You cannot change history, respectfully submitted. The next is from Angie and Patrick Mellon. Dear School Board members and FCCPS staff members, we wanted to send a letter with our opinions on two subjects, the restarting of schools/sports in the fall and the renaming of Thomas Jefferson Elementary and George Mason High School. First, it should be the goal of FCCPS to have as many children in the classroom as possible this fall, not in online school. We did not find the online school to be a good alternative to in-school instruction for our children, although we realized that it was a stopgap during a crisis and that FCCPS did the best it could at the time. Thanks to all the staff for your diligence. We support allowing families/staff to opt out of in-person. Thank you for considering our opinions. Again, thank you for all your time and effort in making FCCPS the best it can be. We hope to see everyone again soon. We miss everyone. Angie and Patrick Mellon, Emerson eleventh, Lauren eleventh, Braden seventh. Oh, we also wanted to add a link from the American Academy of Pediatrics to the note we just sent to the school board about the reopening in fall twenty twenty. Here it is, quote, "The AAP strongly advocates that all policy considerations for the coming school year should start with a goal of having students physically present in school," end quote, and they included the link. Thank you again, Angela and Patrick. The next is from Ariana Hamid. Hello, my name is Ariana Hamid, and I'm a rising junior at George Mason High School. I've heard about the recent comments from the community arguing that all of the teachers and facilities in the FCCPS system should be devoted to K-five education. I have a younger brother in that age group, and although I understand the toll distance learning has on their education, I don't believe this is the best course of action. As high schoolers, our learning has suffered greatly during this time of distance learning. As many of us are nearing college, we need in-class instruction. I don't know exactly what this next year will entail, but I do know that high schoolers can't afford to be left behind. Thank you for your time. From Joseph Dakin. Hello, I'm a rising junior at George Mason High School, and I'm taking the eighteenth diploma plus the EMT course. And the rest of the students at George Mason need face-to-face teaching, even for just fifty percent of the time. The distance learning implemented during the shutdown of the twenty nineteen dash twenty twenty school year was less than ideal. I find that I and most of the class of twenty twenty-two were not able to learn effectively. From Tobias Centerwich. I've heard rumors that some elementary school parents are petitioning for those students to use all FCCPS facilities this fall, effectively forcing high school students to continue distance learning. This decision would be unfairly prioritizing younger students and making it more difficult for older students who are taking harder and, to be frank, more important classes to learn those subjects adequately. Additionally, the beginning of the school year is an important time for teachers to introduce students to new subjects and to prepare them for the rigors of higher-level classes. For students taking IB or AP courses, the starting foundation of information can be incredibly influential, as I've experienced firsthand when it comes to exams. As a high schooler myself, I strongly believe that continuing distance learning for high schoolers to improve face-to-face learning for elementary students would negatively impact those same high schoolers to an incredibly powerful degree. Thank you for your consideration. From Bobby Miller. Hello, my name is Bobby Miller, and I'm a rising junior at George Mason High School. It recently came to my attention that there are numerous elementary school parents asking that school resources should be devoted to teaching K-five in a face-to-face environment, leaving the rest of FCCPS school system online for the coming school year. I understand that parents are not well-equipped to aid in homeschooling K-to-five students and that they may benefit more from social interaction than older students. I can acknowledge that these are unprecedented times. However, neglecting fourteen hundred students is not the answer. FCCPS's mission statement states that, quote, "We strive to create a personalized learning environment that supports each child's unique needs," end quote. How is treating one half of the school body different than the others, supporting each child's unique needs? As I previously mentioned, I'm a rising junior. There's no way that I can take and learn from all my incoming IB course load with no physical classroom to learn in. I haven't met a single person that can adequately learn calculus on a computer. I would be fine with having some days of class online, but I fear my grades and the other high schoolers being forgotten and abandoned during the most important academic years of our lives. Not including middle and high schoolers in the classroom instruction is simply an inconsiderate and thoughtless idea. Thank you for your time. From Whitney Witt Pollock. I write you to personally urge you in determining whether to change the name of Thomas Jefferson School and George Mason High School to prioritize the voices of your black students, like my nephew Carrie Heard. She then includes a link to a CBS News article, "Virginia Middle Schoolers Are Learning About Blackface: Here's What They Have to Say." Many thanks for the opportunity to amplify Carrie's powerful and brave voice to our wider community. Sincerely, Whitney Pollock, GMHS Class of oh one. From Judy White Dressendorfer. Hello, fellow GMHS alumni. In the event that you haven't heard, I wanted to let you know that Falls Church City School Board is strongly considering changing the names of both Thomas Jefferson and George Mason schools. If you'd like to be heard, I suggest two things. First, please go to the Falls Church News Press and vote. Secondly, please send your thoughts to the FC School Board. They're acting quickly. Needless to say, the world has changed significantly since the schools were founded and named in nineteen forty-eight. If the decision is to be made to change the name of the schools, we have an opportunity to send a clear educational message to the students. The city discriminates against no one. I've done a great deal of research regarding the naming of schools throughout our country. The majority of schools are named for their location, such as Falls Church, or the landowner, such as Lord Fairfax. Of note are the jurisdictions that have adopted the following guideline, quote, "School names must not discriminate and slash or cause offense on the basis of race, ethnicity, religion, disability, sexuality, or gender," end quote. There are five races, black slash African-American, Asian, American Indian, Native Hawaiian, and white. The last school named in Falls Church City was Mary Ellen Henderson, a female, black slash African-American. If we continue naming our schools after an individual based upon any one race, the clear message is that the city is racist, if not now, certainly in the not-too-distant future. Please ask the school board not to select a name based on what it means to one race, but what it means to all races. If the schools are to be renamed, what name should be used? Needless to say, there are many options that are not related to race, following your few thoughts from my research. Horizon High or New Horizon High. Virginia High, Wyoming High is also in the top one hundred high schools. Academic High, top one hundred, University High, top one hundred, Providence High, National High. Please send your thoughts and/or suggestions for a name to the Falls Church City School Board in the event of a name change. Falls Church City School Board, Caref Marty Goodell, Clerk Goodell M, at FCCPS dot org, Falls Church City Public Schools dot org. Also, please visit the GMHS website, gm dot FCCPS dot org. I do hope that this finds you well and staying very safe. I know that some of you may disagree with me, however, that makes for good conversation. Thank you and many blessings, Judy Fisher White, class of sixty-one. From Aliyah Lewis. I'm a rising junior, and I have been hearing rumors that people want to have high schoolers be online and put younger kids in physical school. High school is the most important part of education. We're working hard to get into college and deserve to have in-classroom help. Putting younger children in schools will not impact them as much as it will for high schoolers. We need to be around people and to have more help from teachers, access to the school library, and the ability to get tech support. Don't let parents have only younger children in school and just have high schoolers, just have high schoolers in school or all students in school. From Hunter Hicks. Dear School Board, as a resident of Falls Church and an FCCPS student, I strongly urge you to create a plan with in-person learning for high school students. I worked through e-learning this spring and do not believe it's an effective mode of learning. Next year, my course selection involves hands-on classes, such as HL Tech Design. This is a highly-involved class that requires a workshop, tools, and in-person instruction that cannot be mimicked online. While online learning may make sense on paper, there are so many intricacies that will go unheard. This past year, I got into high school at seven twenty every morning in order to work on the school's hydroponics and aquaponic gardens. This experience introduced me to a possible future career in agriculture. I also learned many real-life skills that were not assigned through one course. This is just one of the many nonessential experiences that in-person high school offers that could change a student's life. I understand that restrictions must be placed, but I've grown to love Mason, and the removal of all in-person learning would be a devastating blast to my educational career. Thanks for your consideration. From Griffin Harrison. My name is Griffin Harrison, and I'm going to be in eleventh grade next year at GMHS. Recently, I've heard of a large group of FCC parents who are calling for high school to transition to a hundred percent online learning this next year. This is coupled with a proposition that all buildings and teachers become devoted to teaching grades K-to-five. As I'm sure you're all well aware, this would be catastrophic for our school system and especially older students preparing for college. Online learning is significantly more challenging than learning in a face-to-face environment and would pose a much larger challenge to older students than younger ones. Obviously, there are no guarantees with school this year, but if we were given the chance to reopen and we only extended that opportunity to elementary school students, we would be making a grave mistake. High schoolers already missed a significant portion of the previous school year. IB exams were canceled, SATs were canceled, and AP tests were postponed and modified greatly. All of these opportunities for students to prove their abilities have passed, putting them at a great disadvantage. To only reopen school for younger grades would also increase this disadvantage. On top of the missed test, high schoolers also have a much more rigorous course schedule. The transfer to distance learning brought substantially reduced course loads, but we cannot keep that up forever. Imagine the struggles that both teachers and students would endure if they had to learn calculus, physics, or write their extended essays online. For elementary students, the online transfer would be negligible in terms of learning. Sure, it would put in some extra strain on parents as they're forced to look after their kids through the day, but the difference between online learning and face-to-face instruction would prove far less significant. A parent would also have a much easier time explaining basic multiplication than they would trying to help their twelfth grader calculate derivatives. Thanks for your, thanks for your time, and I hope you're staying healthy and safe. The next is from Ballerino Castillo Juarez. I'm Ballerino Castillo Juarez, a rising sophomore at George Mason High School. I'm writing to you because I want to go back to school in August. Please listen to the high schoolers. We all want to go back in person. Thank you. From Julie Felger. Dear School Board, I'm writing to express my opinion on the potential uptake of a conversation to rename Thomas Jefferson Elementary and George Mason High School, given their respective namesakes association with slavery. First and foremost, I do not believe that now is the time to take up this discussion, period. I cannot emphasize that enough. We're in an unprecedented time in which our school system, along with all others in our area and many around the nation, are combating a health crisis which threatens to undermine education as we know it and disrupt the lives of our students and educators. I believe the COVID response and the construction and transition of the new high school are two issues that demand the full attention of our school system. Responsible leadership requires prioritization of efforts to achieve maximum success in the ultimate ultimate mission, education of our young citizens. While the renaming may be a populist decision at present, it's not germane to the fundamental mission of education, which is being threatened by an exogenous shock and requires full attention. Secondly, on the topic of renaming the schools due to the fact that both Thomas Jefferson and George Mason both owned slaves, I understand that the overarching concern is that people have expressed that our school system in no way wants to project that we're condoning human trafficking of any sort. I also understand that many are railing against the idea that our country has long celebrated those who stood up for slavery during the Civil War. Civil War generals and our founding fathers. Civil War generals and our founding fathers are two different topics. I strongly advocate that we cannot judge our founding fathers by modern-day standards, which is born of the learning of over two hundred and forty-four years. This very fact, I have the right to send this letter to our elected officials who are of different genders and races, is owed by these founding fathers. Freedom of the press is owed to them as well as the foundation of civil rights. Human beings are not perfect. We learn over time and progressively trend toward a better society. The foundation men like Thomas Jefferson and George Mason and gave our nation is what it allows for the discussion that we're having today. I believe that we need to take a closer look at our curriculum as to how our little city came to be and the segregationist past and presence we live in today. I believe we could and should bolster our curriculum with regards to social, legal, and economic inequity in our society in the past and present and the long-term effects that slavery and other forms of racial subjugation has and has had on our past and present. We went, we went to develop critical thinkers and advocates of true justice from our school system. However, changing the names of our schools is not the way to educate our students. Respect what we can from the past, but educate for the future. Sincerely. From Eli Wildman. Dear School Board, my name is Eli Wildman and I'm going into my junior year of high school at George Mason. I wanted to talk about the need for high schoolers to be in the school buildings in the fall. As one of the many students who struggled during distance learning, I've come to the conclusion that learning from home in high school cannot be a possibility. The subjects that we cover cannot be implemented or explained well through any form of distance learning and technology. Whereas in elementary school, you may be able to get past these obstacles, complicated subjects such as calculus and theory of knowledge, to name a few, cannot be explained through a computer. We're at a pivotal point in our careers and I know for a fact I'm not the only one worried about college and to receive the best opportunity I can, I believe the high schoolers must be in school. In my personal opinion, I did not gain anything through distance learning as it's much harder to connect with teachers and practice knowledge. In elementary school, parents are aware of the majority of knowledge that the children need to know and can explain it to me. But as a student learning calculus this coming year, I know that my parents cannot explain this to me. And as I touched upon, neither can a teacher online. Many of my peers reflect the same ideas and I'm not the only one who thinks like this. Thank you for your time and consideration. From Grace Elizabeth Brown Schiners. What is the need to change the name of George Mason and Thomas Jefferson schools? Is there truly a need or is this just to placate some individuals for liberalism instead of a need? Changing the name of these schools will not change history. It's just another step in making our younger generation ignorant of our true American heritage. Hiding from the truth does not change the facts. George Mason has an excellent reputation as adored by those of us having the honor of being educated by GMHS faculty. My thought is that the Falls Church City School Board's time would be better spent on educating our children instead of trying to make them grow up in a false environment. It's truly a shame to see a young person having to look at a cash register prompt because they can't make change for a purchased item. It's also a shame to hear the English language being used incorrectly such as, quote, "Me and my mom went shopping," end quote, instead of, quote, "Mom and I went shopping," end quote. Your target should be educational, not political correctness or trying to pat yourselves on the back for doing something just a sham. This appears to be wasted time and energy just to appease those wanting to hide from the truth. Grace Brown Schiners, Class of nineteen sixty-one. From Judy Weed Whitman. As another nineteen sixty-one GMHS alumna, I totally support Judy Dressendorfer's statements. In addition to presenting a well-written argument, she provided a great history lesson as well, including for me. I know you will carefully review all comments you receive. Thank you for considering mine in support of keeping George Mason High School's name. Blue Lives Matter. If children are the rainbows of life, grandchildren are the pots of gold. Judy Weed Whitman, Class of nineteen sixty-one. From Carl Cole, dear School Board members. Also an alumni of GM Class of sixty-one, I cannot agree more with our co-chair Judy. Changing a name is really a transgression against the long history of Virginia and our founding fathers. Changing a name is nothing to improve the racism environment we live in. We need to change hearts and minds, not names. See Cole Rockford, Illinois. Then from Jennifer Smith. Dear Mr. Anderson and fellow School Board members. As parents to two of the few black students that will one day attend GMHS, I'd like to implore the Board to allow a public discussion of the new high school building name. With the construction, there's no better time than now and further, the time is always right to do what is right. Please think about these kids for a moment. How do you think they feel walking into school every day named for a slaveholder? Or wearing a uniform with the slaveholder's name blazoned across the front? Shouldn't our school be a place where all students feel welcome? Thank you for your time and for all your hard work you put into making our schools a better place. Regards. From Alice Teaks. I support discussing the names of GMHS and TJES. Thomas Jefferson and George Mason were slaveholders and believed black people were inferior to white people. The founders who owned slaves are just as bad as the Confederates who protected the founders' legacy of slaves. We're not asking to remove them from history, but to stop honoring them in our schools. And remember, history teaches that the Revolutionary War was started over taxes, not philosophy. White men were upset over colonial taxes and did not want to pay for them. Sure, they pulled from their classical education, Greek, Rome, Locke, et al., and wrote wonderful statements of freedom and equality, but in the end, they wanted to pay less taxes and the words only applied to white men. Please allow a public discussion. From Gordon Thies. Thank you for continuing to consider the discussion of the appropriateness of the names of George Mason and Thomas Jefferson schools. Twenty twenty has taught me that discussion isn't good enough. Only action is good enough. Falls Church schools are falling behind on racial justice. In the last two weeks, Princeton has removed Woodrow Wilson from its public policy school. Fairfax County is considering removal of Robert E. Lee and Mosby from two schools. Alexandria may remove T.C. Williams and other districts are considering similar moves. Removing names of leaders who are unrepentant slaveholders or segregationists from schools does not erase their history. It's simply, it leaves them simply to history, good and bad. No school should continue to be named in honor of someone who owned another human being. How can a discussion continue beyond this point? How will people in twenty forty look back at our school board from twenty twenty? Do the right thing, change the names. Sincerely. That was my last comment.
And I believe I have the last set. The first one is from Kathleen Tremblay. Dear School Board members, I am a mother of two Falls Church City teenagers ages fourteen and fifteen, writing to encourage the School Board to safely reopen the high school and sports clubs as soon as possible. Out of all age groups affected by the quarantine, teenagers have been especially hit hard, both educationally and socially. As any teen parent will tell you, when teens are home, even in normal times, they tend to isolate themselves in their room. As parents, we are constantly begging our teens to get out of the house and see their friends so they can engage socially. Now, in these quarantine times, teens are becoming more isolated and lonely and depressed. They have no interest in getting online and distance learning, stating that they are sick of online learning. They know, just like all of us know, that real learning, group projects, labs, hands-on designing, and inquiry-based learning, et cetera, cannot occur online. What excites a teenager to learn is in-person engagement and collaboration with peers. Study after study has shown that peer interaction during the teenage years is critical for learning, social development, determining beliefs, and forming healthy relationships. Peers give teens the opportunity to try out different ways of being or thinking with a new group of individuals they are not finding at home. Younger kids will ultimately get to have a high school experience, but the teens, our future, they are missing out on learning and social development at a critical point in their lives and falling deeper into isolation and depression. Please take both the social and academic concerns into consideration when you plan the schooling for next year. And when you safely open the schools, please open the clubs and sports, even if you have to open them only for no-contact practices. My daughter has just started meeting in person for practices with her team, following social distance protocols. She has been doing Zoom videos for months and has been telling me she does not feel connected at all with her team. After just three no-contact social distancing practices with her team in person, she is so much more excited and connected. In-person interaction, even six feet apart, makes a huge difference. Thank you for your consideration. The next is from student Adam Schultz. We are only going to be in school for two more years. Not only that, but we are learning advanced concepts that are significantly more difficult to learn online, especially compared to what K through fifth graders are learning. A majority of what K through fifth graders are learning can be taught by parents or pushed back a year easily. Not only that, but what kids learn at that stage does not have as much of an immediate effect. And by the time their time comes to graduate in over seven years, there will be no impact on their lives from learning at home for a while. While yes, it's true, many parents of younger children both have jobs and neither are able to stay at home with their child, it does not mean we should be giving all resources to those children. High schoolers are already in a horrible position to be in during the last year's education before college, with mounting stresses and a necessity to go through school in the middle of a pandemic. I'm a rising junior and this next year is incredibly important for college and I don't want my entire life screwed over because some parents thought their child needed to go to school more than us. The next letter is from Nancy Elderhort, Class of sixty-eight, who wrote to Mary Beth Connolly, who forwarded to the School Board. I forwarded to the Class of sixty-eight the information Luke O'Hara sent me regarding the possibility of changing the names of GM and TJ. Well, that really struck a chord with the entire class. The response was an overwhelming, this is ridiculous. They primarily object to changing the names of the schools because these men's have made, these men have made significant and historic contributions to our country. The fact they owned slaves, that was another time. Their dedication to our country certainly outweighs that. I think I didn't word this very well, but I wanted you to know that the strongly class objects, that the, yes, the strongly class objects to the name-changing and should that occur, they will no longer attend any alumni event. With the demolition of the school, the changing of the school name will adversely impact the Alumni Association. Thanks, Nancy Elderhart, GM Class of sixty-eight, Representative. The next is from James Scott. The first question is, why change the name at all? A name change really does nothing. Lest history be forgotten, George Mason was a brilliant Virginian who was very important to the creation and the writing of the Virginia Bill of Rights, which in large part framed the National Bill of Rights. That he owned slaves far predates the Civil War. Moreover, moreover, the design of our government fostered in large part by Mr. Mason enabled us Americans to remedy the imperfections in equality over the years. Are we done? No, but much, much progress has been made in erasing history and the memory of our designers and our struggles leaves us no baseline from which the imperfections can still be identified and fixed as the, so many have. Thank George Mason and the others by honoring their respective contributions, not foibles. Please do not change the name. Jim Scott, Class of fifty-nine. Pardon me.
Mr. Anderson. Action here. I think you might be down to three board members. Oh, there's four. Okay.
Have four again.
All right. Just want to make sure you maintain a quorum.
Yes, indeed. Thank you.
The next is from Scott Wilson of Arlington, Virginia. Dear Ms. Goodell, I graduated from GMHS in nineteen sixty-four and have lived in the area for much of the resulting years. I question the need to change the name of the school. I'm very supportive of removal of all statues, et cetera, of Civil War Confederate leaders in large part because not only did they fight against the Union in order to save slavery, which was the main support of their economy, but those statues were primarily built as part of a sustained effort to continue the dominance and control of blacks in the South to as near slavery conditions, slavery conditions as possible, using violence as well as message control. That persists to this day and needs to be expunged. What I caution is the rush to paint all slaveholders in the seventeen hundreds with the same brush as the situation described above. Achieving equality under our system has definitely been a work in progress and those who actively resisted equality for blacks, women, or LGBTQ persons should not be honored for those efforts. Many, if not all, of our historic figures who worked to pave the way to greater equality for all can likely be criticized in some fashion for views they held at the time which were wildly out of step with today and objectionable to us. So I would recommend that you weigh a person's positive contributions to our more perfect union against the things we see today as objectionable. I am white-skinned and haven't suffered the often daily affronts that our African-American citizens suffer. But while our history should be preserved, it should be preserved in a way that we learn not to repeat the mistakes of our history, much as Germany has done in the post-World War Two period. This is not a simple decision, so please consider the nuances. You may come to the same decision, but the process is important. The next is from Joe Briggs Freeman, Class of sixty-six, to the Falls Church City School Board in care of Marty Goodell. While renaming of buildings does happen, it is a shame to feel that one must rename a school due to possible current social influences instead of the school's own admirable history. I do not believe that the majority of Americans feel that everything that bears a person's name must now be renamed. The real influence is being hammered by a group of unknown anarchists who are stirring up emotions through violent means. Naming a building, naming a building after a person of a different race does not necessarily solve the ongoing problem of racism. It simply shifts the focus. Rewriting history brings us full circle to the books we all have read in high school, Brave New World, nineteen eighty-four, and Lord of the Flies, including the mention of a memory hole and the constant revision of his history whenever someone in charge expressed disapproval. What person's name can ever be used without impunity? We are all subject to error. None are perfect. George Mason provided Virginia with the Virginia Bill of Rights and the U.S. Constitution was modeled after that document. The fact that he owned slaves did not tarnish his brilliance, since it was the tradition of the times in which he lived. We all have such traditions under which we grew up, which we have since discarded based on our learning and experiences. Life is about learning and evolving. Perhaps shifting the focus by renaming the school Patriot George Mason Junior Senior High School would accent the positive effect. I am sure that is why his name was originally chosen. I am all for retaining the name of the school as is or slightly modified. Since Falls Church already has been used for a high school that now lives in Fairfax County, that would seem to eliminate our city's name as an option. Mustangs High School seems a little odd since there is no field of Mustangs on which one could point. Manila names are easily forgotten and again, ignore the real problem. The public re-education on race relations has already started and is featured on every television station every night of the week. If this subject is not already part of the regular curricula, perhaps it should be. This could also include after-school forums for ongoing discussions. You have a difficult decision to handle. I pray you do not let pressure influence your decision. I believe that rewriting history to satisfy a few would be far more dangerous than using that history as a learning tool to prevent further disrespect. Covering up the past is not a solution for exercising respect for others. Thank you for your careful considerations. The next is from Eddie O'Creasy, a proud graduate of GMHS. I was recently advised that the School Board wants to change the name of GMHS. I attended GMHS for grades six through twelve and graduated in nineteen sixty-one. I played varsity football and baseball. I am totally against changing the name of the school. Some of my fondest memories occurred while attending GMHS. We had an excellent reputation in academics and athletics. The members of our class knew all the members of our class and those members of the class ahead of us and the class behind us. The name George Mason belongs to a distinguished leader of the Commonwealth. Changing the name of the school shows a total disrespect for those who have attended this fine institution. I am not aware of anyone that I have offended and to change the name is a direct insult to all our graduates and myself. A name change will make all of our class rings and yearbook token, tokens of a far-reaching tyrannical, tyrannical government. I hope you will give sincere and deliberate thought before you change the name of GMHS. The next is from Zoe Clement. Hello, I am emailing in regard to reopening the school in the fall. It has come to my attention that elementary school parents are petitioning for all FCCPS locations and teachers to be fully devoted to K through five students. This meaning that all middle and high schoolers continue with online school. I think this is completely wrong. Out of anyone in Falls Church City, K-five students are the last people that need all hands on deck. Online school is nowhere near the right environment for high schoolers. To take away all their resources because elementary school parents said so is wrong call. Please take my thoughts and the thoughts of many other middle and high school students into consideration. The next is from Dave Mercer, two oh seven Grove Avenue. I read in the FCNP that seven hundred people proposed to change the name of the elementary school. Please relay my opinion to the school board. Thomas Jefferson, Thomas Jefferson was a visionary who advocated for equality despite the fact that he did not live up to his own ideals. He was not perfect. Neither was or is anyone else, but he gave the vision of equality and promoted it. If we destroy the names of those who, although imperfect, advocated for good, the next is that we will destroy the vision they advocated. I had three sons go through the TJ Elementary School and two grandchildren at May. Changing the names will only demonstrate that the school board is no more enlightened than the seven hundred advocates. I have a strong impression that few of the teachers my sons were exposed to knew much about American history. Instead of changing names, I recommend we renew our interest in teaching American history, the good, the bad, the ugly, and the enlightened. If Thomas Jefferson is not the role model, then who? Antifa? Attack everyone in the name of hate? Let the schools focus on teaching history, phonics, civics, and mathematics, and forget monetary political momentary political correctness. The next is from Dr. Terrence Woolsey, class of sixty-eight. Mr. Marty Goodell, please forward this message to the school board. Thank you. I graduated from GMHS in nineteen sixty-eight and was a tumultuous, it was a tumultuous year for our country. I have fond memories of my time at GM. I went on in my career for Fairfax County Public Schools to work with Kate Hanley and very closely with the late, great Nancy Sprague, who started her career at Falls Church City Schools. My family of eight lived in the city for sixty-five years. Our son attended FCCPS and got an excellent education. I am against changing the names of George Mason High School and Thomas Jefferson Elementary School. I think it's, I think it makes sense to draw the line for name changes to those who fought against the United States and for the Confederacy. Schools that have been named for founding fathers should be left in place. It is a reasonable place to draw the line. Their contributions have to be remembered, and it's a valuable lesson to teach our children that they weren't perfect men. Keeping the names of our founders in place can teach that lesson in the future, along with recognizing African-Americans who work for change. Let's do a better job of teaching our history than deleting it. The next is from Diana Stevens Ray. I lived in Falls Church all of my life until I graduated from George Mason Senior, Junior, Senior High School in nineteen sixty-eight. I also attended Thomas Jefferson Elementary School. I oppose changing the names of any of the schools in Falls Church because our schools were named for founding men who did many great things for our country. I believe we should take a long, hard look at our history and learn from it, not erase it. Please do not make any reactionary decisions based on recent events. Thank you. Go Mustangs. The next is from Mary Marion Seedlock, class of nineteen sixty-eight. Please do not change the name of George Mason High School to another name. Slavery ended about a hundred and fifty years ago. Changing the name of the school from George Mason to another name is totally wrong. George Mason is one of the founding fathers of the nation who was instrumental in the creation of the Bill of Rights and should be acknowledged, just like George Washington and Thomas Jefferson. Since the school is being torn down and a new school built, if the name is changed from it being George Mason, there will be little use for GMHS Alumni Association that helps to support the school. Do not change the name of the school. It is named for one of the nation's founding fathers. I took the survey in the paper and voted no, not to change the name. The next is from Mary Collins. My name is Mary McCarthy Collins, and I'm a class of sixty-eight graduate from George Mason High School. I think even the suggestion of a name change is ridiculous. George Mason was a founding father responsible for our Bill of Rights. He has no connection to the Confederacy. Many persons of that era had slaves on their staff, as was accepted practice in that era. Even though slavery is a horrid blemish on history, it is not solely American history, nor were all slaves African. Better heads need to prevail, and know there needs to be an end to this madness to rewrite history. Please use your influence and judgment to see that George Mason HS retains its name. The next email was sent from Kenneth Schultz. It has no body, but it does have a title that reads, "Name Change for George Mason HS. This is going too far. You aren't changing black school names. How in the world can you think this is right? Ken, class of nineteen fifty-seven." The next is from Mike and Julie Paradiso. Dear members of the school board, we are writing to give our thoughts and concerns regarding the school system's plan to return children to school this fall. First, we would like to commend the school board for its quick and well-planned execution of the online learning plan this spring, as well as the teachers for their hard work instructing in a very challenging situation. After watching the experiences of parents and students in Fairfax and Arlington, we are truly grateful for our small and nimble school system. We would like to encourage the school board to continue to chart its own path forward. We believe the school system made the best of a bad situation last semester. However, we would like to emphasize that distance learning is not an ideal situation for many students to learn effectively, and has had a negative impact on students from all socioeconomic backgrounds. We should move as quickly as possible to get all students back to full days in the classroom five days per week, while taking precautionary measures to prevent the spread of the virus. There are also other considerations we believe need to be factored into the decision-making process. The collateral damage that comes from keeping kids out of school and isolating them for long periods of time, and the documented low amount of risk that the virus poses to school-aged children. In addition to struggling to learn online, children across the country have also been suffering from increased cases of loneliness and depression, anxiety, drug and alcohol abuse, suicide, and child abuse brought on by the social isolation that has resulted from schools being shut down nationwide. We are not immune to these issues, even in Falls Church City, and we need to factor in the additional consequences that our children are experiencing as a result of schools being shut down. On top of the mental health impact of children, we believe we need to factor in the small amount of risk the virus actually poses to children. The evidence around the world has shown that children generally do not contract the virus, and those that do are asymptomatic and have minimal effects in most cases. There are also countries such as Sweden that have kept their schools open without significant health issues, and a recent study in France found that schoolchildren do not spread coronavirus. Schoolchildren do not spread coronavirus. French study shows, it's a link that she added to the article. In addition to the low infection rate with children overall, we should also consider the extremely low rates we have in the city itself, with a zero point four percent infection rate, a zero point, a point zero eight percent hospitalization rate, and a point zero five death rate. My final point involves school sports. We are urging the board to allow school sports to continue without additional restrictions while following VHSL guidelines. As parents of four student athletes, the cancellation of spring sports was devastating from a mental health and physical fitness standpoint for my children and for others. I'm confident fall and winter sports can resume safely with precautionary measures in place. Organizations like US Lacrosse have already implemented guidelines, and travel sports teams have resumed practices this summer and will start tournaments again in July. We should follow the VHSL guidelines going forward without additional restrictions and proceed with fall and winter sports.
Done. That's three minutes.
Okay, there's only one sentence left. The next is from Dave Gustafson. Dear Falls Church City School Board members, Charity, age five, Jenny, age eight, Beck, age nine, Cato, age ten, Penny, age ten, Sinharpe, age eleven. Are these kids you think might someday attend our new high school? No, these are a few of the children that George Mason, our high school's namesake, enslaved at Gunston Hall Plantation. George Mason inherited thirty-five people from his father's estate, Gunston Hall's website states. Ultimately, he enslaved approximately one hundred people. Is a man who thought big thoughts because he had forced labor bringing in revenue the best that Falls Church can elevate to inspire our kids? As our community spends large sums of taxpayers' money on a new school, must we continue to glorify a slaver? I hope not. We must remember our high school was named after Mason during another ugly time, before Falls Church schools were integrated. Marian Costner bravely endured ostracization and even crossburnings on her way to becoming the school's first black graduate. Mason's writings about freedom and inherited rights shaped American history, but his purchases of kidnapped children and adults had a profound impact on history as well. His will, his will describes Frederick, an enslaved man, as not worth one farthing. Does that sound like Mason believed Frederick had any inherent rights? Retaining the status quo would be easy. I hope our community is now up to the challenge of confronting the painful truth of systemic racism, hypocrisy, cowardice by Mason and other figures of society honors. Please remain skeptical when someone tries to defend historical figures with weasel, with weasel words that are intended to excuse their abuses. These include too politically correct, full accomplishments, acceptable in his day, shortcomings, complex legacy, and many others. For the high school, a geographic name such as Falls Church City High School to differentiate ourselves from Fairfax's would be distinctive and non-controversial. If the community wants to name our school after people, we have more deserving locals to elevate and inspire our kids than slavers who live more than twenty-two miles away. Dr. E.B. Henderson, husband of our middle school's namesake, Costner, Harriet Bryce, J.D. and Betsy Reed for starters, would be excellent candidates, but the necessary first step is to determine that the new high school will have a new name. It's time for Falls Church and its school names to finally get on the right side of history. Thank you for your attention to this. I know you're grappling with many other challenges. Have just a few more. The next is from Paula M. Clark. Excuse me, Pamela M. Clark. My name is Pamela Clark. I'm a long-term, longtime resident of the village and city of Falls Church. I attended the elementary schools and graduated from George Mason Junior Senior High School. My parents were business owners for many years and as a result, were involved in all aspects of the city of Falls Church. Judy Fisher Difendorfer and I are longtime friends since I attended her mother's nursery school class. I recently read and totally concur with Judy's submitted comments to your members. What has continued to occur to the African-American people over the decades is a blight against our country and needs to be addressed in many ways. However, to change history and condemn every person who ever owned a slave, including our first president, appears to me not to focus on the contributions made by some of them. George Mason and Thomas Jefferson of two of the, are two of those individuals. During these turbulent and pandemic times, I do not agree with changing the names of these schools. George Mason High School is one of the most acclaimed high schools in the United States. It is because our school system that the city of Falls Church has exceeded all expectations in attaining a population willing to support this city through its high real estate taxes despite its size in order to maintain this status. I doubt for a school of its size if you will find a more diverse student body. Some of the actions taken recently are duly and definitely warranted, and efforts have been made over many years to accomplishment. No one would listen and take action. Please do not destroy the excellent reputation of the little city with changing the names of our school. Hopefully, history will continue to honor these individuals for establishing the greatest country in the world despite the faults of some of our past, the past, current, past and current leadership and its citizenry. The next is from Lars Howlett, class of nineteen ninety-four. Dear school board members, thank you for having the wisdom and taking the time to consider a new name for the new high school, the city of Falls Church. This is an opportune moment, one that coincides with the reawakening of our society to the ongoing injustice and tragic consequences of institutionalization and rich racism. I am a graduate of Thomas Jefferson Elementary and George Mason High School, where I have served in student government. For the last twenty-five years, I have also served as the nineteen ninety-four class representative. I fully support a new name for the new high school and hope that you will help lead the school community to make this, to take this conscious and mindful step into the future. The name of our new school should no longer honor a slaveholder who owned the second-largest amount of enslaved people in Virginia. Whether or not Mason was against slavery is up to debate, but the fact is that he and Jefferson owned slaves, including school-aged children. To further a commitment to equity and inclusion in our education system, we should take this opportunity to rename our schools so they do not reflect the institutionalized racism that permeated the founding of our country. We can still teach history and learn about our founding fathers, but hopefully with a greater understanding and awareness of the complexity and contradictions of their actions. We can teach our children and grandchildren that there was a time when our society enslaved and repressed the people for their color of their skin, well after the end of institutionalized slavery. We can also tell them that they should be proud that in twenty twenty, Falls Church proactively defended and supported our black community members by upholding the honored positions as our school's namesake, because we strive to do better than our ancestors. Let us have the courage and clarity to rename our schools to promote equality, equity, and inclusion. Let us not be beholden to the injustices of the past, but take this systemic and symbolic step to a brighter future. Thank you for your attention to this important decision. The next is from Roger McCleskey. Dear Ms. Goodell, I attended city schools from second grade through graduation from George Mason in the class of seventy-one. I moved back to the city in twenty-ten. My friend Robbie Worth's eloquence and detailed history lesson expresses my thoughts in opposition to the proposed high school name change far better than I ever could. My parents moved here in nineteen fifty-six and like Robbie's mother, were staunch supporters of integrated schools and active in the civil rights movements of the nineteen sixties. It was important to them that my brother and I attend integrated schools and frequent facility, and frequent facilities and activities that promoted equality that existed in Falls Church. George Mason lived during flawed times, but took action to try to repair racial injustices decades ahead of those that followed. I concur with and support everything Robbie said. Please keep the name. The next is from Robbie Worth. Dear Falls Church City School Board members, thank you for your service to the Falls Church City and the Falls Church City Public Schools. I am the current class representative of George Mason, class of nineteen seventy, and have been an active member of the George Mason High School Alumni Association since its founding. I am writing the school board in my hopes that you will decide to keep the name of our dear high school like George Mason. My mother, some sixty-seven years ago, chose Falls Church as our family's place of residence because it was the only school system in northern Virginia that was integrated. Since then, Falls Church has been a welcoming community for all. While attending the summer day recreation program in the early nineteen sixties, we drove to Loudoun County on a Falls Church school bus in order to swim at an integrated swimming pool. George Mason High School was a symbol of equality for the state of Virginia. In the overriding issue, if the overriding issue is that George Mason IV was the owner of slaves, I would like to bring to light the role that Mason played in trying to free slaves during the early formation of the Republic. First and foremost, there were fifty-seven signers of the Declaration of Independence, and forty-one were slave owners. Many of these were from the North. Some of the most notable, other than the most publicized signers, Washington, Jefferson, Madison, and Monroe, were as follows. Benjamin Franklin. Franklin did not publicly speak out against slavery until very late in his life. As a young man, he owned slaves, and he carried advertisements for the sale of slaves in his newspaper, the Pennsylvania Gazette. John Hancock, the first signatory to the Declaration, and the first and third governor of the state of Massachusetts. Martin Van Buren, eighth president of the United States of New York. Robert Morris, a prominent Philadelphian who actually engaged in the slave trade as a side business through their shipping and property investments. George Mason's record of accomplishments is well documented, as is his position as one of the only outspoken critics of slavery in the Continental Congress. Mason also backed his words with action. In seventeen eighty-seven, Mason was named one of the state's delegates to the Constitutional Convention. Many clauses in the Constitution were written by Mason, as he was active in the convention for months before deciding that he just couldn't sign it. He cited the lack of a Bill of Rights most prominently in his objections, but also wanted an immediate end to the slave trade. Mason favored stopping any further importation of slaves, which didn't turn out the way he had hoped. A compromise came about that decided to permit the slave trade for another twenty years, which had Mason very upset. Some of his most furious or famous quotes on slavery were- Some of his most furious or famous quotes on slavery were, "As much as I value a union of all the states, I would not admit the southern states into the union unless they all agreed to the discontinuance of this disgraceful trade because it would bring weakness and not strength to the union. And the augmentation of slaves weakens the states. And such a trade is diabolical in itself." Mankind. Okay. I have three more. This is from Mike Paradiso. Dear School Board members, I'm writing to express my concern.
Hey, John.
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt. I think we've heard from Mike Paradiso already.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry about that.
Let's go to the. I'm sorry, I have two more. That's correct. The next is from Haley Lofter Thune. As you may have seen, there's been quite the buzz about the petition to formally change the name of Thomas Jefferson Elementary School, which has now received more than seven hundred signatures. It is quite clearly a passionate subject for many members of our community. There has been some concern raised about points I made about Thomas Jefferson beating young boys and his contributions to spreading slavery through his four percent calculations as the rate of return. To address this, I have sent out an email to each of the petition signatories as well as to you, to you all, in order to clarify these points and provide evidence of these claims with links to published articles, websites, videos from Monticello, scholarly publications and other reputable sources. I will summarize the most compelling evidence as best I can, since you all have so much to discuss tonight. While it is true Jefferson himself did not take a whip to beat these boys with his own hands, it is a historical fact that he knowingly employed overseers who beat the boys working at his naylery, and he himself urged the discipline. His son-in-law Randolph reported to Jefferson that the naylery was functioning very well because, quote, "The small ones were being whipped for, quote, truancy." Jefferson was very proud of his naylery and the economic benefits it brought him, writing, "I now employ a dozen little boys from ten to sixteen years of age, overlooking all the details of their business myself." He wrote, "My new trade of nail making is to me in this country what an additional title of nobility or the instance of a new order are in Europe. And a naylery which I have established with my own Negro boys now becomes completely for the maintenance of my family." When the production dropped, Jefferson was reinstalled, even reinstalled, a notoriously violent overseer, Gabriel Lilly. He wrote, "In truth, the slaves require a vigor of discipline to make them do responsible and reasonable work. These beatings were sometimes savage. One seventeen-year-old boy was beaten nearly to death by Lilly for being too sick to work. Yet Jefferson praised Lilly for being, quote, 'as good a one as can be. Certainly, I can never get a man who fulfills my purposes better than he does.'" These facts are not disputed and are recorded on the Monticello website and in Jefferson's correspondence, which has been preserved by historical societies and in the Library of Congress. In terms of Jefferson's calculation of a four percent rate of return on slaves.
John, that's three minutes.
That's three minutes?
Yes.
Okay. And the final one is from Carol Lofter Thune. Dear School Board members, as a resident of Falls Church City for twenty-two years, I appreciate how engaged this community is and I enjoy the often vigorous debate over issues of the day. As founder of the CBC Youth Representatives Program, I also appreciate how engaged and talented our city's youth can be. So I'm very proud to be the mother of one such young person, my daughter Haley Lofter Thune, who has taken the initiative on the petition to change the name of Thomas Jefferson Elementary School. My ancestors immigrated from England as indentured servants in the sixteen thirties, became farmers in Riceville, Virginia, fought in the Revolutionary War and fought for the Confederacy. My family also owned slaves. I myself served as interim COO of Free the Slaves here in Washington, DC, an international NGO focused on ending modern-day slavery. Worldwide today, one in two hundred people is a slave. So Jefferson's relationship with slavery feels personal to me. Yet I have to confess, initially I was extremely skeptical of Haley's petition to change the name of Thomas Jefferson Elementary School. As most of us are, I was well aware of Jefferson's immense contributions and stature. I loved visiting Monticello as a child, marveling at Jefferson's inventions and creative mind. But as I read the articles, visited the websites and watched the videos, I could not overlook the evidence. While Jefferson beat slaves by his own hand, oh, excuse me. Whether Jefferson beat slaves by his own hand or he employed others to do so doesn't seem to much matter to me. Having others to do his bidding to beat and whip slaves, sometimes savagely, is just as evil. Whether Jefferson was referring to his own Monticello or some hypothetical Virginia plantation when he made the reference to the four percent rate of return on slaves, I also can't see that it makes much difference either. Proves the point that Jefferson reduced human beings to a profit margin. This latter point seems to be mostly a debate among historians over details and while details do matter, the details don't change the fact that Jefferson promoted slavery as a prime way for landowners to increase their wealth. It is very true that Jefferson's own writings recognize that slavery was evil and should be abolished. They also document that Jefferson himself approved of beating young slaves and he valued his slaves for their economic benefit to himself. What I find most repugnant about Jefferson is not only his writings about the inferiority of blacks, which made my stomach turn as I read his notes on the state of Virginia, and his treatment of child slaves, but even more his hypocrisy. His actions speak much louder to me than his words. He did have boys as young as ten whipped to keep production at the naylery up and pay his household expenses despite his professed abhorrence to violence.
John, that's three minutes.
Chair Anderson, I have one more. This is a document sent in by Chris Pecrawless entitled Process to Consider Name Change to Falls Church City Public Schools, and he included an abstract. The name of a school should be welcoming and inspiring to its students. The school name should reflect the values of its surrounding community and therefore the school should have a name which of all can be proud. A lifetime of working with issues of fairness and inclusion in business, economics, consulting and education, and just being a concerned individual compel this report. A prominent question in the discipline of economics is to define the economic and social justice criteria of fairness and efficiency and to advance both and to understand any trade-offs. Clearly, the topic of naming a school is associated with these criteria. My commitment to social justice and the city of Falls Church as a conscientious citizen and a teacher for roughly a quarter of a century dictate my involvement in the school name process for Thomas Jefferson Elementary School and George Mason High School. A valid democratic-like process of naming a school will contribute to the embrace of the school name. A legitimate process must be, one, efficient, two, transparent, three, representative of a cross-section of stakeholder groups, four, sequential and dynamic, five, accountable, and six, be researched thoroughly and scientifically. Before appointing a committee to identify and recommend names for the school, it's important to determine whether a full investigation and discussion of a school name possibilities by all stakeholder groups can be completed by August twenty-twenty. If not, the process should be delayed. This abstract has been condensed from a fairly comprehensive blueprint for a school name process that is attached. It is encouraged that the members of the school board and the superintendent read it. Sincerely, Chris Pecrawless, Roosevelt Boulevard, Falls Church. Teacher and staff member, George Mason High School, retired. Government, U.S. History, IB Economics, IB Business, Mathematics, current volunteer robotics, Entrepreneurs Club Equity Committee and a member of the initial cultural heritage and Equity Committee, GMHS.
So, thank you to all of our readers for taking us through all of those comments. And thank you very much for, for the time and presenting them to us. And thank you to all of the members of the community and others who have written in to, to share their thoughts with us. So at this point, we've reached the end of the public comment section. I would like to suggest that a five-minute break is in order and then we would begin in five minutes with our discussion of the high school renaming question. So that means being back online at eight forty-five Eastern Time, so. Thank you. All right, why don't we go ahead and get started and we'll see. Let's see what is able to join here in a second. I have some, so we will now begin talking about three point oh one, the, the school renaming question. And I would like to, I'd like to start with some general remarks. And to begin, I want to thank, I want to thank everyone who took the time to write in and share your, your perspectives with us. We've heard from a lot of folks. We've heard more than, more than a hundred and twenty comments by my count over the three times, three meetings that we've had. And we really value the, the perspectives, the information, the values that you shared and thoughts that for us to consider as we go forward. Again, I want to thank Ms. Goodell, Ms. Vincent, Ms. Michael and Mr. Brett for, for reading us through all the comments today. And so now we're at a point where it's, it's time to really begin the conversation. So I'd just like to observe, we've heard a lot of different viewpoints in these public comments. You know, the moment that we are in our country and the opportunity presented by a new high school, deeply held concerns about George Mason, Thomas Jefferson as owners of enslaved people have led a lot of folks to push for a new name for one or more of our schools. Some comments in earlier meetings, not tonight, but in earlier meetings pointed to cities removing from their schools the names of figures like Robert E. Lee and Jeb Stuart. And others are arguing that the founding fathers should be viewed differently from Confederate leaders. Some are concerned about the financial impacts of a name change and some are considering the entire issue a distraction from more important work, while others have said that that they feel like a name change isn't, isn't really enough and that it would actually detract from, from a more meaningful change. So there's a lot to consider, obviously. I think it's important maybe to take a step back and look at the larger picture. And I'll just say, I think we'd all agree that we're in a unique moment in our nation's history. You know, longstanding racism inequities, they're being denounced and they're being fought on a scale that we haven't seen in decades. I had a debate with myself whether I should say within my lifetime because I wasn't sure if I really wanted to, to say that out loud, but there you go. Certainly in decades and people across the country are looking to themselves, to each other and to their elected leaders to make the changes that are needed. So what have we done? I think it's important for, for us to remember that here in SCCPS, we've made equity a work, equity of focus of our work over at least the last eighteen months. Starting in the fall of eighteen, when the board at that time passed a, a policy that affirmed our commitment to nondiscrimination and it's one of our founding commitments, a founding policies that it specifically says prevails through all of our practices and our policies. So we did that. Last summer, Dr. Julian Williams conducted a diversity and equity study of SCCPS that led in part to the creation of a division-level equity team, an equity action plan and a new role of the Director of Equity and Excellence held by Dr. Jennifer Santiago. We now have a central repository of resources to help teachers, families, students, community members and others have difficult but critical conversations about equity. We've provided professional development on equity to all of our staff and equity to support, equity to support to curriculum development teams that are working even now, looking forward into the fall. Earlier this year, the board discussed and began work on a diversity and equity policy that would guide curriculum instruction, practices around recruiting, promotion and evaluation and all the other work that we do. That work got slowed by COVID nineteen. We have to face that reality, but it is ongoing and it is, remains a focus for the board. And most recently, back on June fourth, the board strongly affirmed our commitment to actively practice and promote anti-racism and call out injustice and equity and inequality wherever we see it. So this renaming question that we face is part of a bigger picture of equity that we've been working on and we will continue to work on. And I think it's just important to remember that. I think it's also important to remember that we do have other important work alongside our equity focus. We have heard many comments tonight about this from, from the community. We have to reopen our schools on August twenty-fourth in an environment driven by a lot of competing needs and COVID nineteen pandemic forcing us to do things in ways that, that we would never have thought we'd be doing a year ago at this time. We're still on schedule and on budget for opening our new high school in December, so that's, that's fantastic work, but it needs to keep going. And we shortly have to begin consideration of the school calendar for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two year as we promised we would do. And then, of course, we're working with our partners on city council to pay attention to potential changes at the state, the local and the federal level that might affect our FY twenty-one budget and planning for FY twenty-two. So we have all of that to go on at the same time. And so it's all in this context that we're going to really contemplate two questions. And I'm trying to figure out a way to boil this down to something short. And so I have come up with these two questions. They may not be the right ones, but they're the ones that I've, I've been thinking about. First, do we want to consider changing the name of either Mason or TJ? Only after we answer that question, do we want to ask the second, what should the new name or names be? So tonight, I would like us to reach consensus on whether to begin a process to inform the board so that we can answer that first question. And I'd like to suggest that as, just for us to be able to make work go forward, that consensus means that everyone's viewpoint is heard and considered as the group goes forward and that by the end of it, the will of the group is evident. And so I'm going to break from a normal process and just say, I'll start with telling you what I think and then I'm going to be quiet and listen to what you all think. I believe we should begin a process to inform the board so that we can answer that first question. Again, do we want to consider changing the name of either Mason or TJ? I do think we should begin a process to inform ourselves to be able to answer that question. I believe we should direct Dr. Noonan to develop such, develop a process. And I think just some things that should be part of that process, I think we need to have a period for systematic written input from anyone who wants to give it to us from our community, from our students, from our, from our parents, from our staff and gather that input. I believe we need to get further reliable and scholarly information on George Mason and Thomas Jefferson as the people that they were. All of the people that they were. And I, I think, given everything else that is in front of us and, and the importance of all the things we have to do, that I'd like to suggest afternoon and consider as if the decision is to, to have him go forward with proposing a process, that he could consider using an external expert to help with that process for a couple of main reasons. One, to help us have an external, more neutral group. I'm not sure that one can really be neutral in this case, but more neutral group external to us and to enable the board and the staff to carry on all of the work that we have to be doing right now. And we do have a lot of work that needs to get done. So I do think we should begin that process and I'd like to hear your thoughts and I'll leave it at that. So I open it to a conversation among the members. Ms. Downs.
Thank you, Chair Anderson. I agree with everything that you said. I think, you know, there are, this, I consider myself a pretty decisive person, but this is definitely something that I have kept an open mind on and I definitely see both sides of this issue and I do feel that it's, it's an important one and we need to, you know, we haven't done any kind of official communication to the school community or the community at large, you know, it's been. If you didn't happen to pick up a Falls Church news press or you're not on a list server on social media, you may not even know this is being discussed. So I think that we need to be inclusive, get the word out to the community and go forward with the process that will better inform us so that we can move forward and make that decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Downs. Other comments? Mr. Reiner.
Feels a little like sort of Russian roulette about who's going to go next. So I, I just appreciate Ms. Downs stepping up and giving the first comment. Chair, I, I agree with, I think, almost everything you said. I also support the notion of starting a process. I, I think the question is far from clear, certainly in my mind. I, I, I think the question is far from clear, certainly in my mind and in the community's mind. Because we are talking about two people, in this case, two men who have mixed legacies, who accomplished a lot, but. Clearly unslaves and that's an extremely hard thing to forget and you can't forget or really forgive, you can just perhaps understand. So, given the depth of feeling in the community and because I feel it's the right thing to do, I think we should also institute a process. A process that is from the start. Seeks a lot of community input, as you say, sinks expert input. I don't want to do a lot of reinventing of the wheel and I, I would. I, I am aware that George Mason University trod this ground very heavily. A few years ago, and I think that will give us, that doesn't determine what we do, but that gives us a place to start about considerations and research. I will say there are a couple of other things I'd add. One is, I'm not at all convinced that we ought to hire a consultant to help with this. Certainly not something that would cost a significant amount, I understand the pressures and we have a lot of things to do. But I, I worry one about the cost in a time where we're all sort of. Tightening our belts and more importantly, asking the staff at the school system to tighten their belts. So that, that concerns me. And I also worry a little bit that a consultant might skew over into making a recommendation as opposed to simply assembling data for the community and the board. Because as I've said before, I don't believe this is a decision, at least the first one, about whether to rename the schools or not, that should be. Delegated to a committee as opposed to decided by the board. The second thing is that I, in terms of timing. I do not want to rush this process. I think it is very important, it is very important to get right, it will be exceedingly difficult. To build a consensus and I don't think we should rush it. And to the points that Ms. Downs raised, I don't think we're going to get the attention of at least some members of the community. Maybe a majority of the community until school reopens in the fall. Therefore, I, I, I'm happy to start the process now, I just think that we need to have the space. To gather opinions and hear from people once school reopens at the end of August. The last thing, I'm going to add one more thing is that my strong preference and I, I, I think your view was the same Chair Anderson. Is that we should start a process not just for the high school, but for the high school and for Thomas Jefferson Elementary. Because the concerns are similar, it may be that after study will decide that. There are different differential factors, but I don't think we can make that decision at this point. So I believe strongly that if we're going to start the process for GMHS, we need to start the process at the same time for Thomas Jefferson. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Redinger. Ms. Russell.
Thanks Chair Anderson, I think first I want to guess reiterate with what Mr. Edger said with regard to. First of all, the timing and making sure that this does go into the fall so we can make sure that we have full engagement on this topic. And second of all, also, I strongly believe that we need to, at least at this point in time. Take into or take up for consideration both Thomas Jefferson and George Mason. And with regard to the outside consultant with this project. And I guess I'm kind of on the fence on that one, I can definitely see the merits. In the sense that the staff is completely overloaded with regard to return to school and I certainly don't want to add. Anything more to their plate and be sensitive to that and quite frankly, that is what I would prefer their. Sole focus to be, and I think that we've heard from the community that they really want. The staff to continue to be very focused on return to school. And so with that said, with regard to an outside resource. And personally, if that's something that we are going to pursue, and I'm assuming that that's something that, you know, Dr. Noonan or other would help us identify. And I'd like to see, I guess, at least probably three options available to us with regard to resumes, just so we have a chance. To review who we're potentially going to be working with and making sure that we all feel comfortable with that individual. And I guess the last point that I want to make, and this is something. That I've heard from the community, but also something that I've really wrestled with myself in terms of. If we were to decide to make a change to the names, what would the timing of that be? I know a lot of the community would love to see that with the opening of the new high school and, you know, there are a lot of positives of that. Obviously financially with regard to signs and so on and so forth. But personally, I have a tremendous, probably a longer list of concerns that I have of doing that. Some of them being with how is that going to work with regard to things like IB tests, AP tests, college. Applications, even sports things like, you know, the basketball team's going to play their December games with their Mason uniforms and then miraculously show up in January with the new school, like just. A lot of logistical things and all of the other area, school name changes have been on the school calendar year. And again, I understand that this is obviously unique and different situation from us. But from my research with both Justice and Washington Lee, those whole processes took, you know, roughly a year from start of deliberation to. Actual opening with new name, so, you know, getting back to not wanting to rush this, to be able to do it right. And but also making sure that we are thinking of. All of the aspects of it with regard to the name change and every, you know, all the tentacles that are going to go into. I guess flipping the switch in terms of that, so I think that that's something else that I definitely want to keep in mind. And, and so I just, I think at this point I would say. You know, we should definitely pursue considering whether this is something we want to do. But one of the things that we might also want to do either as a board or have Dr. Moon and help us with regard to. I guess proposing potential process for this aspect of it is kind of all the different facets. That we're going to need to consider, not just of the men themselves, but also the process involved.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Other comments? I saw Ms. Derrick Sand first and then Ms. Litten went off mute as well, or hand up, I guess.
Thanks, um, I agree with a lot of what's been said, I think. There are strong feelings in the community on this and many feelings across the spectrum. And we might only be seeing part of the community's views on this and I think it's important for us to. Be able to see what the rest of the community has to say and right now people may not be engaged. I hope when school starts, maybe people, I want people to really be engaged with school starting, but maybe people will have a little bit more. Sort of. Time to put into this, I, I do agree with Dr. Anderson that it would be useful to hire a consultant. To Mr. Righton, Redinger's concern, I guess my leaning would be to hire really some. A survey researcher of some sort that would just collect the data and present it to us, not someone that would give us any answer, but if we want to collect opinions that are. If we want to ask any questions that are open ended and if we are expecting hundreds and hundreds of comments on this with maybe much information to code. I think we're asking for a heavy, excuse me, a heavy lift from our staff. I also feel that, I know people feel very passionately about this and really many people want it to happen immediately, I. I think we need to take our time so that we know what the community has to say, I do think names and symbols are important. And meaningful to people. But as was said earlier, we have, as a board have embarked on. On diversity and equity and inclusion work and that. If we're going to look back on this moment in history and have this moment in history be a change point, we need to continue to do the substantive work. That is required of us and, and that is that equity and inclusion work and working on our policies and looking at our schools and looking at the curriculum. And I would like us to dedicate some time and effort to that as well.
Thank you, Dr. Demick. I saw Ms. Lennon and Mr. Webb both had hands raised and. I, I think I saw Ms. Litten first, but that may just be because Mr. Webb is underneath you on my screen. So Ms. Litten, I guess you're up next.
Okay, go ahead. Great, thank you Chair Anderson, um, you know, I really. Agree for the most part with what everybody has set up to this point. I agree with Chair Anderson's recommendation, there's obviously a lot of interest in the community. On this issue, so I do feel like we, we need to move forward on considering it. As far as some of the specifics, I think we need to consider both schools. And I think a consultant is something we should consider, given everything going on. You know, my, my one concern, I guess, with sort of the big picture of this. Is that this is really going to suck up a lot of the energy and attention in our community. And I'm a little, I just don't want us to lose some of the other things around equity that we can be paying attention to. You know, I feel like I don't want us just to focus on this and get done and kind of pat ourselves on the back and say. We addressed equity when this doesn't, I mean, it does something, but it doesn't really get at, you know, what's, what's the student's experience in our community? And what are people's experience in our community, because, you know, if you take a step back, we are. And compare us to some of our neighboring areas. You know, we're one of the whitest areas, we're one of the wealthiest areas. Our schools are the most well-funded, I just think we, there's still a lot of work to do to kind of understand. Privilege and a lot of those issues and how they're at play in our community. So I just think there's so much more to think about and look at and I hate for this to be kind of the only thing. So all that to say, I support it moving forward, but let's, let's not let this take up all the air in the room. And let's keep working on the other stuff too.
Thank you, Ms. Litten. And Mr. Webb.
I think you, Mr. Chair, I'll tell, I will start off at the gate with, I agree with all the statements that have been made that we do need to move forward with this process. And I think we need to look forward, look to both Thomas Jefferson and George Mason as this process begins. I will say from my own self, being the Virginia native on the board. I will say, can see why I want this, this information gathering part. I did all the Virginia history courses that, you know, that are required to graduate. I know very little about George Mason, the person, rather than when I'm. Growing up, he had a university in Northern Virginia named, named after him. And then when I moved to Northern Virginia from Downstate, oh, there's a high school when I moved into Falls Church. So I think I'm probably not the only person that has a very limited scope of, of who George Mason a person is. I've talked to students who have a very limited scope of who George Mason is and they go to George Mason High School. So that in itself kind of puts out there that lots of folks don't really know. Much of the history of who he is. We know more about Thomas Jefferson, definitely of the being a founding father. Way more than we do of George Mason. But as I step back and look at it from the comments that we've gotten over the, I guess about three weeks now. Of folks essentially some, not all, because I've read several comments about folks who. Try to put their feelings of Thomas Jefferson and George Mason as founding fathers and their. Legacy for, for starting our country. I, I get it and I actually agree with that, we wouldn't be a country without some of those things. However, where I kind of step back and have a bit of a, a challenge is. Those words really didn't have me and other people of color in their mind at the time when they. You know, made those, were writing those documents. And quite frankly, as little as 60 years ago with civil rights movement and those things. We made very small gains in that time. We have, I think, made some definite leaps since then, but we still have a long way to go right now because. Of equity and different treatment that people of color have in this country versus. You know, majority, the majority of folks in this country and. I think folks need to step back and take a look at that, no one's asking us to where some statements are saying. Whitewash history or we're going to be. You know, forget our past and no one's saying that at all, what I'm saying is. That I think the African-American experience in this country is not taught to our students at all. They only look, only think that in classes that they learn about the African-American experience is slavery. A very little bit about the civil rights movement. And all the other things that came in between that, you don't hear students learning a lot about. Jim Crow that kind of stepped in during the reconstruction period, you don't hear about. Black Wall Street where in Tulsa, because black folk that were potential, were being successful that white folk because of that went in and burnt it to the ground. Only reason people are talking about Juneteenth right now is because of all the, the protests are going on right now. No one really knew what Juneteenth was outside of many, maybe scholars, but outside of the African-American community, what Juneteenth is. Don't get me wrong, I'm excited and happy that we are now learning about that and everyone is kind of stepping back and looking at this. But to be completely honest, a lot of that will is coming because. I think for the first time, because of technology. People actually saw what black folk have been saying for years of that. Treatment, they actually saw it when a police officer had his knee on a man's neck for eight minutes and 46 seconds and I think that opened a lot of eyes to. The challenges that we still have in this country. I think we have come a long way, I think. Our community. As progressive as it is, I think we still have some issues too, talking with students, seeing emails. About what's, has what, where the work that we have started with the equity, diversity and inclusion. I think we have a lot more work to do of bettering our curriculum. Holding students, holding faculty and staff accountable for things that, that have happened. And quite frankly, talking with a couple of students at George Mason right now, that. Things have happened that they've gotten to the point where they don't feel, why do I bring it to an administrator's attention because nothing gets done to that student who may have bullied me for, for being. Jewish, has bullied me for being LGBTQ, potentially a person of color. Because they, they feel, why bother, because nothing's going to happen or nothing's going to change at this point. I think that's right there in alone in itself is where we need to, in addition to, because. Talking about these name changes and I will be, let me just put it out there, I've not made up my mind. At all, I want the information so that I can be more informed than I am right now. But that's only one step in a big puzzle that I think we have within our community to address. And that is making sure that every student, regardless of race, gender, gender identity. When they walk into any of our buildings that they feel that they are walking into a place that they are. At least in the school building are on an equal and level playing field. And right now, I think there, we have some students who do not feel that way of talking with some of them, looking at emails that we receive. Until we step up as a community, step up as a school system. And putting some of those things into place, we got a lot of work to do. But I do think, hearing my colleagues talk tonight, there is a commitment to at least starting a process. But I do think, hearing my colleagues talk tonight, there is a commitment to at least starting a process of at least name gathering for this portion of it. But we've seen where we've talked about in past diversity, equity, and inclusion policy that we have begun to work on. And I know that's Dr. Nunn and his team, they definitely are moving forward with that work. Because of really challenging times of COVID that we have right now, our focus has shifted to getting our schools back open, and that is a very important focus. So that's why I feel, looking at it, that we potentially should look at an outside consultant for two reasons. A, I think our staff should be focused on making sure that we are opening in the best way possible for our students. And two, to take some of the political and political part of it out of our hands and having a person who's just coming into it with collecting data, potentially experts who are gonna bring their perspectives of the good, the bad, the ugly of these two individuals to us for our review. And at that point later, and again, I think we should take our time. I agree that right now, we probably need to give folks the time to worry about getting their kids back on into the thought of going back to school and getting that taken care of. And when we're back fully in August, September, and get them folks a little bit more focused on that, that we can get the best data from our community, who are our students, who are our teachers and community members, that we can can hear from everyone that wants to be heard from and then make a decision. But I think we are all in agreement that none of us have made up our mind about anything. However, the time is now to go ahead and have this conversation. We can open up a brand-new high school in January if we don't, if something changes about a name. We don't have to put a name on it to open it. We're gonna open that building, and we're gonna be very proud of that building that we opened up. And then later, we can figure that part of it out. But right now, it's the collecting of information. And I 100% support moving forward with that effort. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Webb. So I'm just gonna take a stab at summarizing what I've heard. Pretty clear consensus that I would say the will of the board is to move forward with a process to help inform ourselves about the information that we think we need in order to be able to answer that first question, which again is, do we want to change the name of either George Mason or Thomas Jefferson? The question of what it would be, what it would be named, if we did answer that question, yes, is a different question. That's a separate step. But I think I've heard consensus for us to undertake a process to inform ourselves so that we can answer the first question. What I'm hearing is that everybody seems to be thinking it's important to consider both schools at the same time, that everybody thinks we should take our time, listen to as many perspectives as we can, get as much information as is reasonable and possible for us to go forward, get structured input in some form from our community, as well as more scholarly input, and Mr. Renger's comment, leveraging perhaps the work that George Mason University has done, is certainly one source of that. Sounds like the biggest question marks out there are whether or not it's something that we would want to bring in a consultant to help us with a choice. That seems to be one thing. I would just say one thing that occurs to me in listening to the conversation, and then Mr. Renger, I did see your hand up, so I'll get to that. So it does occur to me that one part of this conversation is whether or not to rename a school is certainly in the board's hands. That's one of our jobs. Whether or not it makes sense for for us to consider taking this process as ours, including bringing in a consultant through a contract that we work out, but actually having it be something that we're working on, not because I don't think staff could be doing it, but because it's our job. This is really renaming is something that we need to consider very clearly in our policies. So that's a thought. But Mr. Renger, you had your hand up, and then I want to open back up again for other thoughts.
Just briefly, thank you. I'd start by saying I agree with what you just said, Chair Anderson, right now. I think it should be the board's process. I also would say I agree, having heard Ms. Demick's comments, that I think a consultant would be useful, especially for data gathering. That is a specialty field. We don't have it. The school system doesn't have it. And so I think using someone who has expertise about getting real data on community opinions and other pieces makes a lot of sense. The last thing, and just something to think about, is I, and I'm not trying to suggest that we, you know, we over-rely on students, but we do have one of the most intelligent and educated student bodies, I would say, in the country. And we do have classes like AP Government and IB History. If there's a way to use some of those resources, not to drive or project manage the process, but to bring in student opinions and perspectives and help collect data and inform the board, I for one would be very pleased to have that sort of student involvement. After all, it is the students who are going to be in the building. And I'd like to make sure that we rely on them and give them a say in the process that would be effective.
Thank you, Mr. Renger. Other thoughts, Ms. Downs?
Thank you, Chair Anderson. And to piggyback on Mr. Renger's suggestion about involving students, and I think that's also a way that they're learning, right? We're talking about helping them improving our curriculum and teaching the students more about the history of civil rights and racism. And this is a great way for them to learn. This is why we're considering this name change. I just wanted to also piggyback on Ms. Lyndon and Mr. Webb's comments, because I find it really interesting, the students who did write in really focused on the piece of the curriculum, not even so much about the name change. And particularly, the couple of students of color who wrote us didn't really seem so bothered about the name, but they were bothered about the fact that we don't do a great job teaching about civil rights and racism and slavery. And so I think that was really telling to me. And I know that Mr. Bates and Dr. Santiago, I know that they're starting to talk with some students with some of their ideas, so that's great. And I know the school system is working on that, but we still have quite a bit of work to do. And, you know, to echo Mr. Webb's comments, even beyond race, I've heard stories about students of different religions, Jewish religion, and gay students who have been picked on. So I think it's even a bigger picture than race in terms of really working with our students to talk about empathy and inclusiveness. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Downs. Other thoughts? Ms. Lyndon?
Just kind of a question. I mean, I really like the idea of a consultant, because I feel like our staff just has so much on their plate right now, and I like it being an independent, you know, thing that we're just dealing with. I know these are tough budget times. Is that gonna be difficult to come up with money, or do we think we can find a pot of money somewhere that can pay for this?
Dr. Nunn?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Anderson. I've reached out to a couple of consultants just ahead of tonight's conversation to see, one, their availability, and two, kind of general costs. And depending on the amount of engagement that we would be seeking for that consultant to do, the type of survey instrument that they might use, et cetera, data, the data gathering presentations, et cetera, sort of would vary. But given that, in the budget for the last two years, there's been a superintendent innovation fund. And I'd be willing to dedicate all of the money that's in that superintendent innovation fund to support the work of a consultant to come in and work with the board on the name change. So I think there is, I think there is funding there.
Thank you, Dr. Nunn. Other comments from the board, other questions? Ms. Lyndon?
Sorry, just one other question. And I don't know if we know on this, but it sort of plays into the question of opening new school, and how quickly do we do this? Do we know, sort of, are there a lot of things that are scheduled to be in the new high school that actually say George Mason? And do we? I mean, the question's gonna be, do we let that go ahead if the process takes a while and then go back and change it? Or is there a way to slow that down? I mean, it's complicated. So I'm just curious if we have any idea on that.
Yeah, we have a, we know exactly where everything is, and we know exactly where the boreholes through walls need to be for lighting behind signs. We've been spending some time with the architects, looking specifically at that. The vast majority of the new George Mason High School is branded with color, and it's branded with Mustangs. There are two places currently where there's expected signage that says George Mason. The first is on the front facade, brick facade on the right-hand side to the door. And that would be a lit back, a backlit sign that would have GMHS in large letters, and then George Mason High School underneath it, smaller letters. And then the other is, as you come in the main doors and look up to the right, the current art incorporates the name George Mason High School in there. There, we actually met with the architects and builders yesterday to determine what would happen if the name changed with respect to first, the holes in the front. Because to do the backlit lighting, there are a number of different ways you can do it. One is you can drill or bore one hole per letter for good backlit lighting, or you can drill one hole, one bore, and then sort of spread out that. It's not as good a way to do it. So it would be better if we knew. But knowing that it's gonna take some time, and we certainly respect that, one of the things we can do on that front portion is just do a rough-in of the electrical, so that it's there, and then we could punch through at another point in time when the naming, should you all decide to move forward with changing the name, be done. With respect to the art, I think we have a little bit more flexibility, because it's not actually holes in the building. So we could certainly take a little bit more time on that. When I talked with Gil Bane and I talked with Brailsford and Dunleavy in terms of lead time for each of those pieces, first is art on the wall, and the second is the the actual signage, that there seemed to be a little bit of flexibility in the early October timeframe. So if you all were to move ahead with the potential name change decision in late September, depending on how long it would take to come up with, you know, some names and then make a decision, we might even have a little flexibility beyond mid-October into early November. But I wouldn't want that to be the driver either, right? We want to make sure that you all make the decision that you're comfortable with, with the timeline you have. So we could postpone the interior art and do some things around it. And we could also just do the rough-in on the building. It's a long answer to your question. I know, Ms. Lyndon, but I I did want you to know that we have looked at every place. The other, the other points, touchpoints in terms of costs are uniforms for physical education and sports and athletics. There would be some changes in some of the paper goods in the office and things like that. So we've also been sort of tracking what those would be, and those can, those can happen pretty quickly.
Thank you, Dr. Nunn. Other questions that anyone wants to ask at this stage, or the comments that anybody has?
I think I have a question. So first of all, thank you all for, one, listening to all the comments this evening, and also having a good conversation about sort of what your hopes and desires are with respect to a process moving forward. I do want to say that, you know, it's nice to see that there appears to be really good consensus among the board to begin moving forward. I'm glad that there wasn't a lack of consensus. It's not good that you're necessarily moving forward or not. It's just nice to see that there's a general agreement. I would suggest that if you were to decide as a board to do the process just as the board, so a consultant, you all would interview and hire a consultant and work with them on the name change, because that is within your purview. I think that's completely okay and totally acceptable to the staff. The one thing I would just caution against a little bit is I wouldn't want to get into a circumstance where it becomes, and slippery slope is not the right word here, but there are a lot of things that are just within the school board's purview also. And I wouldn't want to get into a circumstance where you're hiring consultants to do the work of staff beyond sort of these one-off kinds of things. But this feels like something that is significant enough to make sure that you all, that the data is right and everything else, that you get that information in a real good way. Because right now, with opening school, with opening a new high school, with trying to work through some of the budget issues that we're dealing with, trying to manage expectations for the community, manage our staff expectations, working with HR issues as they're cropping up around this. I would suggest that if it was given to us to do, we absolutely 100% would get a consultant to do it, simply because we just don't have the bandwidth at this moment to do it. But we would get a consultant, and we would get it done.
Thank you, Dr. Nunn. Yeah, I appreciate the slippery slope argument. I think for me, I think this is a topic that is unique. And unique in its scale, the timing of things, and I think its importance overall. It's a little bit different from some of the other situations that I could see where that might slide into. So I appreciate the caution. I think I'm confident this is something that sort of fits that space without being too much of a slippery slope. It sounds like then, if I'm not, I mean, and I guess I wanted to pick up on one thing just very briefly. Many others have said this, so I just wanted to back it up. I think it's important for us, if we bring in, and if we take this on and we bring in a consultant to help us, you know, in whatever the process is, this is just one part of work we've gotten to. And the experiences that Mr. Webb was describing, having seen, and the experiences Ms. Downs was bringing up from other comments that we've had, and making sure that we're really doing the work of the curriculum, and really doing the work of the instruction, and really doing the work of setting the tone that we want the schools to have, that's ongoing and really critical work. And it's work we've been doing, it's work we need to keep doing, and we need to keep redoubling on it. This is important, too. I just think that I'm agreeing. I think that is also really important. So now, Mr. Webb, sorry, you had your hand up.
Yeah, sorry about that. And I just want to reiterate, I do think after we began our work with Dr. Williams, that I think we are starting to make some progress in the right direction. Who knew a pandemic was gonna come in and suck all the air out of the room? But I think we just, we have made some progress. And hopefully, when, as we kind of get back into the classroom and get this process started, that we'll be able to dedicate more time to this. I know that Santiago and Mr. Bates are, their team are doing some of the work behind the scenes, looking at some of those hard topics, and I have every confidence that they'll be able to see that part of it through.
As do I, and I'm pretty sure we speak for everybody by saying that we have that confidence. So, and we see that work going on. A question comes to mind, which is, so we've talked about, I think there is consensus then, that we want to do a process to inform ourselves so we can ultimately answer the question, "Do we want to change either name?" By what time would we like to have that decision? And I don't know that we are gonna reach an absolute answer to that right now, but I'm gonna need to sit down with Ms. but I'm going to need to sit down with Ms. Russell and Dr. Noonan and talk a little bit about what a process might be so that when we come back together at our next regular meeting, we can actually say, this is a process and timeline and communicate that very clearly to the community of what we're doing. So I have the sense that folks don't want to rush it. I have the sense that a decision made prior to the start of school is way too fast. But a decision, we've seen some practical constraints for later in the fall being also perhaps a bit later than ideal. So I don't know, what are folks thinking in terms of, in terms of a target date? Is a target date for having this public process and by the end of, end of September reasonable for people? It is a month into the school year, it is after the opening of the school and it gives people time with perhaps not being too late. But that's just a first, you know, I'll put something out for everyone to, to knock around. Ms. Downs?
And I guess this is sort of a question, thank you Chair Anderson. I understood Dr. Noonan's timeline with the signage, but also the logistics. And I think Ms. Russell pointed this out of, of changing a name of a school mid-year, you know, with kids taking SATs and applying to colleges and sports uniforms. And it's a tough budget year and that sort of thing. So I, I guess I'm just trying to figure out, how does that all work?
Dr. Noonan?
Those are all really good questions. I think one of the things that I sort of would implore the board to do again, which I implored to do, the board to do last time, was to not change the colors and not change the mascot. So, so long as we stay the Mustangs, that will help us with PE uniforms. It will help us with, I mean, we could put Mustangs on everything right now and still be able to, to move ahead. So I, I wouldn't, it will make it easier on some of the things that we need to move ahead with now. But logistically, if we did make the change over the winter break, for example, I think we, we would know with enough time, assuming you ended the process in September and then by the end of October, you had a new name. If that were the will of the board to move forward, then we'd have November, December to turn all the paper over to get the uniforms to do the, do that kind of work.
And sorry, just to follow up, Dr. Noonan, and you don't think that would be detrimental to our high school seniors? Is there, you know, applying to SATs, is that, is that, I just don't know if that's a normal thing for a high school to change a name mid-year?
You know, one of the things we could do, and these are logistical things we could sort of sort through. But there's always a possibility to maintain the transcript through the final till the end of the year. So it would be more sort of cosmetic kinds of things. But the transcripts, seventh semester grades, those kinds of things, if the board were to change the name, we could continue sending those with the George Mason name. And, and you know, I, I do recognize reputation is important, but also so is, so is what's on the transcript. And I don't mean to be flip about that, but I, I do understand what you're saying.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Downs. We have a suggestion of end of September and I, maybe I'm mischaracterizing it. And so if I do, apologies, Dr. Noonan. But sort of the potential that there is, if, given that we're not considering a change to the logo or the colors, kind of a phased implementation could actually happen. So.
I actually think that's a good way to describe it.
Thank you. Mr. Reitinger, I saw your hand.
Just briefly, Mr. Chair, it's kind of hard for me to give you any useful feedback on that. The, you know, the process takes what it will take. And I think we've got to sort of see what comes up and how the community reacts. I mean, I think we can shoot to try to get things done by the end of September. If we do our intensive data gathering once school starts, I think that's going to, just in terms of logistics of school board meeting and talking about survey results and viewing reports and having perhaps a public hearing and having discussion, I, I think the end of September is super aggressive. But I'm willing, of course, to, to try to move things as quickly as possible in a way that is consistent with a full, robust process that gets input from all affected stakeholders.
Thank you. All right. So for the moment, I mean, I'm looking for other comments. I found I just saw a hand, so sorry. Thank you, Ms. Downs, go ahead.
Sorry, Chair Anderson. I, I agree with Mr. Reitinger that, you know, if, if we really want to get community feedback, you know, that first month of school for everyone is, is going to be a whole new world, you know? And, and you know, we know it's going to go smoothly, but we also don't know what's going to happen with the pandemic. So I would just hate for us to put ourselves in a corner and say, we're going to have that first month of September, get our data. And we just don't know what's, what's going to happen. And so I, you know, I think we, we could be shooting ourselves in the foot. Maybe it would be, it's too aggressive. Maybe we should shoot for, you know, early October would be more realistic and give people a chance to catch their breath. You know, we, we know that working parents are going to be juggling different schedules and all that. And so I just hate for people to say, we were disingenuous because we did such a tight timeline that people didn't really have the time, the time to engage.
Dr. Noonan?
One, one, and obviously there are a lot of factors at play. We, we don't know what's going to happen with the pandemic. We don't, all of those things. But I, I would anticipate that we'll do a groundbreaking at some point in December for the new high school, or not groundbreaking, sorry, ribbon cutting. We've done the groundbreaking already, ribbon cutting at some point in December for the new high school. So, so what if, what if you gave yourself to Thanksgiving? And we just took off the signage and the decals and all that off the table? So that you all felt like you had enough comfort to get the feedback that you need to get. Because I think, I, I think the, the timeline, I don't want to drive the timeline at all. It would be nice when we did the opening of the school, the ribbon cutting, if we knew what the name was going to be. So let me just leave it at that.
Thanks, Dr. Noonan, and thank you, Ms. Downs before. Okay, I'm going to suggest that we've reached a consensus on the fact that we want to do a process. And I think I've got a decent sense of the kinds of constraints people are concerned about trying to balance. So I think we've, we've answered the first question. We do want to kick off, we've answered the zeroth question. We do want to kick off a process to inform us to answer question one about naming. I think at this point, there's probably some work that Ms. Russell and I should, should talk about and, and talk with Dr. Noonan about, and then come back to the members at our meeting in July with a plan that we can, we can discuss, tweak as we need to and ultimately hopefully, you know, agree that this is what we want to do. And unless I'm seeing strong, strong objections, I think it sounds like we've got a consensus somewhere. I'm looking for head shakes and looking for yeses and noes and everything else. Two thumbs up, wow, all right. I guess we'll take that. All right, thank you, everyone. I think we've got a consensus here and so we'll, we'll be in touch to follow up. So our next item on the agenda for tonight is 3.02, update on progress on school reopening and some of the input that we're hearing from the surveys and all of that. So I will hand this to Dr. Noonan.
Great, thank you Chair Anderson, and nice to see everybody tonight. I will make my comments somewhat brief. And then Kristin, William and I would be available for any questions that you might have. We've been, as you can imagine, busy answering questions from the community, answering questions from our staff, answering questions from you, which is totally fine and totally great to be able to, to share information. But as you know, our plan launched on June 26th. And the intent of that was to really give sort of a general high level overview of what, although it was pretty detailed, what we put out there, of what our plan was going forward so that people could start planning. We really felt as though there was a lot of community, a lot of community, I wouldn't say pressure, but a lot of community input that we were getting, when are you going to tell us, when are you going to tell us, when are you going to tell us? Because we really want to know so we can start planning. And so regionally, taking that into account, plus regionally, the superintendent in the region had agreed that around the 26th, between 25th and 27th, we would put our plans out. And we're starting to see that across the region. Just in very broad strokes, for those folks that may be at home listening, we, we are going to operate on a two-day alternating day process week. So with Monday as a teacher planning day and as a day for intervention and some synchronous and asynchronous work with our teachers. So, so on Mondays, kids, kids would be home. If they're an A-Day kid, they would come in on Tuesday and Thursday. And B-Day kids would come in on Wednesday and Friday. We are working through what those plans would look like when students aren't at school and how we can provide appropriate structure for them to help support our parents, create some really great resources for students to be able to work through, utilizing those best practices for online instruction that we outlined with the board previously and starting to train around that this summer. So I want to thank William Bates and, and his team on beginning the development of some really great online resources for our teachers. I'll go school by school because each school is going to be slightly different. But before I do, I, I want to reiterate something that I've tried to say as many times as I possibly can. And that is that we have, we all have the same goal here. The same goal is we want all of our kids to come back to school as soon as we can and when it's safe. We want to maximize the space that we have available. We want to maximize the capacity of our staff because at the end of the day, we really want learning to begin again. So with that in mind, and also sort of interestingly, through an equity lens, which has been part of the conversation tonight, we are starting to open up some possibilities that may provide us some more opportunities to bring more kids back. So let me start with Jesse Thackeray. Jesse Thackeray, and this is a unique circumstance because as I think most of the board members know, we have an obligation in the City of Falls Church to do child find and provide services to our preschool students that have disabilities or are at risk. And in order for us to meet the needs of the students that are special needs, have an IEP and are at risk, we are only able to serve this year for the first part of the year until we get into post phase three, our students that are in special education and those that are, are at risk. So unfortunately, because of the space and because of the number of staff we have, we're not able to immediately bring back our typical peers at Jesse Thackeray. And that message did go out to families today from Marie Baruti. And we've heard from one parent. But one of the things that I want to just commend Marie on doing was reminding the community that this is temporary. And then she also sent a number of different opportunities and resources to parents so to seek other options until such time as we can bring all, all of our kids and typical peers back into Jesse Thackeray. So the JTP kids will come at least four days a week. The, the students that are on an IEP and those students that are at risk. So our preschoolers who have the most need will be there at least four days a week. Moving up to the elementary schools, and I'll start with Mount Daniel. Actually, I'll talk about Mount, well, let me talk about Mount, Mount Daniel first. I, I want to thank Kristin and, and, and William and the Empress of COVID, of course Rebecca Sharp and Marie and Tim Kasich for doing some pretty good work yesterday over at Mount Daniel. But the plan at Mount Daniel currently is to go every other day. So Tuesday, Thursday, Wednesday, Friday, with Monday as a teacher workday. But one of the things that we're learning as we go through that space is because the new classrooms are much bigger than they, than a lot of new construction is, that we may have some opportunity to bring more of our youngest learners back. We don't know exactly what the number is, but I want to just sort of signal to you that there's, and there may be an opportunity on the near horizon for us to be able to say, we can bring more than just half of our kids back. We already know that we're going to bring back our highly impacted special needs students. We also know that we're going to bring back our students that are in ESOL that, that need extra support and bring back some of our students that are on free and reduced lunch that need extra support. So we know already, we're going to bring back more than 50% of the time because those students that I just mentioned in those categories will be coming four days a week. So again, sort of looking at it through the equity lens, making sure that our, our students that were disproportionately impacted by the closure through, through disability status, through ESOL or through being on free and reduced lunch are taken care of first. The one thing I want to be really clear about is that we have a lot of kids that are on free and reduced lunch that are not struggling to learn. So it's not a one-to-one correlation. We have a lot of kids that are in ESOL that are accessing our most advanced programs. So it's not a one-to-one correlation. So the one, and same with special ed. So the one thing that this is really, I think in many ways, forcing us to do is to go kid by kid, student by student, folder by folder to make sure that we are bringing in the kids that need the most support most immediately on a, on a more routine basis, at least four days a week. Students at Jesse Thackeray or at, at Mount Daniel will get encore classes just like everybody in the system will get encore classes that are, that are selecting to come back in the face-to-face model. So I want to just reassure the board and the community that you will get art, you will get music, you will get PE, you will get library, you will get all of those things. It may look a little different than what you're used to. And so I want to make sure everybody understands that what we know as traditional schooling in the City of Falls Church might look different because we are going to ask a lot of our teachers to sort of flex, flex into classrooms and flex out of classrooms. So some of you might be familiar with the term art on a cart. So rather than having all of the kids transition through the hallway and potentially intermix and spread potentially some virus, we're going to ask the teachers to do some of the moving where they're pushing into classes as opposed to asking the kids to do a lot of movement. At, at Thomas Jefferson, we are also looking at a Tuesday, Thursday, Monday, when, Tuesday, Thursday, Wednesday, Friday with a Monday planning. But we may have some opportunities there as well with respect to some additional space to potentially bring back more of our students at Thomas Jefferson. So again, I, I don't want to promise anything, but I do want to signal to you that one of the things that we are working really hard on is exploring every possible space that we have to be able to utilize and looking at every staff member that we might be able to utilize. And so an example of that is we have some really great college-educated paraprofessionals who want to become teachers. And so what if we leveraged some of their capacity in some spaces that might not be occupied all the time to pull groups of students that could bring class size down for teachers? And then rotating kids in and out or looking at some other solutions? So I do want to let the board know that we are continuing to work on this. We hear, we hear our parents loud and clear. There are a lot of folks out there that want their kids back five days a week. We just can't do it without doing appropriate social distancing based on the guidance that we've received from the Virginia Department of Education, the Virginia Department of Health and our own Department of Health. But we are looking at ways that are creative and thoughtful to bring as many kids as we possibly can back at, at TJ. TJ has the same thing. We're bringing in our special, many of our special ed kids, many of our ESOL kids and many of our students that are on free and reduced lunch that may be struggling. At the secondary level, we will, at Henderson and at Mason, we will be operating on also an alternating day schedule. And in this Friday's update that I'm going to send out, that's called The Road to Reopening. Hopefully you got the, the first edition on Monday, yesterday. We will put in a sample, an example schedule of what a student's day might look like as they go through Monday, Tuesday or Thursday or Wednesday and Friday. Students there will get their encore classes. We are working to ensure that kids get band. We're working to ensure that kids get drama, chorus, all the programs that our kids love. We're also working with our PE teachers, of course, at the secondary level. PE, kids dress out, that's a, not the greatest activity to do when you're trying to not congregate kids. So we're looking at how, what that might look like. We're also looking at utilizing all of the outdoor spaces that we have available to us because we know if kids are outside and moving around, that's a really good thing. But the decision right now at the high school and the middle school is to have periods one, two, or one, three, five and seven on the first day that the kids are there for school and then two, four, six and eight on the day, that the, the, the next day that they're at school. So they will get a deeper block experience, but they'll only see that TJ. a deeper block experience, but they'll only see that teacher once a week. So the day that they're not in school, those students will be doing a lot of work asynchronously, but some of the materials and resources that we're getting, we're going to be utilizing resources and materials from our High C program, from Virtual Virginia, from the IB, and the like. So it'll again be a much more robust day than what our students experienced this last spring. And I appreciated the comments that we received from the community saying we did a good job with the stopgap, because I agree, I think we did a great job with the stopgap, but now we need to really pick it up. And so we really are trying to figure out how to do that. Unfortunately, at Henderson and at the high school, there is not more space available at this point in time to bring in many more kids than we've scheduled at this point. However, one of the things we're really excited about is when the new high school does open, we are fairly confident that we'll be able to bring back all of Mason and all of Henderson, because there will be so many spaces at the new high school to be able to hold larger groups to appropriately social distance, that I think, once the new high school opens, we'll be able to, at least at the secondary school level, be able to bring back all of our kids. So I'm excited about that. The HSL sports has been a hot topic, and one of the things that I put in the road to reopening yesterday is that we don't have any intention at this point of doing anything that's more restrictive than the guidance that the Virginia High School League has shared with us. So as we reengage, it looks like beginning next week, as early as next week, and I know Tricia and Julie Braven have been working on the final packet of information that will go out to our athletes and our athletes' parents. I believe that we're going to be able to start out-of-season conditioning, out-of-season lifting, and some of those kinds of things as early as next week, so long as students have updated physicals and a couple of other things that are required to get them started. So we are on the road to having some sports back as well. So let me share with you some of the data that we're starting to see back, because I think it's important for you to know kind of what we're seeing and what we're hearing from the community. So I'm going to flip my screen over. You won't be able to see it, but I just want to tell you, as I'm walking through it, I won't be able to see you. So Mr. Anderson, if somebody raises their hand, can you just interrupt me? That would be, that would be helpful.
Will do.
So let me start with the parent, the parent survey. And as of about a half an hour ago, we have 1,217 responses to our survey, which is just less than 50% of our total population in the City of Falls Church schools. We're seeing good numbers coming in across all of the different schools. We're seeing good distribution across grade levels, and that's been very positive. We've seen now, in the data, students that do receive services for special education, do have a 504 plan, those students that don't, those that receive gifted services, et cetera. And then we also asked in our survey some questions about, will your student be enrolled back in our hybrid classroom? And of the 1,218 responses we've got, 1,152 students will return to face-to-face based on these data that we have so far, which is a 95% rate, coming back to our schools. And 44 students have selected the online opportunity. So with about half coming back so far, if these numbers are relatively indicative of what the other half of our students will look like, we may have up to 100 students in the online program, but the vast majority will, at this point, be back in the face-to-face two-day-a-week option. Some of the things that our parents are most considering as they think about their student instructional setting, the first is, the first number one, 91% are the social-emotional connections with other students. So everything that you heard and some of the responses that you got tonight from people that wrote in, some of the emails that you've been getting, all of the emails that we've been getting, really bear out that that connection with other students is something that many of our students are really missing. The next highest driver in the consideration was challenges with some of the learning online. And then the last was, goes beyond just connections with students, but actually gets into social-emotional needs that students have. We asked about face coverings, and we asked, in general, everybody's going to be wearing one, please indicate the status of your access to face coverings and concerns. And 87% of the respondents have said that their students have face coverings and don't have any problems wearing them. And then we followed up with a question of what would we, what could we do to help your students support wearing the face covering? And 84% of the parents so far, over 1,000, said, you don't need to do anything. Our child's able to wear a face mask, and they will. The next highest percentage, which was 8%, which is 107, was allowing for alternative face coverings. And let me just be clear about what a face covering is and isn't very quickly. A face covering is something that covers your nose and mouth, and it's typically cloth. We've gotten a lot of questions about face shields. And what we've learned from the Department of Health is that a face shield is not an acceptable alternative to a face mask. So we are looking at both for some of our teachers, and we are also exploring options for clear face masks, so that, or face coverings that would serve in a face mask kind of solution where you can actually see the mouth. And we do think that that's really important in a lot of different settings, if not all, but there are some settings where we're going to just be asking kids to wear a regular face cloth, face mask. Some of the priorities that our parents indicated, that they really want us to focus on, are addressing learning gaps was, I'm sorry, that was second highest. First highest, again, was access to social connections with friends. The next highest was learning gaps, addressing those. And the next was making sure that the health and safety of students is taken care of. So we, it again, sort of speaks to this sort of double bind that we're in, in many ways. We're in a double bind because we want our kids back for social-emotional needs and learning, but we also have this concern about health and safety. And so there are no good solutions here, but what we can do is try to find sort of the best of all possible solutions, and I think we were getting pretty close. So let me say one other thing about the parent survey that we, the responses we've gotten. 98.1% of our parents have replied that they have access to reliable internet, and that that's not a problem. And then with respect to transportation, the question that we asked was, to ensure physical distancing, with one student in every other seat on the bus, our capacity will be reduced from 77 to 13 per bus. As a result, FCCPS will only be able to transport a limited number of students, and will increase the walking zone, and will be increasing the walking zone. If bus transportation is not available, my child will, and we asked them to check all that would apply. 69% said that they would be driven by a parent. 38% said that they would be walking. Another, no, that's not right. So 69, 847 parents said that they would be driven by a parent, 643 said they'd walk, 266 have indicated they would bike, 204 said that they would carpool with quarantine buddies that they've been quarantining with. About 109 of our drivers in high school have indicated that they would drive, and 82 have said that they would have some significant difficulties getting to school. So we will work with those families to make sure that they'll be taken care of. Then with respect to comments, we've gotten 448 responses, and I thought I would just share with you the first 10. So it gives you kind of a flavor of what we're seeing. The first is, we're so grateful our high schoolers will have face-to-face instruction, whatever the modified schedule. The second one is, thank you. The third is around randomizing how students are co-horted, because there is some concern about some kids not getting with their friends. We got a lot of that. It's really interesting to see how that's going to work, and we'll talk more about that as time passes. But it's about making sure that we cohort kids so that there's less stress with their friends. The next one was none. The next was, thank you for helping us get through this. The next, is it possible to request that my child attends Tuesday and Thursday? The next is, we appreciate the time and energy going into this plan. The next is, our quarantine families are, and they actually name the families that they've been quarantining with. And then the last one, or I'll read two more. Please provide information on the ACC program. And I did put that into some information that I shared earlier, but for the community as a whole, as soon as Arlington makes their plans public, we will be able to work with them on how we'll access the ACC program. And then I'll read, I'll read the last three. They're all on the same page. Eighth-grade boy, he learning is a recipe for disaster. Our family needs to be placed on a Tuesday, Thursday schedule due to work schedules, childcare. And then the last one, just as a sample, is, thank you for the work getting us through this safely. So the vast majority on the parent reopening survey has been thank yous and appreciation, but there are a lot that give some really good feedback. There's only a few in there where people were vitriolic and mean. I don't know how else to say it. So we'll take those for what they are, but by and large, I think the feedback's been really good and helpful for us sort of thinking it through. So let me stop there, and then I'll share the staff data, just in case you have questions about that as well.
Thanks, Dr. Noonan.
Should I just continue and do the staff?
Dr. Noonan, I think you read my mind. I was just about to ask for a pause and let folks ask questions. So thank you.
Okay.
Are there questions on what we have at this point? And then, yeah, we'll get to the staff results. Ms. Russell, and then I see Ms. Downs has her hand up as well.
So with regard to the high school, Dr. Noonan, I have to assume that there's a number of classes, especially at the upper levels, that kids take that might have relatively small numbers. And I guess I'm thinking specifically, my daughter's taking, I don't even know what it's called, HL2 chemistry, something, I don't know. And there's a very, sounds like there's 10 kids in the class or something. So I'm just curious if the, I guess I'm assuming that you guys are going to also be looking at that, because I'm thinking if, you know, from an alphabet split, if two of those 10 are in one half and eight, I don't know, just I'm assuming that you're looking at distribution of classes too, and how that's kind of going to break out, especially for those smaller classrooms, or smaller class sizes.
Yeah, it's a great question. We are, but that's not going to be a primary driver for us. We know that there are going to be some imbalances from one day to the next. It won't be imbalances in the overall numbers. You'll have the same numbers roughly on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, or I'm sorry, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, but there may be some classes where there's an imbalance. And so we're continuing to talk with the staff about that, but we know that there will be some imbalances.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Ms. Downs, end up next.
Thank you, Tru Anderson. Thank you, Dr. Noonan. Incredible work that you and your team have put into this. Two quick questions. One, and I've voiced this one before, but knowing now that there's a little, maybe a skosh more room at Mount Daniel and TJ, does that also allow us the flexibility of maybe those kids that do not fall into those vulnerable populations, but traditionally have gone to summer school, we might have some flexibility to bring them back four days a week? And then my second question is, I'm assuming we will be going back to a regular grading system, not a pass, no pass in the fall, but I just wanted to confirm that.
Yeah, I believe, well, let me, let me start with the grading question. I believe we are going to go back to the regular grading system. And then to your first question, if you could just give us a little bit more time, the answer is, the answer is yes, but I want to, I want to give more clarity to that answer.
Right.
And we should have that in the next week and a half.
Right. I know, and I know it's not a huge, but I do have friends whose kids have traditionally gone to summer school, and they're not in those populations. So, thank you.
Yep, understood. So Ms. Russell, let me, let me go back to your question earlier, because I do want to just clarify, if we find that there is a class, like you just described, where 10 kids came in on one day and two kids come in on another, those are some circumstances that we will look at. So I don't want to just, I don't want to dismiss that out of hand. So if that came across, it's, it's not what we're going to look at. We are definitely going to look at it. It's just a major driver for us is making sure that the numbers across the days are really viewed closely to make sure that we keep the appropriate social distancing. But if we see those, we'll address them in those one-off circumstances.
Ms. Litten.
I just have a question, and no worries if you guys haven't figured this out yet, but if there are going to be students who come four days a week, are they going to be co-horted together, or do you think that they're just going to get the same instruction two days in a row?
No, we, we would not do a slower, louder version of what happened the day before. We actually had this conversation today with the principals, and one of the things we said that was super freeing was that if, if you're a student that comes in four days a week, and let's just say you're a Level 2 ESOL student, and you need some extra support, you don't necessarily have to spend that day that you're coming in when you wouldn't normally come in for your direct instruction with an ESOL teacher. You might be co-horted with a couple of other ESOL kids and work together with one of our paraprofessionals to skill build. You might meet with our reading specialist. You might meet with the principal. You might meet with, you know, the superintendent. You know, I might be teaching some classes too, because I think we want to just leverage the possibilities for everybody. So I think one of the things that we're looking at is just being as creative as we possibly can, because creativity for us is going to rule the day, and it's going to allow us the most flexibility to get the most kids in our school and get them the most support possible.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rutter.
Thank you. Great work by you and your staff, Dr. Noonan, and especially, again, especially the COVID-19 Empress, Ms. Sharp. A few questions, and I apologize if they're answered somewhere in the materials, but I've missed them. Is there going to be a challenge with getting kids to Mount Daniel? Because the normal access plan used a lot of buses, which would reduce the level of traffic. And if, if there are lots of parents driving to Mount Daniel, is that going to cause a challenge with our friends in Fairfax County?
You want to answer? I'll give you that answer. I thought you had a few, but I'll take them one at a time. Thanks.
Okay.
Yes, I do think that Mount Daniel is going to be a challenge. That's the one hotspot, if you will, that we're going to have to really work on. I would anticipate there'll be more kids taking the bus at Mount Daniel than there will be at the, any of the other schools, simply because of where it is. And we'll work with families as best we can and work with them. The new, the new kiss-and-ride and the way that it's looped will help a lot, but it is going to be something we're going to have to pay attention to. So thank you for, for asking that. And no, it was not in the materials, because we're still working out some of those details.
The second question is sort of the converse of Ms. Russell's. What is the plan, not if you've got a small class, but you've got a large class and odd distribution? So, you know, that's going to put significant challenges on social distancing if it's a 25, 30-kid class at MEH or GMHS, and, you know, 21 of them are all there on the same day?
We'll navigate that before we even get to it. But if it does happen, and that is one of those one-offs, we've identified some larger spaces in the building where we would move some of those larger classes.
Great, thank you. The, it remains the plan, I take it, that students who don't return will use Virtual Virginia, and so they won't have the IB curriculum available to them?
That is, that is correct. And one of the things that we're struggling with is trying to figure, let me, let me back up. There's, there's two, there's two forms of Virtual Virginia. One is the online version that's taught by a Virtual Virginia teacher, and it's offered only to the high school students. The students that are coming through Virtual Virginia that go through the K8 program would be taught by teachers that are in the City of Falls Church. teachers that are in the City of Falls Church schools. So we are, we are continuing to talk about what that might look like for our teachers. We have so few students right now and the distribution's really wonky at this point, where it's like one kid per grade level, maybe two kids per grade level. So we're going to have to figure out how best to, to massage that. So it will be, right now, we can't, we can't promise our kids at K8 are going to get anything that resembles closely what the IB program has to offer. However, if it is our teachers and we move through it and the teachers are, gain a comfort with the curriculum. It would certainly be within their purview if they wanted to add some elements of the IB program to it. High school kids that would hit the virtual Virginia program are going to be very minimal. Most of those students will go through our Hi-C program, which we've developed at the high school that does have some connections to IB.
But if, this is the thing that troubles me perhaps the most. If a, and this may be completely hypothetical, but if there were a, a high school kid where one of the, one of the children in the family was immunocompromised and that kid, let's say it was a junior, a rising senior, could not go and now could not attend the second year of a two-year HLIB class. And I know we can't solve all problems. We're all muddling this through, but that person, it sounds like, doesn't really have another option right now.
Not at this point. We, we really have tried to figure out how best to do this. We have been, you know, we have been exploring streaming of classrooms. You know, one of the things that is that, that I've seen in other districts is that when kids are out because they're cancer patients or have some sort of long-term illness, that they, there's an, like a rolling iPad that comes into a classroom that streams right to a student. So we are purchasing some cameras, not like that, but cameras that are 360-degree movement. So we may be able to stream kids into classrooms, but we're, we're still working through some of those options.
I guess the last question, which is somewhat related to one I raised several weeks ago. I think it's, it's distinctly possible that we're going to have a higher rate of absenteeism come the fall, separate and apart from people who are coming to school or not. But, you know, kids are not going to be able to come in if they've got even a tiny elevated temperature. And if they don't come in, you know, if, if a kid in a classroom tests positive, there may be a large number of children that have to, students that have to isolate at home under the program. And I, it makes sense why we would do the two-hour blocks rather than the one-hour blocks, use the block schedule. But even missing a day could mean you miss a week's worth of contact. And having that happen a couple of weeks in a row could be, you know, you're starting to have a summer-like dropdown, certainly a winter break-like dropdown. Is there anything that, that is being considered that could be done to address the, the rate of absenteeism? And in this environment that we hope to get through as quickly as possible to sort of maintain learning when someone is out over what could be an extended period by missing a single day of school?
And, and that's where we think that these, these streaming cameras can be helpful. And also recording, recording lessons in Schoology so students can watch them. So again, I think we're, we're working through those because I, I hear what your concern is completely. And, and if a kid is out and we know the kids will be, it, it could have disproportionate impact. So William and, William and I will, will kind of continue to talk about that and see what we can work through with Kristen, who's helping us with some of the technology.
The only thing, and I'm, I'm done at this point, Dr. Noonan, thank you very much for the answers, is if we're going to have that streaming question, there may be cases where it would be at least worth considering allowing a person to be a non-present student, but go through the normal curriculum. You know, if they're, I, I just, I'm thinking about again, that, that kid who wants to do the second year of HL English. And can't come into school, but would like to be able to do that. That, that, that kid in particular might not be sent to virtual Virginia or even the Hi-C program if there are ways to do it remotely. But that's, you know, you guys have to balance all of that. That's just a, I'm worried about the equity lens and the fairness for the kids that are facing those challenges.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riedinger. And are there any other questions at this point? Otherwise, we can hear some more about staff data. I'm just looking for hands.
Ms. Litten.
Sorry, just a quick one. And again, this probably may not be figured out, but is the idea that primarily teachers are going to be teaching in that time when they have students in class or some of the online time, almost more lessons and then classes? More, you know, working together or working with students on what they're doing or, you know. I know you may leave that up to teachers, but just curious if there's any instruction on that for teachers.
Sure. I'll, I'll, I'll start and then I'll let William kind of talk it through a little bit too. As you're referencing essentially the flipped classroom where students are, are doing some of the content online before they come in the next day so they can really work through it. And I do know that there are a lot of our teachers who've already said that they really would like to do that flipped classroom. So some of the lessons that students will be engaged in asynchronously will be work for the next day that they're going to be coming in as much as it's reinforcing. But William, do you want to take that?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah. Well, you hit the nail on the head. I mean, the expectation would be that during those block classes, when students are face-to-face in school, that they're getting that face-to-face instruction. And so the teachers are planning accordingly to deliver that instruction for those face-to-face classes. Now, when the student is on their off day, where they're at home, say that Tuesday, Thursday, if they're at home, then they would be able to engage in that asynchronous. So there would also have to be an expectation for projects for intervention type or skill-building type work. Or for opportunities for the student to engage in other types of activities that are related specific to the coursework that they would be doing on that face-to-face day.
All right. Should I go ahead and do the staff piece?
I'm just looking and I, I think we can. Thank you, Dr. Noonan. Thank you, William.
All right. I'm not going to be able to see you again, so just interrupt me if you need to.
Thank you, Dr. Noonan. Thank you, Ms. Fitz.
So flipping over to the staff. Currently, we have 223 responses from the staff, which is right, right about half, maybe just a little bit short of half. And don't let me forget to come back because I do want to inform the board about how we're following up with students and parents and then also with staff. But we have, just, just so you know, kind of what we're seeing, 58 people, 58 staff members from Mason, 40 from Henderson, 49 from Thomas Jefferson, 63 from Mount Daniel, 15 at Thackeray. So Mount Daniel and Thackeray, it's almost 100% of their staff have responded already, 18 from Central Office and nine system-wide. We've had 118 teachers reply, 28 paraeducators, 32 other instructional people that include social workers, psychologists and the like. And then, and the rest are central office, custodial services, daycare, food service, technology, et cetera. We, we did ask, based on our reopening plan for returning to schools and offices, what are the two most important factors that you would like us to think about as we plan? And number one by far was requirement that students and staff are, the requirement to wear a mask. And so again, we're, we're going to ask our students and our staff to wear masks. The second was daily health screenings for students and staff. And so we are continuing to work with the Virginia Department of Health as well as our local Fairfax County Health Authority. Help us develop a, a very brief questionnaire that we will administer to our staff sort of on the honor system and we'll be doing it with families on the honor system too, but we'll be doing some random checking as we, as we move forward. However, we will do daily temperature checks for all of our students. And then the last is guidance from the Fairfax County Health District. They wanted us to really pay attention to that. We did say that we were offering free supervision for our employees of school-aged children, grades K8. And so right now, 77% of our staff have indicated, that's 171 people, that they will not be accessing our free supervision for school-aged kids. However, we do have 36 staff members that currently have indicated that they will. And about 16 who have said they're unsure whether they would take us up on that. Just by the way, as we look at space, one of the spaces that we are really dedicating to the school-aged supervision and for the most part is the cafeterias, because cafeterias are going to be used very differently when we return, simply because of the lack of congregation of students. We are looking at and asking, you know, what, what are the grades of the students that you'd like to bring? The highest count so far is there's distribution across the full spectrum is like two, two first graders, two second graders, two eighth graders. And then everybody else is one roughly. So just to give you a sense of, of where they are. We did ask the question, are you considering applying for leave before school opens to care for you, for, I'm sorry, for your child? Who, whose childcare center is closed due to COVID? This was a question that was asked prior to phase three. When phase three goes into place tomorrow, most daycare centers around the Commonwealth are reopening. But when we asked that question and talked to them without providing leave with two-thirds of your pay or $200 per day, whichever is higher, or I'm sorry, whichever is lower. We have 91% of our teachers have said that they're not going to apply for childcare leave and 19 are uncertain. And right now we have one person who has indicated that they would be considering applying for that, that childcare leave. Now they're going to have to, the employees are going to have to show us that their traditional childcare center or their babysitter is not available to work in order to qualify for this leave. And so we'll be working with those folks independently and Amy Hall has been really great helping us with that so far. The next question that we asked was, are you considering applying for medical leave before school opens for sick, under the COVID, you know, the COVID Act? And right now, we had 216, which is 97% of our staff have indicated that no, they are not going to apply for any kind of leave. We only have right now, two people who have indicated that they will be applying for leave. And again, we'll have to go through the appropriate process with them to get the documentation and the like. So that, that to me is really good news. Our staff really look like they're excited to come back. So here's just a couple of samples. First one was in the section that said select two, I could only select one. We had a little error in the, so we went back on the very first 10 minutes of it and fixed that. I'd like to know what the plan is if we lose 15 to 20% of our teachers. I'm presuming that all districts will have a shortage and there won't be teachers to hire. We simply aren't seeing that so far in the data that we've collected. So we're again seeing about a 0.02 percentage rate of teachers not returning. How will teachers for the virtual Virginia section be determined? I prefer to be in a building in person as an instructor. Again, we need to wait till we see the numbers that come in for virtual Virginia before we can actually answer that question. But when we have better understanding of where our kids are falling, then we'll be working with our principals and our staff to determine how that would look and who would take on those, those challenges. Thank you for all your hard work. It hasn't been easy and it won't be easy, but this can be done. Thank you so much for offering childcare. It was a game changer for us, allowing me to come back to work. As a daycare employee, there's some concern about being exposed to young children in the hybrid. I hope that every precaution possible is being taken to ensure safety and health, which we are doing with our appropriate cleaning protocols from the CDC. And then the last one I would read is will high school students who choose the all-virtual option also be using virtual Virginia or will Hi-C? So that kind of goes to Mr. Riedinger's class, or Mr. Riedinger's question. High school students by and large will be accessing our Hi-C program that is our homegrown program at the high school. Which actually, Mr. Riedinger, may help with your question specifically to that HL class, for example, because they would be taking the Hi-C course that's at, at George Mason. More likely than not, they would be getting the IB components to that as a high school student. So, Mr. Anderson, that is the so far so good data that I have from our teachers and from our parents. I did want to go back and answer a question that I think some of the board members had, which is, how are you going to chase down parents? And so let me say that in this Google form that we've put together, that all of our principals are collaborators and they'll be working with the school counselors, social workers, psychologists and everybody to get ahold of parents to see what their plans are going forward. And then with our staff, we've already started outreach to those folks that haven't given us an answer yet. I will say that both for staff and for students, remembering that this Friday is the 4th of July, we have extended the deadline to the 10th of July, giving folks a little bit more time to get this completed. And we announced that yesterday in the road to reopening. So with that, I'll happily take some more questions that you might have.
Thank you very much, Dr. Noonan. I see Ms. Downs hand up, so please go ahead and I'll look for other hands as well.
Thank you, Chair Anderson. Thank you, Dr. Noonan. A quick question. For staff who have health issues such, might be diabetic and they feel that they can't work in the schools, are there opportunities for them to work from home?
It's a good question. It's very limited under the CARES Act, who has access to any kind of leave? And, and what a, what a pre-existing condition is, and that's a little bit more clear what a pre-existing condition is in the CARES Act, the way that it's been designated. What that person would need to do would be to go see their doctor. They would have to work with our HR department. And if they qualify under the CARES Act, again, which is very narrowly tailored, they would get then some FMLA or we might be able to modify their work assignment. If they don't qualify under the CARES Act, then we would need them to come back to work. And in a circumstance where we had opportunities, we might consider figuring out how to, to use that person. But if we don't have a need for that person to do online and had a need for them to be face-to-face, we really would need them to work face-to-face.
So basically you're working with these staff members on a case-by-case basis?
Exactly. And we, and, and Amy Hall has been terrific already. And quite honestly, we've received about two staff calls so far.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Downs. Other questions? Ms. Litten.
So far in, in your planning, have you guys come across significant kind of budget items? Things you're saying, wow, this is going to cost a lot more this year. I mean, obviously it seems like there could be some, so just curious how that piece is going.
Our conversations today actually led to some potential budget, budget issues. But we think that it won't be too, too extraordinary because what we'd like to do is really leverage the staff we have. So let me give you an example. Let's say at Thomas Jefferson, if, if we could bring the third grade numbers down across the third grade classes by adding one third grade teacher to get to a point where the third grade could have classrooms where there was appropriately social-distanced kids in all of the classrooms. We could hire a substitute. Or better yet, we could look at our really outstanding paraprofessional corps that have degrees, that have PhDs, Dr. Anderson, that may have some interest perhaps in helping us temporarily by teaching a third grade class. Connecting them with a third grade teacher that would be sort of a mentor teacher with them, that would help them with curriculum development, help them with some of the structures and strategies. Or that class becomes sort of a skill-building class and kids rotate in and out of that by using the paraprofessionals. We would want to likely offset their, their paraprofession, sorry, can't tell if you can hear the train or not, but that you, we would need to offset or supplement their paraprofessional pay to bring them up to at least the substitute teacher pay. And that will have some cost impact, but I don't think it's going to be extraordinary. Some of the other things that we see that we do think are going to be costly is the technology. You know, we, we just ordered You know, we, we just ordered fifteen, right Kristin? Fifteen of those streaming cameras that I talked about earlier. We did a whole testing situation with a bunch of them. Found a really good one. They're, they're movable and portable. But they are about a thousand dollars apiece roughly. And fifteen isn't going to get us all the way where we need to go. So we may have some expense in technology. And then just PPE, although most of our kids and parents report that they have their own masks. We still will have to provide some masks for our, for our kids. And then creating spaces, one other thing that we're looking at is, you know, we have to have spaces in case someone gets sick to quarantine them. And so putting up areas, barriers or whatever may have some cost. And then if we do utilize some of our larger spaces for classrooms. Having some sort of partition available so that classes aren't completely bleeding over into each other. So an example of that is. Let's just say we, we held a class at central office in our conference room. And that was a space that we were able to use to hold a class or even two classes. We might want to, you know, we've got a partition there, but if we didn't want to use that and wanted to use something else, we could. So anyway, I say all of that because we're looking at every possible space, but we do think that there's going to be some cost impact. I have spoken with Wyatt Shields about the CARES Act money. There may be some availability in some of that that they've received from the city. And we're going to continue that conversation. But I also want to say just for the good of the cause, Wyatt has been a great partner in this. And is really trying to help us figure out with some other spaces in the city, how we might be able to even do more students. So for example. We've been, I wouldn't say offered, but it's certainly been contemplated that some of the community center might be available for space. And the like. So we really are trying to seek out every possible solution to get as many kids as possible back.
Great, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Litten. Any other, any other questions? Not seeing any at this point. I don't want to do the going once, going twice routine, but I do want to say thank you, Dr. Noonan. And thank you to Mr. Bates and Ms. Michael and you and the Empress of COVID and the entire staff. And all the work that you've done putting this plan together. It's interesting to see the data that's coming in from the survey. Intermeeting in July, which is coming up fourteenth, it would be really important, I think, to be able to have an update on, on that. Because by then the survey period will have closed, right? And of course we'll have other information. It hasn't been any shortage of things changing quickly. But obviously we'll be looking forward to some more information at that point as well, so.
I, I can't emphasize enough. Two things. One is how hard our staff has worked. I mean, the tire, tireless hours that, you know, the principals and the, and the team have put in, it's been extraordinary. We really are trying to figure out every possible solution that we can that works best for the vast majority of our kids. And, and the second is that truly this is an iterative process. And, and just know that while we may not have the answers today, we, we may have the answers tomorrow. But we also may not have the answers until we get to the problem. So we're, we stand ready to sort of be problem solvers and thinkers through this process. And I think the four hundred and forty eight or so pieces of feedback. I thought we had linked it so you can only have two hundred and fifty characters in the feedback box. But somebody forgot to check that box because a couple of them are really, really long. But, but the feedback we've gotten has really been, has really been helpful and useful to us in our, in our planning process. So we'll continue to make the modifications based on the feedback that we've received. And, and some of it, some of it's good and some of it's useful and some of it's not. And then some of it's not doable, but we are, we are listening and are participating in the process.
Ms. Downs, I'll give you the, the final, the final word.
I, I just thought, Dr. Noonan, he and I briefly corresponded and I just thought maybe you wanted to reiterate for parent to have questions to go to their principal first.
Oh yeah, yeah. We, we now have sort of set the framework, if you will. And so we are asking parents that they communicate directly with principals. And then the principals will feed up to us anything that's sort of structural and larger that we need to address. So if, if you do all, if you all do hear from parents. You can send them to me and then I can send them to the principal, or you can just ask them to, to talk to the principal first. Because we have been meeting with the principals three days a week. Or over an hour each time, making sure that we're all on the same page and in the loop. And answering questions together and really problem solving.
All right. So reminder for all of us and for the community, your principals are your first, first line of questions for your students. So. All right. Thank you very much. At this point, we had, had the change to the agenda to add the item for discussing how. We wish to handle public comment in our future meetings during the period of time when we're meeting electronically. And so this was three point oh three that we added on at the beginning with Mr. Writinger's motion. I sort of want to, I'm looking to Mr. Writinger and also Ms. Russell for early thoughts, mostly because I know Ms. Russell's, has got some, some time constraints. And I see Dr. Demick's got her hand up. So. Why don't you go ahead and then I'll, I'm looking elsewhere too.
Great. I have some questions. Cause I, yes, it'd be nice, it would be nice to not. To hear everybody, but not to use our time for it. And I just, I'm curious. When people normally submit comments, are they publicly available to everyone? Like, so, because we're proposing that we would put everyone's comments online publicly available to everyone. Is that? Is that what sort of normally happens to people's comments? Or do people submit them and they're public, but they really only go to? Us or the clerk?
So what we have been doing in the period so far under electronic is that Ms. Goodell. Creates PDF out of all of the comments received by a certain point in time and put that up on board docs where it's accessible to, to everyone. Prior practice before COVID time. Depended on the circumstances a little bit, I think, on the content, but. We, it was, I guess I'm misremembering this because most of the time the comment that we had was actually in public under those circumstances. But Ms. Goodell, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say whenever I do receive comments, the first line of business is they get directly sent to, submitted to you all as a school board. And then they are collected and put in a, in a file. I have a, actually a hard copy file of public comment. We do go, it, it goes in waves. We, we haven't had public comment for quite a while. If there's something, you know, controversial, sometimes we get, you know, ten or fifteen. And at that point, that was a lot of public comment. But typically that was, as you say, live comment, people were coming in. But those usually I have kept in board docs as a packet if we get, you know, multiple. Public comment. In the minutes. When we were only getting five or six comments, it's actually in the minutes, a brief synopsis of what the. Comment was about. So that's how we've been handling it.
And when it's in board documents, is that publicly accessible? So all the comments.
So for these meetings, after our meeting tonight, the next day I go and scan them all chronologically. And then they'll be in board docs for anyone to see.
Dr. Demick, does that, that give you the, anything else that you wanted to ask? Okay. So at this point, I, I'm, I'm looking for other comments and suggestions. Mr. Webb.
Just that I would kind of in the frame of what Mr. Rangus has spoke about earlier. I think if we put together a comment period that we, I think that will. Put those comments out there, but then put the, the bulk of them available on board docs, I think. Would suffice that their comments are, are visible and to the general public. But also we have taken the time to, of at least half an hour of our meetings to have some of those comments read aloud into the record. But I do think that's, I would have a preference towards something like that.
So, Mr. Webb, just for clarity to make sure, have, have an hour or half an hour?
Half an hour.
Okay, thank you. Thirty minutes, thirty minutes. Okay. I just wanted to be clarified. Mr. Writinger, thank you.
So, I mean, the other things I'd add based on what the clerk Ms. Goodell said is. Yeah, I think if we're going to go on this process, it would be better to have an earlier deadline. So that that document that has all of the public comments could be posted. Prior to the actual meeting, so they'd be available during the meeting or before the meeting to anybody who wanted to do it. You know, I, obviously it's, it's up to the board on how it wants to proceed. I, I remain of the view that if we, if we, if we made all of those comments available going forward. And we had a period, you know, up to as Mr. Webb suggests, you know, thirty minutes for the chronologically first comments. That would let us get to discuss things without, you know, parents perhaps with young children. Having to listen to our discussion at ten thirty at night, which I think would be a more approachable way to address things, but. I, I, I think they, I would hope that it's a reasonable compromise, as the chair suggested, to. To have a period of reading public comment to make sure all the public comments are available. And to, but have a reasonable period so that we could move on to other items of business. In time for people to still listen to the, the discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Writinger. And thank you, Mr. Webb, for your comment earlier as well. Ms. Russell, I'm aware you've got a, a time constraint, so I want to make sure if you have anything you'd like to add that, that you have a chance to do that.
No, I think that a combination of what Mr. Webb and Mr. Writinger had to say sounds great. I agree that we should have the comments posted on board docs prior to the start of our meeting. Even that that means moving up the cutoff for when they're accepted, I guess, for that particular meeting. And then having the short period of comment during the meeting. And I think thirty minutes sounds like a very reasonable amount. And I think that the only concern that I, I guess, and we could just kind of see how it goes. But my only concern would be is if it happens to be that the comments that fit the thirty minute time period all happen to be. On one side of an issue or the other, I could see how it might not be well received. So we might want to just kind of keep an eye on that too. So at least it look, you know, we keep things balanced. And so I'm not sure what the best way of doing that is. But I do think, you know, that would be one potential pitfall.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Dr. Noonan, I saw you had your hand up.
My, my only question was, and maybe it's for Tricia. Is a, a, a lot of students wrote in, which is fine because they wrote in. But is there any personally identifiable information about the youth that we should redact before we put it up into board docs?
Right now I need to do a little bit of research on that. I think my first inclination is if, if a student had come to a meeting, they're sharing something in public. But to the extent information was shared about a background of students that a family might not have realized would then. Be in board docs for perpetuity. Let me look into that.
I also heard a couple of people like put their phone number in there.
Right.
Would, would we want to redact phone numbers or?
Right. So for anybody who submitted, it would have their email address. Some have put phone numbers and other signatures and things that would then be public. So I, let me give that some thought and get back to you, but that is one thing to consider if we're accepting written comments that are made available. That the public would know that this would be public information, everything that they choose to share.
Mr. Webb.
Yeah. To that point, when we do in-person public comment at minimal, I think their. Address and those type things are already given. So. I think that would be already acceptable. The phone number part of it, I would think possibly, and I. You know, defer to you, Ms. Minton, when you do your research, maybe something that would be redacted. But in a, in person, they are generally given some form of their address of where they live in the city. So. And that's out there for perpetuity as well. So I would think we would be generally okay with that, but. You know, I defer to you when that comes around. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Mr. Writinger, I saw a hand real quick.
Just to note that it, it seems to me that if the letters from students, if the personal information in the letters from students. Causes a FERPA problem, then that same problem may exist for the recording of this meeting itself. If posted on YouTube, if the material was read out loud by one of the speakers. So that's just something to be aware of before the recorded video is reposted.
My suspicion is it's not going to be an issue. I just want to make sure it's clarified. Thanks.
I think that's right, Dr. Noonan. I do think that it's just something that we want to make sure is known going forward because it might feel less personal. To stand up at a meeting and speak in front of seven board members than it is when written information is then posted online.
Other comments from anyone? Yes, I have a question. Oh, sorry. Miss, sorry, Dr. Demick, go ahead.
I just wanted to be sure that if we move with that, we're really clear with people that. That this is all posted online and anyone can look at it and anyone can search it and their name is attached to it and their email address is in there. And I think they really need to know that when they're sending us comments.
Ms. Downs.
And.
Thank you, Dr. Demick. Ms. Downs, sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. Thanks, Chair Anderson. And to piggyback on Dr. Demick's comment. There just seems to also be, you know, people are engaging in this process, both between the fall. Return to school and the naming issue. So there are new community members engaging with us who haven't before. And I've gotten, received quite a few emails on not understanding how things work. You know, if, if it's sent to Ms. Goodell, you know, what happens? How do we get it to be read into public comments? I mean, it might be some, and I don't know, it might already be on the website, but. I explained to more than a couple of people that when they send something to Ms. Goodell, we all read, it gets forwarded to us. So when we are hearing it at, at the meeting, it's really the second time we've heard it because we already read all that. And so a lot of people didn't even realize that Ms. Goodell will then send it to us. So there's like just some logistics, I think, that we need, we could clarify for the public that would help them.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Writinger, go ahead. And thank you, Ms. Downs.
This is just another yes and. So I, I agree with the last two interventions about needing to be crystal clear with people about the availability of information. I just say we need to do that right now anyway, because the data is already going up, right? So if you look back at prior meetings, that data is posted. So this would not be a new procedure in that regard. It would just be a more directed procedure.
So I have, if I may, a question. I think, Dr. Noonan, this is probably a question for Ms. Minson. If it's okay for me just to go ahead and ask. The question in my mind is just. What I'm hearing is the, is support for gathering all of the comments that come in by a certain deadline that's. Earlier ahead of the meeting, being able to post a PDF of all of those. Onto board docs so that everybody can see them and then have a period of, it sounds like about thirty minutes seems to be the, where folks are going. Where the first N comments, where N is however many fit into thirty minutes, or we run out of comments, whichever comes first. Is that, you know, is there anything that we can, anything that you know of that, that would fall afoul of in some fashion? You're, you're muted.
Sorry, I was clicking on to see the policy. I think under policy BDDH, that's fine. It would just be the school board should make known that the reasonable period of time that it's determining under policy BDDH. For regular, during regular meetings for community members to speak is going to be limited to thirty minutes. And each speaker's presentation will be limited to three minutes. The remaining comments that are submitted by. The time designated by the board will be made available on board docs for the public to view.
Okay. And then thank you very much. And in terms of. And in terms of communicating basically all of this information, again, just to make sure folks. Maybe who are new to providing comments or just just wanting to have this information written down. The. The comment that I'm going with at this point is just trying to make sure that we figure out how we actually wanna make that information available to folks. You know, that we wanna develop a a short document that goes up onto a bunch of the board's main page or a bunch of board docs or or something like that. That can go forward so that people see it. And I think that would be one way of doing it, but I don't know if there are other suggestions people have.
I'm not sure I totally understand what that suggestion was. Can you, you mean outside of just the additional materials?
So for right now, for on our on our agendas, for instance, and we've, we've said this at every meeting in the opening and in the agendas, we say this, that. Public comment can be submitted in writing to Ms. Goodell, and then it is posted, you know, read into the end of the meeting. This this information about making sure that folks understand. Comments that are received by date, you know, by this time relative to the beginning of a meeting. All of this will be gathered together into a document and posted on board docs. And and then the board will have that and it will be available publicly. The concerns about people making sure they know that their information could be potentially seen by somebody. And the process for for getting that information, just making sure that there's some kind of a. A guide that we put together. I'm just looking at this and trying to figure out how we would implement that. But that may be something that we can just, that that is an implementation discussion and not something that we have to talk about right now. But I think I'm trying to get across the sense that I think we're, we're trying to make sure that we we have some way of of giving that information to people. So. Okay. Um. So then I'm just gonna restate, I think what I've heard is sort of the consensus of the board on this, which is that we would like to. Have public comment come to us. We always do wanna have that, but that for the period of time where we're meeting electronically, comments received by a certain point in time. We haven't said what that is yet. Prior to one of our meetings would be gathered together and and put together and and up on board docs where no one can see them. And that there would be a thirty minute period for us to read public comments. Each public comment is limited to reading at most three minutes, and we read as many fit into those thirty minutes, starting with the very first one we have and moving chronologically through. I think that's what I'm hearing. And I'm looking around for nods or thumbs up or anything like that. Okay, I see some stunned looks, and I'm not sure if it's just because it's almost eleven o'clock at night or just turned a lot. But. Ms. Litten.
Sorry, just wanna ask one question I'm trying to figure out. Right now, they're posted, like Marty posts the comments, I guess, after our meeting, is that right?
I I have been, I've been, the following morning after our meeting. Gathering them all up, scanning them in one into one document and then posting that document in board docs. In in the public section.
Gotcha. So if she has to have those done before, I'm just curious if that's gonna be difficult. I don't know how long it takes you, Marty.
When I'm at work, I have a scanner, so it doesn't take very long at all. But at home, it would mean PDF and then compiling each packet. And with like tonight, we had eighty some, eighty seven, eighty eight. So that could take some time. Tonight, we went, I think, was five o'clock was our deadline. But that, you know, if we're having a seven o'clock meeting, that's probably doable. It was a little tough having a six o'clock meeting, because I was also still sending out to the readers. The comments that were coming in to be read. So but that that will change, because we're gonna limit our time to thirty minutes. So we won't need four readers.
Right, I mean, I just wanted to make sure whatever we're putting in places.
Right, it it would be. Have a time where, you know, a limit to, at this point, we don't accept them to be read. They, I guess that's another question, anything that would come in after that time. Would that still be posted? Because those were being submitted to the board, they just wouldn't be necessarily read.
Seems like those would be posted for the next round. They would just roll up into the next round?
To to the next meeting date, is that what you, by next round?
I think that would be in keeping with what we've said, yeah. So we, what we're, I think, Ms. Litten, thank you for your question. I think what you're asking is sort of what is, how much time do you need to prepare, Ms. Goodell? And so what? You know, what what time would we set as a?
You know, it. Last time I, the first time I only had twenty two comments. Tonight, I had four times that amount. It's, I I guess it depends on what the board is going to be talking about and how many I'm there coming through. You know, I I need at least two hours, I think, before the meeting time is set. To to gather them all up and to get them into one document if we're going to post them before the meeting.
Dr. Noonan, I saw your hand.
Yeah, I I just, I'm being a little bit protective of Marty's time here, just because I know once we're sort of back in the swing, if. If we do, and 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 I also recognize that this is a temporary issue here that also is gonna end relatively soon. But I'm wondering if we could, if we could land on just sometime, whether it's noon on the day of the meeting. Just to give her enough time in case there is something that happens. Or, you know, maybe, maybe two, noon or two. Because Marty, if something happens, I wouldn't want you to get caught and then not get it done. And and so I'm just wondering if we could just say by by the day of the meeting at this period of time, anything that's received will roll into the next one. But everything up to this point at noon on the day of the meeting will be posted. Would that be okay?
Well, I appreciate that.
It it's certainly okay with me. I was actually wondering if it needed to be longer than that, but noon on the day of the meeting, and I'm looking around for hands and thoughts. And I see Mr. Reitinger. And then Mr. Webb.
I I I just would say I wouldn't make it any later than noon. And it seems to me that opening of business, you know, nine or ten AM in the morning. Is eminently reasonable for people to to get comments read that night.
Thank you, Mr. Reitinger, Mr. Webb.
And I was thinking somewhere in that same window between no later than noon to two. But I agree with Mr. Reitinger that I think when most folks are writing these emails, it's gonna be between the start of the workday between. Between nine and twelve, I think most folks are gonna have those comments put together and and sent off to Ms. Goodell.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. All right, so then I will, I'll attempt to put this all together. I think what I'm hearing is there's an agreement that all comments received on a given board meeting day, all comments received by. Ten AM local time on that day. Will be gathered up together into a into a single document that gets posted onto board docs. We will have a thirty minute period for public comment during the meeting, during which. The first N comments received chronologically will be read of maximum three minutes each. And then everything else on that just is available in the in the document. And and this is, of course, a practice for for the period of time that we're continuing to have electronic meetings that are are special like this. And we'll get back to regular the business when we're able to get back into into regular meetings. So. Unless there's any concerns, I think that's what I heard is as the consensus. Mr. Reitinger, I see an okay sign. All right, I'll take, I'll take that and and nods and things. So, all right, I think we've, I think we've reached a consensus on that point. And I don't believe we have any other business on the agenda for tonight, unless there is anyone who has a a final comment, question, any points that they'd like to make. All right, not seeing any. I will say thank you all very much for your engagement tonight and all the hard work that went into this meeting. And and we are adjourned.